I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
At this time, we'll observe a moment of silence.
Sheevy, Breckus, Zadra, Delgado, Torch, Jarden, Kachal.
Here. We'll go to public comment now. Nettie. Been here so long, now Nettie, I just call you Nettie. I don't even do your whole name.
You just didn't want to embarrass yourself by mispronouncing the last name.
Well, it's my last day, and I want to make sure I did it right. Thanks, Nettie.
I am Nettie Oliverio. I am so glad to be here with you on this fantastic day. Part of what I have done as a part of you is to represent the city of Reno through public art and through the redevelopment advisory board. And so I come here wearing those hats, but also as a representative of our city's arts and culture industry, to thank you so very much for your support and for your vision in allowing our city to grow and to become more comfortable with itself through arts and culture. And for those of you who are leaving us after this meeting, you know how different this city was when you came into the seats that you sit in now. It is because of your vision and because of the city's support in making arts and culture available in the downtown core that has made that refrain that we used to hear, "No, I don't go downtown." Not applicable anymore. So, thank you very much. And now that you have a little bit more time on your hands, we need you in arts and culture. Please come and join us. Please come to a show. Please come to an art opening. Please come and just join us and reap the rewards of what you've created. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mark Merkel.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and Council. I want to thank all you leaving for your service. My name is Mark Merkel, and my mission life is far out. And my mission life is to educate the community and students about what happens when someone gets in the car with a drunk driver. I'm reading from this today because I get off track, and I suffer a traumatic brain injury, and I get off track. All this is because I got in a car with a drunk driver. I had a car crash and roll eight times. I was not wearing my seatbelt. It wasn't mandatory back then, and I was ejected, and the car landed on my head. I was in a coma for a month, in the hospital, five and a half months more. Once I regained consciousness, I had to learn to talk, walk, and eat all over again due to my traumatic brain injury. I can't do everyday tasks. My life has completely changed as a result of getting in a car with a drunk driver. Through March Pat, People Against Drunk Driving, I hope to prevent others from making the same mistakes and suffering the same consequences I have. Please don't drink and drive. Please don't get in the car with the drunk driver. Please don't drive drunk with your kids in the car. Kids listen to your parents and teachers. They just want to make good citizens of you. They are to help. I never listened, and look what happened. And I want to thank you again, Mr. Mayor, and all you council members leaving. You did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. James Cazera.
Hello, my name's James Cazera. I'm a Reno resident. I voted today, and I found out, because I live in Cold Springs, that I could not vote for mayor, city council, or any city issues because it is still considered county, even though Cold Springs is in Reno. We pay Reno taxes, and I think that we should have a say also on how the city is run by being able to vote for city functions and stuff like that because you annexed Winnemucca Springs out there, so they probably don't get able to vote. There's a whole lot of places that you annexed years ago, a few years ago, that we don't have any say in voting for you or the city council or city offices or anything. And I would like to see that changed. And I left my phone number and emails, so I'd like an answer to this. If I have to go to the county, I will. I just want to bring this to your attention, that even though we live in Reno, we can't vote for anybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Chip Hobson.
Mr. Mayor, Council, today, Chip Hobson, on behalf of the Board of Directors of Sierra Nevada Community Aquatics, along with Mike Ginsburg. We are here today to thank you for your continued support of our efforts to bring a new multi-use, multi-generational aquatic center to the city of Reno. You all have supported us through too many years of trying to get this done, but we sincerely appreciate all the support. Most recently, the city, the special events committee, the Parks and Rec staff, as well as all of you assisted us in hosting our annual fundraising event held last month. Despite some difficult and challenging weather for our in-pool activities, we had a good turnout and a great event, a great day, starting with the kids in the pool at Idowild in the morning. We kind of, very quickly moved our barbecue lunch over to the California building as we had that reserved, thanks to you for the day, and continued that event there, which led right into a recognition ceremony of the past, present, and future of aquatics in Reno, being 30 years of Idowild Pool, the newly renovated and now open and great Northwest Pool, and then our effort to bring a center back to the Moana site. Had a nice ceremony. Councilwoman Breckus came and shared a few words. We had previous city employees that were part of that when Idowild was rebuilt 30 years ago there as a part of that ceremony. And then our evening fundraising event, again, at the California building. We had a nice turnout and good support at both the event and in our follow-up efforts to continue to raise funds, to move our effort forward. And with that, we would like to present the city with a poster of the event signed by our guest Olympic athletes that you have placed around the city. We've seen the others from previous years. And once again, really appreciate your support. To those outgoing council members and the mayor, thank you for all the support over the years. We look forward to continued support in your roles as private citizens or whatever next steps may be. We know that we'll have supporters in you, and thank you for that.
Thank you. Just bring it if you get it. Tia Craft.
I am here to speak today in opposition to the possible introduction of a resolution or resolutions regarding agenda items H5 and H6. The city of Reno is currently estimated to be $500 to over $600 million in debt. The properties in question have real market value that can be used to pay down our debt since the properties are deemed unnecessary for public purposes. The only fair and equitable way to dispose of these properties is the best interest of the city residents, is to offer these properties for sale or auction. You can't simply give them away without public discussion or full disclosure to the private entities bring into question the fairness and integrity of the board. The city and its assets are the legal property of the residents and citizens of Reno, and as such, we would seek maximum compensation in the disposition of these properties. The city council needs to explain by what right and for what reason they would give them away for nothing, even to charitable causes. I ask the city council to table these agenda items and any proposed resolutions to the effect of we giving away taxpayer money and assets when the city is in such an unfavorable, unfavorable financial position without considering the lawful sale at maximum value. As elected officials, you are required to be good stewards of the public's money, and this action in no way protects the public interest in these properties. I also wonder what kind of precedent it will set in giving the city council the ability to liquidate public assets at their discretion with no accountability. If the council continues in this proposed action, I fear that the public trust and well-being will be compromised, and it could lead to litigation by any private or public entity who may have interest in lawfully purchasing these properties at market value. Thank you.
Thank you. Troy Abney. Troy Abney. He put a zero here. I know what his name is. He learns to write.
After all these years, for the record, Troy Abney with the Chamber of Reno Sparks in northern Nevada. Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Zadra, Councilman Torch, Mr. Cadlec, Ms. Jones, did I get everybody on that list? Thank you very much for your service to the citizens of the city of Reno these past 12 You have been strong leaders when it comes to enhancing our economic vitality in this region. Thank you for putting up with all the phone calls and emails and having to look at me and see me speak at this microphone way too many times over the years. While the chamber's been in this community a long time, I haven't. But I have been told that this council and the one that immediately preceded it a couple years ago was probably the most cohesive, business-friendly, able to get things done and move this city forward that we've seen in a long time, and I thank you for that. And, Mr. Mayor, I know that you and I haven't always agreed, and since this is a family TV show, I can't recount some of those conversations that we've had. But I want to thank you personally. Bob, I respect the hell out of you.
Thank you.
I appreciate your leadership, and we thank you again for all your service, and I won't spend much more of your meeting wasting your time, but again, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Reagan Henry and McKenna Earth. Oh, there you are. Hi, guys. Pull the mic down. Introduce yourselves for the record.
For the record, my name is Reagan Henry.
And for the record, my name is McKenna Peretti.
And we are players of the U-16 Lady Jaguars of the Spanish Springs Soccer Club. We're here to thank Mr. Mayor Bob Kachal for his generous donation to our team. Because of his sponsorship last season, we were able to travel to two out-of-state tournaments, and we took home first in both. We would not have been able to travel without his sponsorship, so thank you.
Thank you.
We would also like to thank you for all that you have done for the youth soccer in northern Nevada. We appreciate that greatly, and so as a small token of our thank you, our thanks and appreciation, we would like to present to you this plaque showing that you sponsored the U-16 Lady Jaguars. Thank you so much for your donation.
Thank you.
And to the council, thank you for your time.
Hi, Mr. Kachal, City Council. Trey stole my thunder. I wanted to name them all individually as well, but I want to thank everybody. There has been times, Mr. Cadlec, Ms. Zadra, Mr. Kachal, Mr. Torch, and Lynette. And I know there's times that we didn't agree as well, but thank you so much for your service. I appreciate it. I know it's tough sometimes. And then I also want to thank Mr. Chomp. They had a very successful event down at one of my buildings. They had that afterburn, and it was getting all them licenses in order and everything else for them to do that. A very another artsy thing that they do in this town for the afterburn, and thank you, Mr. Chomp. It was another good event for Reno. Thank you very much, and thanks for your service.
Thank you. Terry Thomas.
Terry Thomas, 4885 Snellio for the record in Reno. I would also like to thank all of you for your service. I have a special appreciation for how difficult it is. I would just like to address the issue of the expenditure of the remaining monies from the RTC right-of-way purchase for the Southeast Connector. My concern is this, that there was an implicit promise that was made that the nine holes that might be disappearing in the Southeast Connector's ultimate construction would be replaced. And clearly, since it appears that some $1.4 million has already been allocated to paying off some of the Rosewood Lakes Golf Course debt, and an agenda item today, H1, would indicate that another $3.7 million might disappear from that pot of money. I'm concerned that there was a promise to those of us who golf and those of us who live in that region to replace that recreational facility. I remain concerned about the Southeast Connector on a number of issues, not the least of which are environmental and flood-related, but I would just ask you to consider the promise that you made to those of us who golf. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam Dene.
Sam Dene, the encyclopedia of Reno government, and I love it when there's a lot of people at the Sam Dene Show. I'm an Air Force Academy graduate. I've been to more meetings than all of these people added together, and I'm not going to say anything about the dysfunctional pathetic Reno Gazette media mouses today. I'm here to tell you, I'm here to say the things that everybody thinks, but only Sam has the courage to come up here and say. And I'm living proof that the vote-stealing traitors are totally in control of the voting system. If the vote-stealing traitors were not in control, I would be on that side of the dais. My credentials are at least as good as all of theirs added together and probably better. Well, first of all, I agree with that lady over there. Reno City Hall never should have been purchased. It's a waste of $30 to $40 million, and now they're going to spend another $3.7 million paying this boondoggle off where they can eat their lavish caviar up on the 15th floor. And here, I was going to be Mr. Nice Guy. We've got some commendations and proclamations coming down in a few minutes, and I'm here to talk about those. These folks are going to get, they're going to be given some proclamations because of the contributions they've made to the community. Most of those contributions would have not even happened if Sam had not come to this podium and told them what to do and what not to do. Most of the time, they didn't do what I told them not to do, such as buying this building and wasting $30 to $40 million and another $3.7 million going down. So, we're talking about the wonderful contributions that they've made. Guess what? Sam has been contributing for many, many years, and he's done it everything philanthopically, meaning for free, just out of my heart, because I'm a good person, a great person, a wonderful person, and also humble. But these nice shovels over there, these guys, they're getting these, they've been making these contributions, but guess what? You, the taxpayer, you, the taxpayer, don't even know it. And nobody else would ever say this, but you have been contributing also. You've contributed $1 million to each one of those people up there, $1 million to each one of them in their salaries and not counting their retirements that are coming down for the rest of their lives. Here I am saying the things that only Sam would say, and everybody knows is true, and if you didn't think about it, you can think about it now. I've got nothing against these people. They're probably good people out there. I'd probably have a beer or a cup of coffee with them, although I doubt that they'd want to have a beer with me after what I've said, as usual. But they know that Sam is the most patriotic and heroic person that they've ever seen in their lives to go along with his humbleness. Last but not least, everybody's asking me who to vote for in this last boondoggle going down, and I'm telling everybody, saying, "Don't be a don't voter. Don't vote. The voting system is corrupted and broken. Down in the bowels of those computers, they're stealing your votes. Don't let them steal your votes. Just stay home."
Excuse me, I just had to clear my throat a minute there. Mr. Lee Gibson.
Can I have a few more minutes?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Lee Gibson, for the record. I just want to take a moment and thank Dwight Torch and Sharon Zadra for your great service at the Regional Transportation Commission. You did a great job during your tenure there, and you really helped to establish a groundwork, foundation for us to do a lot of great things in our community. So, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Now, we'll go to item A5, city manager announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm honored to announce that Google has named Reno as the 2014 E-City for the state of Nevada. The E-City Award recognizes the strongest online business communities in all 50 states. We're proud of Reno for its smart, creative use of technology and innovation, and it is our pleasure to accept this award on behalf of our local businesses. So, congratulations to all those businesses out there. I'd also like to remind the council and the public that the city of Reno is hosting a public safety forum tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM here in City Hall. Purpose of the public safety forum is to define what public safety means to the community, focusing specifically on the areas of dispatch, fire, police, and REMZA. The forum will also be televised on Charter Channel 194 and streamed live at reno.gov/meetings. As many of you are probably aware, this year marks the state of Nevada's 150th birthday. The actual birthday is Friday, October 31st, also known as Nevada Day. The state's Nevada 150 Commission has done a phenomenal job of promoting the birthday throughout 2014, but we wanted to do our part as well. Recently, the city council told us why home means Nevada to them, and our Office of Communications and Community Engagement has put together a short video that we'd like to show now.
Home means Nevada to me because it truly is the land where anything is possible, including where a girl from a small town raised on a farm on the banks of the Truckee River can make it to the halls of city government in the biggest little city in the world. Happy birthday, Nevada.
Home means Nevada to me because it's all about family and friends. Nevada's about family, fresh air, and freedom. Happy birthday, Nevada.
Home means Nevada to me because we have some of the best hospitality in the world and incredible landscapes and incredible businesses. It's an opportunity that's endless here in Nevada. Happy birthday, Nevada.
Home means Nevada to me because it is our state song that the schoolchildren still learn, and the imagery in that song is something that speaks to me and attracted me to Nevada. It's where the mountains meet the desert and the gray hills and the landscape. And so, happy birthday, Nevada, and let's celebrate the simple time and the pioneers who helped make our state great and worked on teaching that song to generations.
Home means Nevada to me because we've got four seasons, a fabulous university, and a community spirit that is unmatched anywhere. Happy birthday, Nevada.
It's a home of opportunity. I came here as a truck driver. I've been chairman of the Board of Regents at the university. I've owned a couple of businesses in town. I've been lieutenant governor of the state, and have the honor of being mayor for 12 years in this great city. Home means Nevada. Happy birthday, Nevada. 150 looks good on you. I'm halfway there.
While we're on the subject of Nevada's birthday, I wanted to remind the council and the public that the Nevada Day Parade will be held on Saturday, November 1st, in Carson City, beginning with a military flyover at 10:00 AM. Mayor Kachal and fellow council members will be participating in the parade. Finally, Lieutenant Governor Krilik recently invited Nevadans to join him and Governor Sandoval for Nevada Sings, a statewide sing-along of Home Means Nevada. On Thursday, October 30th, at 10:00 AM, Nevadans can join together to demonstrate their state pride by singing a rendition of Home Means Nevada in an attempt to set a record for the most people in an American state to sing their state home song at the same time. To participate on social media, you can use hashtag Nevada Sings, and for more information on Nevada 150 events, you can visit nevada150.org. And finally, I'd like to take this opportunity to notify the public that the city of Reno offices will be closed on Friday, October 31st in observation of Nevada Day. 31st is also Halloween, and we would please take extra caution as children will be out trick-or-treating once night falls. The Reno Police Department would like to remind children to stay on the sidewalks and use crosswalks, carry a flashlight, travel in groups, and wear reflective clothing, and make sure your parents inspect your treats. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now, we'll go to presentations. Item C1, Economic Development. Yeah, I guess I should follow the agenda. Let's go, approval of the agenda. Have motion second, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Approval of the minutes for October 8th. Motion second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Cash disbursements. Do I have a second? Got a second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now, we'll go to item C1, Economic Development Update. Gerald Miller.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. For the record, Barbara DiCiano.
Talk into the mic, please.
I am. Is it on? Hello? Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. Barbara DiCiano, for the record, introducing Gerald Miller from Art Spot Reno. She is a coordinator of this beautiful new site and public awareness campaign. So, with that, I will leave the floor to Gerald. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Gerald Miller, and I am the co-owner and publisher of Art Spot Reno, and with me is...
I am Eric Brooks, for the record.
And thank you for inviting us to speak to you about Art Spot Reno. Reno is poised to be a culturally vibrant city and a true arts destination. Art Spot Reno is one of the cultural collaborators that will be part of this rapid redevelopment of Reno as a creative center. We have a website dedicated to promoting and providing a voice for the Reno arts community. Perhaps you've seen the bright red and yellow flags flying around Reno. Every time you see one of these flags, you know there is local art inside. This integration of art and business creates economic growth, builds community, and will push us to become that center of creativity. Art Spot Reno was the brainchild of Samantha Strummel, co-owner of Wedge Ceramic Studio in Sierra Water Gardens on Dickerson Road. She had the vision... She had the vision to celebrate Reno's year-round cultural arts scene by starting Art Spot. She created Art Spot Reno as a means for artists, galleries, museums, performance theaters, and businesses showing local art to use the Art Spot Reno brand to maximize exposure to Reno residents and visitors. Take a look at our beautiful website. We celebrate the city's art from fine to quirky. I write a blog, and we provide reviews. We maintain a comprehensive events calendar. I have to say, it's the best in Reno. We celebrate and applaud cultural entrepreneurship. Businesses that show and sell art, galleries, and arts organizations can buy a yearly membership or can be a sponsor of Art Spot Reno.
We are so excited to be working with the Reno Arts and Culture Commission as one of our sponsors. As a matter of fact, Art Spot Reno hosted the reception for Art Blast, our city's only juried art show. We had over 400 people attending, and it was a big success. So thank you very much for that support. The first Art Spot event, though, was back in July, the Discover Dickerson, between the river and the rails. If you haven't been to Dickerson Road, you definitely need to check it out. This was a day celebrating art and music, as well as an introduction to the creativity that has developed naturally along that lone road of once-empty warehouses. Under the umbrella of Art Spot Reno, we have also developed a monthly community event called Art Walk Reno. Every first Thursday, starting at Liberty Fine Art Gallery, you can see upwards of fifty local and regional artists showing new works in over eighteen venues throughout the Riverwalk Downtown District. This event allows an evening to view established artists at places like Sierra Arts and here at Metro Gallery, emerging artists at Art Space, the University Annex Gallery, and Liberty Fine Arts, and then new developing artists at spots like Noble Pie Parlor and the Neapolitan Gallery inside Monolith. So every month, we also partner with a local nonprofit, donating ten percent of our event ticket sales to them. We also commission a featured artist for a limited edition signed and numbered print and hand-painted glasses, and this gives people in the community an opportunity to start collecting local art at affordable prices.
In conclusion, Reno has tourism, but we want Reno to be a hotbed of creativity that will power innovation across economic sectors. Artists bring income into our city and can improve the performance of local businesses. We want to spark new initiatives and cultural entrepreneurship in our city. We believe that there should be an ongoing celebration of the arts in Reno. Yes, we have Art Town in July, and we've got Burning Man in August, but Reno is the spot for year-round art. The arts are not something you meet at your destination, but they are a way of life. And I would like to echo what Nettie said, and I invite you all to come out now that you're going to have some more free time, and please come to our art events, and I want to see you all out there, first Thursdays, walking the streets of downtown Reno for Art Work Reno. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to have to jump out of session just a little bit because we've got two people that need to get back to work. Judge Gardner? Judge Dilworth? Will all you judges get up there?
They all need to be back to work, so thank you.
Oh, is that—well, I didn't know you brought the whole clan.
Yep, we came in force.
All right.
We also have our court administrator, Cassandra Jackson, to honor Judge Dilworth, as well as Justin O'Rooper, our chief of marshals. Before I get started, I want to make a preliminary comment on behalf of the court, all of us. Sharon, Bob, and Dwight, on behalf of the court and Judge Dilworth, who is leaving us as well after twenty-seven years on the bench, we want to thank you collectively and individually for the outstanding work you have done over the last twelve years. You know, as elected officials ourselves, we know that it's not easy. You're tasked daily, monthly, and yearly with making important decisions that affect thousands of members of the community, and it's a difficult and challenging job. The ACDC Band, in their famous song, "If You Want to Rock and Roll," it's a long way to the top if you want to rock it all, rock and roll, summed it up in one of their lyrics. And as interesting and as cheesy as some of the lyrics may be, they did say, "If you want to be the star of stage and screen, watch out, it's rough and mean." And I think that, in a loose sense, sums it up. We thank you for the support of the court, the city, the years I spent at the city attorney's office, my years here. You've done a fabulous job. We're going to miss each one of you. We're going to miss you, Dwight, Bob, you two, and Sharon. We're going to miss all of you. So thank you very much on behalf of the court.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're also going to miss Judge Dilworth, and I'm here to read a proclamation on behalf of the mayor. Judge Dilworth, his twenty-seven years on the bench come to an end. He decided not to run and to retire in the week after the election of the canvas of the vote that he'll be replaced. So, Jay, a proclamation from the mayor, Robert A. Koschel. Whereas Judge Dilworth, Jay Dilworth, graduated from McGeorge Law School and holds a degree in speech communication from the University of Nevada, and whereas Judge Dilworth was a deputy district attorney in Sacramento, California, after completing law school, and then returned to Reno to serve as an assistant city attorney prior to being elected to the bench. Whereas in June of 1987, Judge Dilworth was elected to the Reno Municipal Court bench, where he has served for twenty-seven years and is the most senior judge of the Reno Municipal Court, and currently he is the longest-serving judge in Washoe County. Whereas Judge Dilworth has been a resident of the city of Reno since 1971 and has faithfully served his community as member of numerous community boards of directors and task forces, including the Committee to Aid Abused Women and Family Suicide, and in addition to that, the Family Suicide Prevention and Crisis Call Center, the Reno Family YMCA, the Homeless Coalition, and he has served on the Northern Nevada DUI Task Force, not to mention a few of the many committees Judge Dilworth has been on. Whereas Judge Dilworth served on a special Nevada Supreme Court Committee to Rewrite the Canon of Judicial Ethics and a Special Study Committee on the Authority of the Nevada Commission of Judicial Discipline, he has been a member of the Board of Governors of the American Judges Association and has served on the Executive Committee as well. Judge Dilworth has received the Distinguished Jurist Award from both the National Judicial College and the Nevada Supreme Court, and has received an award for outstanding achievement in judicial education with more than 1,000 hours of judicial education. Whereas Judge Dilworth has served the city of Reno well through his wise, intelligent counsel and has rendered justice with fairness, dignity, and integrity. And I know that for a fact. Fairness and integrity always. Whereas Judge Dilworth has committed his life to serving his community and along with his wife, Peggy, by his side, November 12th, 2014, will retire from the Reno Municipal Court, and we're going to miss him. On behalf of the mayor, Bob Koschel, and the city council, the mayor hereby proclaims Wednesday, October 22nd, 2014, as a day to honor Judge Dilworth.
Judge Gardner just asked if I wanted to say anything.
Microphone to a judge, of course. The only thing I wanted to say was, you read all this stuff, I get tired. Anyway, thank you very much. I appreciate the honor, and the last couple of years, I've not had much administrative duties, so I've not seen all of you very often, and the council, but I've had the opportunity to talk with some of you. I appreciate that. And I'm very glad that, also today, that Mayor Koschel is also receiving an award, as well as Councilwoman Zadra and Dorch. I remember meeting you in October of 1988. That was a long time ago. Thank you very much. I appreciate the honor very much.
Go to item C2, Mary Connolly.
For the record, Mary Connolly, State Director for United States Senator Harry Reid. I also want to introduce—I have a colleague with me, General Bob Herbert, who works with Senator Reid in Washington, DC, as a senior policy advisor. He's here because he, over the years, has developed a great relationship with the mayor, and he didn't want to miss this. I want to thank Councilwoman Zadra and Councilman Dorch for your service. We're very grateful. But we do have a congressional record for the mayor. Now, first off, it's long, it takes about three minutes, but second, we don't do these very often because the senators involved in the writing—you can imagine how long that takes—and, you know, then it has to be read on the Senate floor so that it actually goes in the congressional record, so bear with me. I'm going to read this. This is congratulating Mayor Koschel. "Mr. President, I rise today to honor and thank my friend, Mayor Robert Koschel of Reno, for his more than three decades of public service in Nevada. After serving as the mayor of Reno for twelve years, Mayor Koschel will be retiring on November 12th, 2014. I am grateful for his dedication and commitment to the people of Reno and to the state of Nevada. Over the past thirty-five years, Mayor Koschel has worked at nearly every level of state and local government. Beginning with his election to the University of Nevada Board of Regents in 1979, Bob proved himself to be a strong leader with a keen ability to listen and understand the needs of those he served. Renoites and Nevadans quickly came to rely on Bob's leadership and ultimately elected him as lieutenant governor of the state. A skilled businessman, Bob understood the need for a coordinated state effort to spur economic development. As lieutenant governor, Bob Koschel helped create the Nevada Commission on Economic Development and the Commission on Tourism. He later went on to chair both of these vitally important state commissions. First elected as mayor of Reno in 2002, Mayor Koschel was subsequently re-elected in 2006 and 2010. During his tenure, Mayor Koschel once again displayed his business acumen, helping transform Reno into a hub of innovation, spurring investment from some of America's most prestigious corporations. Mayor Koschel also spearheaded the continued revitalization of downtown Reno, making it a destination for special events and creating a pedestrian and family-friendly atmosphere. As mayor, Bob Koschel met some of Reno's most difficult social issues head-on. He refused to shy away from the issue of poverty, instead developing programs to help those hardest-hit by the Great Recession. Mayor Koschel was the driving force behind the creation of the Community Assistance Center, which houses multiple services, including free food and social services for the city's homeless and needy. In every role he has assumed, Mayor Koschel has made Nevada a better place to live. His work as the mayor of the city of Reno will be dearly missed, but I have no doubt that Mayor Koschel will find some way to continue serving the people of Nevada. Although he's retiring from office, Mayor Koschel will never retire from helping others. I wish Bob and his wife Nancy Koschel all the best as they begin their new chapter of their lives. I thank Nancy, their four children, and nine grandchildren for sharing Bob with Nevada. Our state is a better place because of Mayor Bob Koschel's many years of exemplary service. This is great. To Bob, from his forever friend."
It's a great honor. Tell the senator I said hello and thank him very, very much. Now we'll go to item C3, Nevada League of Cities. Emily Carter? Nope, that's not Emily Carter. Come on up here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, for the record, Wes Henderson was Nevada League of Cities municipalities. President Carter couldn't be with us today. She had an engagement with her day job that prevented her from traveling. But it's a pleasure to be here again. It's like I was just here about a month ago. I'd like to give you just a brief overview of some of the activities of the League of Cities over the last year, and again, thank you for your participation and support in the league. We recently had our conference down in North Las Vegas, and I'd like to, Mr. Mayor, thank your staff for serenely helping us to get you down there, where we were happy to present you with the Public Official of the Year Award, and congratulations on that again. It was well deserved. We've made a few changes over the last year with the structure of the league. Prior to that, we had two types of memberships, where we had cities that were members, and we had towns and GIDs that were affiliate members. We have done away with that distinction, and now if you are a member of the league, you are a member of the league. And we've also changed the makeup of the executive board, where we have three at-large members, one from a large city, one from a smaller city or large town, and one from a smaller town or GID. This way, all types of our members will be on the executive committee at all times, and I think that will make us a more rounded league and enable us to better serve all of our members. We're also working on some contract agreements that we hope to enter into shortly that will both provide potential cost savings to our members and also some additional revenue for the league. We're also continuing to work on expanding the league umbrella to get a more formal relationship with our affiliate groups. You know, we stood up the mayors and chairs council. We are working on bringing in the clerks and the attorneys and the finance people and bringing them in as well. We also were successful in launching our Friends of the League program, which was our old corporate partners program. Before, it was a one-size-fits-all. Now we've changed where we've tiered it, so the level of participation that our friends want, they could pay a consumer fee. I'd like to talk briefly about the upcoming legislative session, which I think appropriately enough begins on Groundhog Day, because sometimes it seems like you're doing the same thing over and over again. As you know, the league is allowed five BDRs each session. The BDRs, you should have a handout about the BDRs. I'd like to go over them very briefly. The first BDR, we believe, is a cleanup bill to clarify that the proceeds from residential construction taxes can be used for improvements to existing parks within the district where the revenue was generated. The second BDR would reduce a duplication for certain businesses who are required to get a permit from the Department of Taxation. If the business is wholly located within the city, right now, they still have to go to the county to also get county approval. We're trying to eliminate that so that the city governing board is the final determining board for businesses that are located wholly within a city. The third BDR, as you know, you have to submit your tentative budget order before April 15th of every year, but then the statute requires you to hold a budget hearing on a specific date. Okay? A lot of times, this causes local governments to have to hold a special meeting, which, of course, incurs costs. So what we're attempting to do with this BDR is simply add the words "or before" to that date so that you can hold your budget hearing during a regularly scheduled meeting. Our fourth BDR would establish a state coordinating agency for the National Main Street Program. Main Street Program is an excellent program. It's good for economic development, historic preservation, tourism, and revitalization of specific areas, but unless there's a state coordinating agency, you can't be officially recognized as a Main Street Program. And there are some grant opportunities that are only available to members, so we're trying to get the state government to fund that. And then finally, we have another BDR that is attempting to define what is extraordinary use of personnel or technological resources when complying with public records requests. You know, there's a bill last session that changed the way you have to comply with those requests. We just want to clarify that so that the request, it could take a lot of time or a lot of resources that you can recoup some of your costs for that. So those are our BDRs. I'd be more than happy to take any questions on that or anytime, reach out, email me, text me. We'll be there to answer your questions. The only other thing I would like to mention, and this is not until next year, in March, the Congressional Cities Conference, and— the Congressional Cities Conference in Washington DC. Ms. Conley's boss tells us every year when we go back there how important it is for local elected officials to come back to Washington DC and meet with our delegation, so if possible, please join us in Washington DC in March. And then finally, there is no group of people that I respect more than those of you that are willing to stand up, put your name on the ballot, get elected, and serve your fellow citizens, and suffer the slings and arrows that come with that. And so we started something new this year with the league, and we want to honor the people that are, that have served and are going out of service. Mr. Mayor, we were able to give you your award when you were somehow making it north But if I may, I have a couple of awards to give to Councilwoman Zadra and Councilman Dorch, if I may.
Would you all please go forward.[660.12][660.12](APPLAUSE)
But this is just a small token of the appreciation of your colleagues in the League of Cities. Thank you very much for your service.
Mr. Henderson, I want to thank you and the league for working with us during our financial troubles and working with us so that we could stay alive and be a member of the League of Cities, and I accept this award on behalf of all of these council members and the previous council members that I've served with. I really accept this, it's a great honor, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Reno is very important to us in the league, and we will do what we can to keep you guys involved.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for all your service.
We will have Cosmos later today.[728.12][728.12](LAUGHING) Thank you. All right, proclamations. Proclamation for Sharon Zadra. Ms. Zadra, if you'll go forward, please. Yes, Councilman Delgado is going to present it.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I have the great honor of reading this proclamation. Whereas Councilmember Sharon Zadra is a native Nevadaan and a graduate of the University of Nevada Reno, and whereas Councilmember Zadra was first elected to the office of Ward II, councilmember for the city of Reno in 2002 and re-elected in 2006 and 2010, dedicating 12 years to the citizens of our community, and whereas Councilmember Zadra helped develop projects to improve Ward II neighborhoods and our community as a whole, including the revitalization of the old Moana Baseball Stadium and creation of Moana Springs and the multi-use sports fields and potential for additional recreational amenities, and whereas, as a member of the Reno Sparks Convention and Visitor Authority, Councilmember Zadra helped enhance destination marketing campaigns and special events opportunities, and whereas Councilmember Zadra consistently reached out to residents through her coffee and comment sessions at locally-owned coffee houses and walks in neighborhood parks, and whereas Councilmember Zadra has been a champion of building public-private partnerships and collaborative relationships with local, state, and federal agencies, participating in IBM Smarter Regions, and sitting on a number of regional governing boards, and whereas Councilmember Zadra has been a dedicated public servant, focused on building strong neighborhoods and a diverse local economy. Now therefore, I, Oscar Delgado, on behalf of the mayor and the Reno City Council, proclaim that Wednesday, October 22, 2014, as a day to honor Councilmember Sharon Zadra.[871.12][871.12](APPLAUSE)
Wow, what do you say? Except thank you. Thank you to our fabulous staff and community, and I look forward to seeing the new generation and taking us to a new level.
Mayor and council, it's my honor to present this proclamation to Councilman Dorch on behalf of the mayor and council. Whereas Councilman Dorch grew up in Nevada, graduating from Worcester High School and the University of Nevada Reno, and whereas Councilmember Dorch was first elected to the office of Ward IV councilmember for the city of Reno in 2002 and re-elected in 2006 and 2010, serving Ward IV residents and the entire community for 12 years. And whereas Councilmember Dorch has been a loyal public servant, serving on the Board of Adjustment, Financial Advisory Board, and Planning Commission prior to his first run for political office, and whereas Councilmember Dorch worked tirelessly in partnership with Washoe County to build and open the long-anticipated North Valley's Regional Water Splash Park, that is enjoyed by residents as an added park amenity, and whereas Councilmember Dorch led the efforts on the Northeast Neighborhood Plan to support the neighborhood's residential character and quality of life for residents and provide guidance for the development and redevelopment of the neighborhood area, and whereas during his tenure, Councilmember Dorch has worked to further regional improvement projects through his service as chairman of the Regional Transportation Commission, chairman of the Regional Planning Governing Board, and chairman of the Reno Sparks Convention and Visitor Authority, and whereas Councilmember Dorch has been a strong advocate towards a thriving community full of exciting special events and economic opportunities, now therefore, on behalf of Robert A. Koschel, mayor of the city of Reno, I do hereby proclaim Wednesday, October 22, 2014, as a day to honor Councilmember
Thank you, thank you. It's been a great ride, it's been a great 12 years, it's been an honor serving the citizens of this community for the last 12 years, and it's been an honor to serve with the other council members and the mayor that I've worked with over the last 12 years, and most importantly, it's been an honor to work with the staff that we've had at this city the entire time I've been here, and especially since Andrew, you came on board, the staff has been amazing, and I just can't emphasize enough how great this staff is, and that truly is the group that is moving this community forward.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office, it is my pleasure, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and citizens, to read this proclamation on your behalf. Whereas John J. Cadlec graduated from the University of Nevada, S.R. University of North Dakota School of Law, and holds an undergraduate degree in political science from Henderson State University, and John Cadlec has been a resident of Nevada since 1974, and he enjoys many recreational opportunities in the Truckee Meadows, such as being an avid golfer, hiker, bicyclist, and he also volunteers at the First Tee of Northern Nevada, which provides programs to introduce and teach golf to youth. And he is a member of the Rotary Club of Reno and Western Industrial Nevada, known as WIN. And prior to his election as the Reno City Attorney in 2006, Mr. Cadlec had an extensive history of public service to the state of Nevada, serving as a deputy district attorney in Elko, state of Nevada deputy public defender assigned to Elko, chief trial deputy for Carson City, deputy district attorney for Washoe County, deputy district attorney for Pershing County, and serving six years, 16 years, as the justice of the peace for Washoe County, Nevada. Whereas as a two-term Reno City Attorney, John Cadlec is most proud of the accomplishments of his staff, which provided exceptional legal services during and after the economic downturn, given a full reorganization of the city attorney's office with an approximate 30% reduction in both personnel and budgetary funding. Whereas the Civil Division's accomplishments included providing excellent legal services on major civil matters, code revisions, compliance with Nevada's open meeting law, and maintaining an over 95% success rate on civil rights, personal injury, and land use cases, business license and code hearings, and related appeals. Whereas the Risk Division's accomplishments include efficient and effective claims management and insurance policy reviews resulting in reduced renewal costs for the city of Reno. The Criminal Division's accomplishments included expanding prosecution services to the Airport Authority, University of Nevada, and other local agencies, while maintaining exemplary service delivering to the citizens of Reno, including conducting prosecutions with integrity and fairness, with the strong focus on the rights of victims and witnesses. Whereas John Cadlec has committed the majority of his legal career to serving the public, and on November 12, 2014, will retire from the city attorney's office, after providing the Reno City Council and the citizens of this fine community eight years of excellent legal advice and dedicated service. Therefore, I on behalf of Robert A. Koschel, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, October 22, 2014, as a day to honor the city attorney, John Cadlec.[1325.41][1325.41](APPLAUSE)
I just want to thank the mayor and council and the previous council members, it has been a pleasure to work with you for eight years. I want to commend City Manager Klinger and the other city managers that have been here since I've been the city attorney, and all of the various department heads, and most of all, the staffs, because it is their staffs that make the city what it is. But most of all, I want to thank all the attorneys and the staff of the city attorney's office, both past and present. I don't deserve this day, they do. They're the ones who have worked hard on behalf of this city to provide competent and effective legal advice, and they've done that during these eight years, and I commend every one of them. I will miss every one of them with all of my heart, because they have worked hard on behalf of this city, and I cannot thank them all enough. This is really their day, not mine.
Okay. Whereas Lynette Jones has been employed by the city of Reno since October 1985, at which time she made the enormous hourly wage of $6.11, amounting to $12,700 a year, and from the moment a young woman that hailed from Butte, Montana, was hired, City Hall really didn't know what hit her, as her endless supply of beautisms, and many of which are still used today, kept us all entertained. And whereas Lynette was hired by Gil Madigarn, then-city clerk, as an administrative clerk, and for many years, she tirelessly indexed each and every council item from each and every council meeting by typing information onto not one, but several eight-and-a-half-by-11 index cards in an effort to cross-reference, and she was often reminded by the city clerk of the importance of those index cards, end quote. Little did she know, she would soon witness the indexing of an entire city council meeting being performed by one click of the mouse, and whereas Lynette was then promoted to transcribing secretary, and along with the promotion came a state-of-the-art word processor that was half the size of her office, and as much as she enjoyed typing minutes, she was finally appointed to fill the city clerk's shoes in November of 2002. And whereas Lynette spent many a lunch break, making runs to Woolworth for candy bars, this is a roasting proclamation, Arctic Circle for fry sauce, and to Dairy Queen for ice cream treats, as she fancied herself a Dairy Queen aficionado as she had worked there during high school, and whereas Lynette treated every person who entered the city's clerk office, or City Hall for that matter, as if she'd known them for years. No child ever left the city clerk's office without a cookie or a piece of candy, she accumulated many fans over the years that fell under the spell of her wacky humor and generous spirit, and whereas what they say, you can't take the girl out of Butte, but you can't take the Butte out of the girl, happy trails to you, Lynette, as you return to none other than Butte, Montana, to be reunited with your family, the silence in City Hall will be deafening. Now therefore, I, Jenny Breckus, on behalf of Mayor Koschel and the rest of the council, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, October 22, 2014, as a day of honor, day to honor Lynette I started in the city, with the city in August of 98, and worked through a staff till 2009, and I can, two of these "whereas" is the indecipherable index card system, I had to kneel down sometimes and call them over, because no one but them could understand it, and the candy that went out to the children, I think I had a daughter at 2001, and sometimes I'd come through and they'd give candy to kids who weren't even eating, like that, there was always candy for the kids, so we're going to miss you so much, Lynette, and I'm so happy for you.
Thank you. And I just want to say thank you to all of the staff I've worked with over the years, it's been a pleasure, and the mayor and city council, it's been my honor, and I'm going to miss everyone, but I'm going to go back to my mother family now.
Well, I certainly get the very distinct pleasure of reading the proclamation for our dear mayor, Bob Koschel. You know, there's lots of wonderful accolades that have been given today, and I have to tell you, and those of you that have ever attended a lunch or a meeting with Bob, you know it's never a short event, and that's not because the Bob, because Bob is necessarily so long-winded, it's because he shakes the hand of everybody in the room. Everybody is your forever friend. I thank you for your friendship. Okay. Whereas Mayor Bob Koschel is a graduate of Stephen F. Austin University and a veteran of the United States Air Force, and Mayor Bob Koschel has dedicated more than 30 years to public service for the state of Nevada and our local community, beginning his public career in 1979 as a University of Nevada Board of Regent, and then as lieutenant governor for the state of Nevada, and where Mayor Bob Koschel was first elected to the office of mayor in 2002 and re-elected in 2006 and in 2010, dedicating himself toward the betterment of the city of Reno for 12 years. And Mayor Koschel has worked to improve our community by strengthening existing partnerships and building new ones to reinvigorate and diversify our economy, leading the way to create new special event venues and business interests to our downtown, and whereas Mayor Koschel was a driving force in the completion of significant projects benefiting the Truckee Meadows. You get stuff done, including the successful completion of Retract Project, the largest public works project ever undertaken in northern Nevada, the Community Assistance Center, providing much-needed assistance to those in need, and the state-of-the-art AAA baseball stadium in our downtown, creating new business interests and family entertainment opportunities, and whereas during his tenure- And whereas during his tenure, Mayor Koschel has worked to broaden the vision for our city through his participation in efforts like the Mayor's Institute of Urban Design, IBM Smarter Cities, Smarter Regions, and Nevada's League of Cities. And whereas Mayor Koschel was presented with the Nevada League of Cities 2014-15 Public Official of the Year, that's a statewide honor, in recognition of his outstanding service to everybody in Reno and beyond. Whereas, the city of Reno is a better place to live, work, and play because of Mayor Koschel's exceptional leadership, hard work, and passion. Now therefore, I, Councilwoman Neoma Jarden, and Dwight Dorch, Vice Mayor of the city of Reno, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, October 22, 2014, as a day to honor Mayor Robert Koschel, Senior.
All of these accolades belong to every member of this Council and the previous Council, and to our wonderful staffs. Nobody, Bob Koschel, didn't do a damn thing. There's no "I" and "we," there's no "I" and "team." It's every one of us working together, all of our Council members, previous and today, and all of our city employees. We have the greatest city employees of any city in this state. They're very dedicated, they work very hard, and they're very resourceful. And they do a lot of wonderful things, and they don't get half the credit that they deserve. So I salute all of our city employees, and I thank y'all very much, and I thank my City Council members and previous Council members for the honor of working with you. It's been a great honor to be the Mayor of this city. Thank you. And really, the one I forgot to thank is my wife. We will be celebrating 50 years of marriage on Friday. My sons, daughters, and grandchildren, it's been a great honor to play and be here and to raise a family. Anyway, let's go to item F, the consent agenda. Item E, oh, I have to call it off by email, excuse me. The agenda, item E, any things for poll for discussion?
Mayor, I have E, 5, 6, and 7.
E, 5, 6, and 7. Okay. Any others?
Have motion second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item F.
I understand that this is a grant that the city pursued from the Truckee River Fund, which is a statutory set aside of water quality money that is on a competitive grant basis. And during the open period of the grant, a number of constituents, some came here, some spoke to me personally about the city applying for a river ranger, an ongoing expense to work on, you know, trying to clean up the river, the Truckee River, the trash we see from the tubers, the homeless camps. And a decision was made not to pursue funding for that, but to pursue funding for this project, and then I think also the Virginia Lake project ended up, the one that's kind of on hold with the island, being a Truckee River Fund pursuit. And I'm just wondering, it would seem to me that it is a council role, or we would have some process, maybe through the budget or something, to decide when we're going to pursue this ongoing grant process. What's the process that was come up, that came up to decide that we want to pursue this project for these grant funds?
For the record, John Flansford, Director of Public Works. The Truckee River Fund has an opening every six months where there are applications that are made for various projects. This was a project that Public Works put in for those funds and has been approved, and obviously is why we're coming for you today, is for acceptance of that grant. I cannot speak to ones that were or were not. As far as the Virginia Lake, we did apply for a grant also for Virginia Lake for some monitoring of water quality, and it was anticipated that we would probably look at also doing another application for a project in the spring that would be constructed, say, next fall, based on the water circulation, that aspect. But as far as speaking towards your question today, I can address the grant that we applied for for this project, but I can't speak to the other.
Well, who else eligible to apply for this grant funds? Is it just the public agencies that comprise of TMA? Does anyone have a understanding?
For the record, Glenn Daly from City Public Works Department. The applicants range from public agencies to various nonprofits that are also involved in interests in preserving our river and water quality. TMA is involved in some of the applications as well. So it's a broad spectrum of various groups and organizations and agencies.
Okay. Well, I would submit to my colleagues and Mr. Manager that this has been a source of funding that's ongoing, will ongo, and it's something that I think either we integrate into our budgeting or some sort of our thinking on our fiscal needs at a broader level, rather than, you know, bringing grant awards before us when the priorities haven't been set by the Council. My other question is, we did a Highland ditch, an agreement with the ditch companies, where we're backing in some sewer fund to maintain these private facilities. Is this money above and beyond what we allocated from the sewer fund a couple weeks ago?
This project is standalone. The Highland Canal is operated by TMA. This is a stormwater issue where stormwater has the ability to get into the Highland Canal that then goes to the treatment plant for treatment. It is our recommendation that, for this project, that we move forward with a project that would separate those flows so we would not have that condition occurring.
Okay, so this is just stormwater, it's not ditch water that is privately held and owned?
Correct. This is avoidance of stormwater getting within the canal.
Okay, okay. Thank you, and I'll move to approve this.
Have motion second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item E, 6.
Okay. With respect to TMA, was this, I sit on the Joint Coordinating Committee, is this a, was this on the Capitol budget that we adopted for the budget year? I don't recall seeing this one.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. Dave Kershaw, for the record, Dave Kershaw with Public Works. Yes, it was one of the, and I can't recall off the top of my head whether it was fiscal year 14 or 15.
Okay, okay.
I think it's 15.
So it's one that's been on the CIP, and do we have a sense of how much this could help the nitrogen situation? Is this meant to help the nitrogen situation?
No, it's not. It's to address other items out there at the plant.
Okay, just the maintenance schedule that's been...
Improve some processes out there, not necessarily associated with nitrogen, though, or some other treatment process with BOD and phosphorus.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. I'll move.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item E, 7.
Okay. Public Works staff again, thank you. In terms of the bridge, we made the decision last summer that we felt confident enough the bridge was going to go, so we moved the rink over there to Bay Ball. And so what's the current timing and thoughts on the bridge construction right now?
Currently, the plans have all been developed and are waiting. We've got all of our permits, applications in, we're waiting for some final environmental clearances through FHWA and through SHPO via Army Corps of Engineers. So that's our, I guess, the trigger, that final environmental clearance is for going out to bid.
Okay. In reading the language in here, I saw some discussion that I hadn't seen in previous bridge documents, and there's been many that have come forward related to waters of the United States and that we're not going to be in the waters of the United States. And that raised a concern for me, since we are in the core process, and we hear so much about the Southeast Connector waiting on the core to say whether or not they're going to environmental impact statement. And these two projects are often discussed about both awaiting core. Is there a chance that the core could rule that we are going through an EIS process, whether it's the financing sources, or that we are possibly in the waters of the United States?
I can't answer that right off the top of my head, but I will say that all of the documentation that the core needs to complete their permitting has been submitted over to SHPO, and we're really on the final stages of getting the memorandum of agreement with SHPO and the Army Corps of Engineers, and then the historic properties treatment planned. Those are the two outstanding islands, excuse me, islands, items between Army Corps of Engineers and SHPO.
So we're not waiting, like I understand the Southeast Connector is for a finding of negative significance impact, where it's not in the to-be-ruled-in-EIS need or not, correct?
That's correct. There's also going to be one more process that comes through with FHWA, and that's a categorical exclusion, and that's part of what will come next as well.
Okay, but that could turn into some sort of EIS process if it, I mean, that's the path that that would be on, right? I mean, the categorical exclusion is saying that you're not going to EIS, right?
That is not the path that's been presented or that we've been going towards for the last two years.
Okay. Do you have a current timeline? I haven't seen one recently, because I think maybe the dates have slipped on the last timeline staff presented us.
That's likely. Would you like me to get you something in memo?
Yes. Mr. Manager, do you think we could get a current timeline on projected dates for the construction of the bridge?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Go to item F1, Public. Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given and no correspondence was received.
Okay, thank you.
So this is Bill Number 6922, Ordinance Amending the Reno Municipal Code Title 18, Annexation and Land Development, Chapter 18.14, Regional Road Impact Fees, Section 18.14.501 through 18.14.508, entitled Regional Road Impact Fee, Reflect Changes in the Regional Road Impact Fee Interlocal Cooperative Agreement, General Administrative Manual, and Capital Improvements Plan Together with Other Matters Property Relating thereto.
Yes.
I have a number of questions about this, just a matter of process. In rereading the ordinance, it came to me, I think my mic is extra loud today, does it seem like? Can you guys turn me down? Is, it seems to contemplate in the framework for impact fees that the city does their own CIP, road work CIP. And I haven't seen a city road work CIP in years. I know what the master plan lists in terms of its roadway classification, I know what the CIP is that the Council adopts in concert with the budget in May, but I have not seen a city manufactured or prepared CIP with amendments in years. Does that exist?
For the record, Bill Goll, Senior Engineer, the city's CIP would be involved with Public Works. The CIP that's associated with the Regional Road Impact Fee program is the overall CIP for the region that RTC generates. I'm not sure about that.
But it seems to be throughout here, and I didn't circle some of them, that it contemplates that each jurisdiction has its own CIP. I know we have CIP in terms of, you know, road projects we're going to do on any year for our own funds, but I have never seen, it says here, in which the city does not adopt any revisions to the capital improvement plan. There's several references to the city having its own CIP.
The city does have its own CIP, again. The changes to, as far as the regional road impact fee program and calculations, that CIP is the regional CIP generated by the RTC.
Yeah, yeah. What I think we've done over the years, and I think we've changed what initially, when we did an impact fee program first came on, I think the city used to have their own CIP of road projects, and we've more or less stopped doing that and just pointed up, like your responses, to the regional impact, regional CIP as our CIP. Would that...
We do have our own CIP for our own construction projects.
For our own funded projects, correct.
This is a regional, for regional roads and the regional...
Yeah. Let me ask the RTC representative what she sees from her regional perspective. Do you see standalone documents that Washoe County have and the city of Sparks of their CIP projects, or do they just point up to the regional CIP?
For the record, Julie Masterpool, Senior Engineer with the Regional Transportation Commission. And to my knowledge, as far as the regional road impact fee, as Bill had mentioned, it's all referred back to the RTC's capital improvement plan. I can't say that I have seen something specific for Sparks or Washoe County that's separate than that for this program.
Okay, okay. Let me just, Mr. Mayor, since this is companion with the next item, ask some other questions about regional impact fees. Okay, okay, that's fine.
Except the report.
Okay, have second on that. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now, you've got a motion to refer, second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay.
All right, now we go to item F12. Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given and no correspondence was received.
Okay. We'll open it up, item F12.
Okay. Actually, the, what's made me think of that previous comments is in A1, it says, "After establishing a capital improvements advisory committee, designating collector and arterial streets and roads in their master plans, approving land use assumptions, and approving a capital improvements plan and proposed impact fee for each service unit, adopt an ordinance requiring all impact fees collected must be deposited in an interest-bearing account." It says Reno and Sparks will do this. Have an advisory committee designate the collector and arterial streets in their master plans, approve land use assumptions, and approve a capital improvements plan. So do we have that, that is a Reno standalone document?
We have a capital improvements plan for construction. We have our collector and arterial streets designated in our master plan.
I know that.
And then we did take the capital improvements plan for the RTC capital improvements plan for this program to our planning commission, which this Council designated as our capital improvements advisory committee, the first of October, to approve and provide comments to the Council.
Okay, so it's not an in-house document. We take RTC's document, and then we adopt it.
And we adopt it.
We're not sitting around scratching our heads and looking at what's Reno's road needs. Okay, that helps. Now let me ask you on the whereas, and I know this has been a long process, many, many months and many meetings that the RTC has held on the impact fee program, but 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, the fifth whereas. Whereas RTC is designated MPO and is conducting a region-wide transportation study which reveals the new development will increase demand for region-wide capacity, and that prior studies indicate that revenue generated will be inadequate. What is the name of this study? Is this, was this, is this the Tischler-Bice study that you're referring to?
Again, for the record, Bill Goll, this would be the Tischler-Bice study.
This is the, okay, which was a companion to ours. Okay, okay. And then my other question, okay, so those are on that, and then the Tischler-Bice is the next one. Okay, so that helps with that. Thank you.
Have motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item F13, resolution.
Resolution Number 8013, Resolution incorporating the fifth edition of the Regional Road Impact Fee System General Administrative Manual into Title 18.
Move to adopt.
Have motion second, do you have a question?
I do have a few comments and questions on this. Tell me about the decision to divide the benefit districts to north and south, because with the changed land use patterns that we're seeing... that we're seeing post-recession, I'm seeing a lot of development within the core, like Virginia Lakes. We've got some new condos on Mount Rose Street. But the way we've gone to just two benefit districts is impact fees generated in the core are eligible to be spent miles outside of the core. And when I read your CIP for impact fees, I see that many of the road projects from which impact fees will be generated are miles away from where I'm seeing the urban development. In addition, the roads that are eligible for impact fee use are those high-volume ones. So, ones that, this infill development that I'm seeing, whether it's Limbury in front of the Virginia Lake Apartments, or Mount Rose Street, are not eligible for impact fee use. So, what was the thinking behind these large splits?
Sure. Again, for the record, Julie Masterpool with the Regional Transportation Commission. During the Tischler-Bice study, we did take a look at some other options, one being an urban and suburban-type separation for service areas, and it didn't turn out to be very reasonable because of the, the urban areas were so small, the collection of fees, we'd never get enough money to do any projects that would be incorporated in those urban areas. Plus, it's a regional road impact fee program. Regional roads obviously are throughout the entire region, and even if you're building in one small area, those trips go throughout the region, you know? So, if you're at Mayberry, you're going to be traveling on, you know, at some point perhaps in Sparks, or up in the northwest, or the, or the south. So, in order to make this a reasonable program, what we ended up doing was dividing what was a single service area, we divided it into two separate service areas. Fees are still going to be collected and used within the designated service areas of either the north or the south. And, you know, in order to, to make the program work as a whole, that, that was the best that we came up as a recommendation.
And I can, I can understand and appreciate that in the process. I guess, I, I'm really big on analysis and feedback of how things are working. And so, do you have the capacity, particularly in the older part of Reno that I represent, where I see the onesies and the twosies, and being developed on kind of larger lots, and small, you know, subsequent units, you know, maybe alley units, or transitions of commercial into residential, not to mention, we're only talking residential. We're not talking redevelopment of commercial square footage, right? So, most of the activities moved into the core. Do you have the capacity over time to do calculations of where the impact fee revenue is being generated, and then show that where it's being spent, so we can see where the money's being, going? I, I understand, you know, if you live on Mayberry, you may go to Sparks, but maybe 90% of your trips will be in the Mayberry area. So, that equity issue of the urban, maintaining the urban system that's generating these fees is important to me. Do you think you can come up with a methodology at the RTC to, to track this spatially?
We probably can. You know, at this point, all the, the impact fees are collected by building permit, APNs, so we probably can be able to come up and say how many, how much fees we're, we're collecting in certain areas. You know, I will also add that many times, even though our projects, some of those bigger roadway projects are on the outer, outer areas outside of the urban, we do spend a lot of money for intersection improvements that really are something that handles some of those urban areas. So, even though we might not need to widen an, a roadway in the urban area, we are spending money within those, those smaller areas or intersection improvements. But we can look at that and see what we can bring back.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, can I just make a comment to that? And I agree, our local roads absolutely need attention, and our efforts to assist in the local roads. But I guess what comes to mind right now is, we look at the developments out at the Tahoe Reno Industrial Center, specifically like Tesla, and the, you know, tens of thousands of jobs that this is ultimately going to represent, and there's no housing out there. So, those individuals that are coming from, largely from the core of Sparks and Reno and Washoe County, are going to have to take those regional roads, South Reno, they're going to have to take the regional roads to get out to Tahoe Reno Industrial Center. So, we have to be proactive and conscious of our regional roads as we, you know, pull out of this recession and, and help to support the economic development, even if it's not within our urban core. It's putting people to work, and we need to make sure to have the regional roads to get them there.
Thank you. My, my last question is Figure 10, about the South Service Area Capital Improvement Plan. I see a 14, $15 million project called the McCarran Boulevard to the Southeast Connector, Mill Street Extension. Is that a new road?
I believe it is, the, the Mill Street Extension, are you referring to?
Yeah.
And that is something that's on the regional transportation plan.
It's on the RTIP. And then Pembroke, two to four lanes? I mean, Pembroke crosses the city and unincorporated Washoe County, but that widening project of $8 million, and both of these will be, well, the, this Mill Street Extension is shown to be 100% impact fee derived.
That's what was anticipated at this point.
Yeah, and the McCarran Connector is 50%. Are, so both of these are on the RTIP?
On the regional transportation plan, the 10-year, the 10-years.
Okay. Are both of these in the Reno master plan?
I would have to double-check with.
Staff, do you know if both of these are in the Reno master plan? As we're talking about a road connection to a road that hasn't been built yet, so just wondering how, what our master plan is telling us about the future.
For the record, I don't, I don't know. I couldn't answer, but I'd have to look into it, if, if these are both on the, on the master plan.
Okay. And, but this is a study. This isn't a binding document here, is it? Is it? Like the RTIP, it's just repeating the RTIP then?
It is repeating the RTIP, although all of these projects are used, the cost of these projects are used in developing the impact fees, the methodologies, and what the fees are charged when you go pull a building permit.
And say these roads disappear, will there be a reeval, what's the reevaluation time cycle for resetting impact fees?
Every two years.
Every two years, okay.
We redo the capital improvement plan.
At RTC level?
At, well, we start it, and then it comes back through all the local agencies for approval again. So, anytime we change our fees, it's approved at the, the local levels in addition to RTC.
Well, thank you, and I'll look forward to, you know, seeing if we can get a methodology that's showing Reno, you know, how our urban areas are being treated as they contribute to our community's revitalization. Thank you.
Will do.
Motion. You got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now, we'll go to item G1, Ordinance Adoption. Which, before you read that, I have a public comment. Craig Newton.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and, and City Council. Thank you for having me speak today. I'm new to the Reno area. We just moved here from Susanville, where we lived for 27 years. I'm retired from law enforcement, our 37-year career, and I retired from High Desert State Prison up there in Susanville. I've worked four different prisons, and now I'm involved in the schools here. I substitute teach. My wife's a teacher. My son's in North Valleys High School. And I've gotten involved in kind of a startup business of telecommunications and, and security services for Reno clients. And as I've gotten involved in downtown Reno, well, I want to say, my wife and I have been looking for a place for our nine kids and, and their spouses, so that's 15 kids and their 14 grandchildren, to kind of draw them in, you know, back into a family area. So, Reno would be a great place to do that, except my kids don't want to come to Reno. And as I've been working with clients downtown, I can see why, because it looks like Sierra Yard at the California Correctional Center. There's so much crime there. I think my first time downtown was just a few weeks ago, and I witnessed a guy pulling a needle out of a girl's arm, right there on the street, right next to the Nugget, across from Harris. I witnessed a fight in front of the Eldorado Main Doors on Fourth and Virginia, a big fight. But the people there told me, it wasn't as big as the fight that they saw down on the River Walk, which involved 20, just a brawl of 20 people down there. Let's see, what else? Well, yesterday, Conrad outside the Nugget was in a fight with a kid. Some kid walked in there and wanted to sit down, and he wasn't doing, you know, making any money, so Conrad asked him to leave, just a vagrant. And on his way out, the kid started a fight with Conrad, and just yelling and screaming profanities and ethnic hate. Conrad's a, a black man there. And so, they went to duking it, you know, just fighting right there on the street. I'm excited about the, the Reno, what is it, the RAD? I went there Monday for a meeting. There's some great things happening. I've seen a lot of desire to clean up downtown Reno, and I'm definitely going to get involved in that. But I want it to move faster. I just hope the city council and the police and, and businesses really take note and just get involved in this effort. Some of you I've seen on a few videos and at different places, campaigning for, you know, offices, and I really appreciate that. Some of you are really interested in making this happen for downtown Reno. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate them very much. Item G1.
Ordinance number 6351, Ordinance to amend Title 8 of the Reno Municipal Code, entitled Misdemeanor Marijuana Drug Paraphernalia Related offenses prohibiting certain activities relating, related to medical marijuana by revising Sections 18, 8.17.010, 8.17.030, 8.17.050, and 8.17.070, and adding Section 8.17.080 relating to the public ingestion or consumption of medical marijuana, adding Section 8.17.090 relating to loitering outside medical marijuana establishments, adding Section 8.17.100 relating to the penalty and punishment for violations of certain sections, and adding 8.17.110, allowing affirmative defense to certain charges together with other matters property related thereto.
Move to adopt.
I have a motion, and do I have a second? Have a second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. You haven't been on any trips, have you?
No.
Okay, that's all I wanted to make sure.
Uh, no.
Excuse me.
I, in this day and age, I understand your comment.
Item G2.
Which is ordinance number 6352.
And I do have a public comment on G2.
I'll, I'll go ahead and do the public.
Larry Lucero, so, Larry, I butchered your name, and I apologize, sir. I'm out of East Texas, and I don't know how to talk.
Larry Lucero, General Manager of Corona Cyan. I'm just here to answer any questions that you may have. I understand there was some input from the public on, on this item, so I'm happy to answer any questions that may come up.
Okay, thank you very much. All right.
Now, we'll go to ordinance number 6352, Ordinance to amend Title 18, Chapter 18.08 of the Reno Municipal Code, entitled Zoning, Section 18.08, 102B, .1309, to change the text in the PUD Development Design Standards to relocate the eight-acre elementary school site from the south-central portion of the site in Village A to the northeast portion of the site in Village C, to increase the acreage of Village B by 10.6 acres from 34.6 acres to 45.2 acres, and three, reduce the acreage of Village C by eight acres from 59.9 acres to 51.9 acres, located along the south side of South Meadows Parkway and extends to the south 3,785 feet, .73 miles, along the west and east sides of Veterans Parkway in the PU District in a planned, PUD Planned Unit Development Zone together with other matters property relating thereto.
Motion.
I have some questions on this.
Do you have a question? Go ahead.
I do, and I'll disclose that, I think like the rest of the council, I received a couple letters on this, and I also, constituent called me about the process of this with the school board's involvement. And I, because I was gone for the introduction, I followed up with one of the constituents and, and said, "I won't be at the meeting for the introduction, but I, I understand your concerns, and I'll raise it up, you know, for the ordinance and ask these questions," because I had questions also, and I did speak with Representative of the School District and Cyan's Development Representative. My, my question is, this is a planned unit development that had a school site, that it was shown in one location, and much like Sky Vista that came forward about two years ago, where a school site was going to then be open space, and then the errand successor to the planned development wanted to build apartments up there, this is instead, and a lot of residents felt that they had been told through a recorded document when they bought their homes, that this is where a school would be, and if it wasn't a school, it was going to be open space. Well, now there's apartments, but same situation here in, one of the constituents wrote the letter to us, said, "I bought here just because the high school's already over there, the middle school's already over there, there was going to be elementary school here." And when I read state law, and this is a question for the attorney that I did discuss with him, and I haven't heard back, is, is what rights do residents have when they buy into a planned unit development, and is a private benefit being conferred on a party here? So, those are my, those are some of the questions. And furthermore, the PUD is a little, written a little oddly, but it is always the developer who writes the PUD. And they said the school board must approve this. Has the school board approved this change, or the school district, excuse me?
Okay. Counselor?
Frank Close, Senior Planner. There's a letter attached to the staff report from School District indicating their approval of that, and when the, the subdivision was previously approved several years ago over in Village B, they also approved the reduction in the size of the school site. So, the School District has been involved throughout the process as far as the reduction in the school site size and its relocation.
I see a letter from a School District staff member. I don't see any action of, I guess, legal authority from the board.
That's, that's correct. We, we got the approval or authority from, from the staff.
And that's what you interpret the PUD to say, that staff can write a letter and say they're okay with it, and not necessarily the school board? I mean, it's kind of a big deal, where a school goes.
Well, again, when you're looking at a land use situation, the school site is in one place, and is it appropriate to move it to another site? And the School District staff indicated that, in their opinion, that it was. And again, it went through the public hearing process. We've had, as you know, two letters that had, one of them is questioning that, and the other one has to do with something about public transit to the site. So, it's gone through a lot of public hearings, when the school site was reduced in size, and then also when it was relocated, went through the Planning Commission, and it has also been through the council. So, that was done through the public process, and, and the school's site is basically being moved about a half mile to make it, or provide better space in between the existing elementary schools. And it was also indicated when the PUD was originally approved, that the school site may be moved to, either to another location in the PUD or out of the PUD.
I saw that, that, but is that comport with what people who are buying into the PUD have been told and disclosed to them, that this was, I mean, if, if I went last year or today down to buy, look at a model home down there, would it show a school site where people think this school site's going to be?
Again, that's up to the developer to update their information. At the time, someone bought the school site might have been there, was there, and that's what was represented. But it's also in the PUD document stating where the location is, and that there is a possibility that could be moved. So, it's, it's in the documents, and it was originally approved that way with the possibility of it being moved. So, it's not like this just came out of the blue. And then again, it's also to help provide better space in between the existing elementary schools at such time as, as they do get funding to build a new elementary school.
It's not because the developer said, "I want to build homes over here where before I said I wanted to put a school site." It's not that.
The developer, in discussions with the School District staff, requested to move it, and School District staff was in agreement with that. If they would have said, "No, we want it where it is," I, we might have had a different recommendation, but we, you know, staff, you know, does a lot of the land use analysis of, of this sort of thing, and moving a school site. The Damone Ranch High School got, site got moved. I don't know if that would require School District Board approval, but it was in the middle of Damone Ranch, and it got moved to the edge. of Damone Ranch and it got moved to the edge. So this kind of stuff happens all the time.
Well, I guess, well, back to the legal, what right, this constituent said, I bought here, I'm in a planned community, I was shown this would be a school site. What rights do residents have on the, you know, it's a vesting instrument, it's a planned unit development. We give them a lot of privilege to say, yes, this is the plan for the area where we'll commit services and public infrastructure. And in return, particularly as people buy in, what rights do they have to the firmness of that? Because the developer relies a lot on the firmness of the plan as approved.
Right. For the record, Mr. Mayor, city council, John Shipman, deputy city attorney. What I've passed out in front of all of you today is the provisions of state law that council member Breckus is referring to, and I just want to kind of walk you through. Am I going the wrong way? This is not a job for an attorney. Thank you, Jamie. So, yeah, exactly. Thank you. Thank you, Jamie. I just want to walk through kind of what your legal authority today is and what you need to be looking at. 278A, 390, which is the top provision there, talks about enforcement of the city by the county. So the provisions of the plan relating to the use of land, the use, bulk, and location of buildings and structures, so that includes things such as school, you know, schools, must run in favor of the city and are enforceable in law by the city or county, without limitation of the power or regulation by the city or county. So then you go down to provision 278 for 10, which talks about the modification of plan by city or county. All provisions of the plan authorized to be enforced by the city or county. So again, that's kind of bootstrapping in what you see in 278, 390. So that would include subsection one. May be modified, removed, or released by the city or county. And then subsection two below provides what that process is. Subsection two talks about you can do a modification, remove, or release based upon the following findings. So what you have currently in your packet today is exactly that process. Section 278A, 400, which is kind of maybe a flavor of the question that you're talking about, is, you know, what, as a vesting interest, what do residents, what can they enforce? And again, what subsection one talks about, it's all provisions in the plan shall run in favor of the residents of the planned unit residential development, but only to the extent expressly provided in the plan and in accordance with the terms of the plan. So just kind of as a quick summary of what that means is that the use of the land, the location of the buildings and the structures is retained by the city council, that you can make modifications to the plan. There are other things that cannot be amended without resident approval, so.
But you just skipped over what you have at the top there on sub two of 380. That says the enforcement modification of the plan must be to further the mutual interests of residents and owners and of the public in the preservation of the integrity of the plan as finally approved.
Yes.
And, well, no, and any modification will not impair the reasonable reliance of the residents. That's the guiding concept there. How do you?
I would totally agree with you. That is kind of the intent of, that sets the stage for 390, 400, 410, and 420. Clearly, those provisions allow for modification. 390 kind of sets the scope for what is allowable. 400 puts a limitation on what's allowable. This particular item that's before you today is clearly within the scope of enforceable by law or by the city, and therefore it falls under subsection two of the 278.
And I can see that you can carve a reason, a legal reason for doing it, but the scope or the purpose, the scope that you said in 380 is not being followed here. That constituent is raising that issue. We are not ears open to her, and it was not the same as Sky Vista. So I guess I would submit, and I brought this up numerous times in planned unit developments as they come new to us, that these things are pretty cast in concrete. No, like Mr. Close said, well, if the school moves here, then it would move here, and then people are down at a sales trailer with a big, you know, sign there that says, "School here." I mean, that is not an implementation of the integrity of this statute. And so I think we can do better through our planned unit developments to not be bringing these in, and we amend them unlike any other jurisdiction. County doesn't do these in this manner at all, neither does the city of Henderson, and I don't believe Clark County does either, so.
Councilmember, if I may.
I think this is a classic example I'm trying to call out of how we have been not following the best practice, and constituents are confused about it and concerned.
Councilmember, I think you're, again, for the record, John Shipman, I think your point is well taken. I think the thrust of your point goes to that subsection two, to the findings. So, I mean, you know, that is clearly what you're here to do today, so that to make, what you're doing has to comport with the 380 provision. You do have to make those findings. So if you find that it doesn't make those findings, then you don't make the, so.
Well, to make that, excuse me, Mayor, to make that finding.
How much longer?
Yeah, just a few more. To make that finding of a private benefit upon a person, that's where having the school district board say, we accept this, we want this, would make me more comfortable than having the developer, which I presume wants to sell houses on this location. That's why they initiated this whole thing. So I do struggle with this. I struggle with how that finding could be made. I'd be much more comfortable if the school board was looking at it in their big capital improvement plan program and efforts. And I have one final question. Is the school district going to get this land free? They will? Okay. How do we know that? Do you have an agreement with them?
Larry Lucero for Corona Cyan. We do have an agreement with the school district, and we are, we have drafted a revision to that agreement, which cannot go forward until this amendment to the handbook is done, so that we have a properly zoned site for the revision to the agreement. Could I just address one point that was made for future understanding? Really, what we're doing today here is not so much an amendment, although it's being done through an amendment process, as an implementation of what was actually anticipated when this project was approved. The original handbook under schools says, this site will be needed in the future as determined by the Washoe County School District. It is located in the PU to address this need. However, the intent is to relocate this site to the next phase of the Bella Vista Ranch PU based on the following. The geographic location of the two existing elementary school sites limits the ability to locate an elementary school in this phase of the PU. The elementary school sites in Double Diamond and Damonti are both within a half mile of this phase of the PU. The PU contains a site that may be relocated to the next phase away from existing designated arterials. So it was anticipated when this PU was originally approved that this site would be relocated. And in all of the exhibits within the handbook, it says it is a proposed site, and the description clearly says that its intent was to move it. Homeowners, homebuyers in sales offices sign also specific disclosures that say all of the improvements shown on the plans are subject to change. Thank you.
Thank you. That answers a lot of the questions. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion?
I have one comment. I will support this, knowing that this has to be, then, go through, this is a two-step process, right? On the, there's a preliminary recording and then a final recording that comes back to us?
No. This is it, isn't it?
Frank Close, senior planner. Once the ordinance is adopted, then it has to come back to be certified. So basically, what you will be doing on consent, reviewing.
Okay. Well, I'll support it this time, following, you know, seeing what's going on with the school board during the certification process until then.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll go to resolutions. Adam F. H. one.
Resolution number 8014. Resolution directing the defeasance of and the payment of principal and interest on the city of Reno, Nevada, building bond series 2003A, taxed exempt, and providing other details in connection therewith. This is from the general fund.
Good afternoon. My name is Kim Rodemeyer, and I am here to urge you to table item H. one. Recently, through a FOIA request by the, to the Army Corps of Engineers, it has come to my attention that RTC, through a document that we have read from August 18, 2013, has changed its clean water 404B permit and has removed about 80 acres of mitigation for obligate wetlands to faculative wetlands in the area where the SUPs and variances were approved by this council in December of 2013. Those SUPs and variances were approved on the proposed design specifications, and now those design specifications have been altered significantly, making the SUPs and variances void. As of the beginning of September, the Army Corps of Engineers and the EPA had not seen the altered mitigation and monitoring plan, so it must be clear that this council or staff has not seen it either. Yet today before you is an item that is going to spend money from a fund that was supposed to be held untouchable until all permits were obtained. It is also my understanding that there is still a grading permit out there that has not been approved. This also needs to be clarified on whether or not there is a condition of the necessary permits that need to be obtained. This council needs to revisit the SUPs and variances. Designs have been changed and you were not notified. If you were, and this process continues anyway, then that's a different breach altogether. Section nine of the right-of-way agreement with the Rosewood Lakes Golf Course and RTC states, RTC acknowledges that the execution of this agreement by Reno does not limit in any manner the discretion of Reno in its approval process, and does not relieve the RTC from the obligation to obtain all necessary permits, entitlements, and approvals for the construction of the Southeast Connector project. They have changed their project. What are you going to do about that? Another question is, does this council have in hand any resolution passed by the RTC Board of Directors stating that this council has fulfilled all its obligation and is now free and clear to spend that right-of-way money with no responsibility of having to pay it back at a future date? Or is this council just taking someone's word for it? RTC has changed its design specifications on a project that you had previously given SUPs and variances for. This item should be tabled until that can be comprehensively reviewed. Last, on a related note, according to the right-of-way contract, the city of Reno only has until December 31, 2014, to enter into a binding contract with a design firm to reconfigure the remaining holes of the RTC, remaining holes of the golf course, or the RTC is no, will no longer have to pay you that reimbursement money. Since we have heard of no plans on this, where is the city on that? Apparently, and unsurprisingly, nowhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
City council, Eddie Lorton, for the record. I ended up also, a couple council meetings ago, to answer Kim's question. There was a couple council members that had stated that that was a done deal, and we don't have to refund the money. So if that's the case, then I would like to also maybe possibly know the interest rate of the loan that we currently have, and if it's 2%, we keep making payments and stay cash rich, but if it's a huge percentage and they can't come back and try to force it through because we can't pay the money back, then I say, okay, that'd be good to pay off City Hall and save the interest. But it'd be nice to know the interest rate that the current loan's at, and that they cannot come back and try to have us pay the money back if the Southeast Connector doesn't go through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think there might be some confusion on the remaining permits relative to the right-of-way money, the 7.5. Can we get, we've got RTC folks in the crowd. Can we get somebody to give some clarity on that? Yeah, and we got a memo from staff on it, but I'd like to hear from RTC.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Lee Gibson, RTC. Our mutual staffs have been in communication constantly, and to our knowledge, as of this date, we don't see any permits or approvals that would be taken by this council on this particular project at this time. So we're, we think it's good to go.
And the ones that do remain are administrative in nature, if I understand that correctly?
Let's try.
Thank you.
Let me follow up with that, please, if I may. So if you don't see any problems, how come your board has not prepared an amendment to the agreement for the $7.5 million, releasing us from the obligation of repayment?
Just hadn't done.
Pardon me?
No, go ahead.
That's not been a matter that the RTC board believes is required.
I think we thought because all the staffs mutually agreed that at this point, there is nothing remaining that would come before this board relative to the 7.5 million, that there wasn't a need for such a resident.
That's the memo we got.
In my previous conversations with Mr. Shipman, he said that an amendment releasing us from that obligation would be the clearest tool that we have.
That, I can't speak to Mr. Shipman.
So why don't we hold off on spending this money to defeat that was used for the Southeast Connector payment of the golf course until we get that release from the RTC Board of Directors? I supported this as a budget item, and I asked several times during budget, were we going to get a release? What do we have? At this point, I'm only satisfied with seeing that agreement amended.
For the record, John Shipman, just to give a little context, I think the question was asked of me, essentially, what's the cleanest way? And that would be the cleanest way. That being said, again, that's not the position of the RTC. So I just wanted to make it clear that I wasn't recommending one thing or one way or another.
Well, the cleanest way is the one that's the most legally binding and would be most acceptable to me. Let's talk about permits. So when, December 14, when we had the hearing, at the very end, I read over the conditions, and it's on the record, and I said that you have to pull a building permit in 18 months. And I asked, what is that building permit? And I was told by staff that building permit would be a grading permit. Have you applied for a grading permit to the city of Reno and received one?
No, we've not applied for any building permits at this time.
So there is a permit outstanding.
That is a ministerial permit, is my understanding.
But it is still a permit. Okay, let's say another thing. Ms. Rodemeyer mentioned that you've changed the specifications that you gave to us for the special use permit approval. One of the conditions also reads that you need to bill to all plans and specifications. Have you changed the plans and specifications that we saw when we issued the special use permit to you?
I'm going to let Garth Oaksole, the project manager, answer that question, but in a nutshell, there have been some questions and design refinements at the request of the Corps of Engineers and our ongoing discussions with them as the applicant for the 404 permit. But there's been a material change in the design that was submitted as part of the special use permit. But Garth, I don't know if you want to add anything.
For the record, Garth Oaksole, project manager with the Regional Transportation Commission. And there have been adjustments or modifications, as Lee mentioned, in their design. However, none of those changes have had any impact on the special use permit conditions. The special use permit conditions allowed for additional flood storage east of the road to provide better protection for the homes west of the road. That's the same.
Okay, but, okay, but not the conditions. The decision is made upon the record, which is the application, the supporting materials. We have a past practice of when special use permits have been issued and projects change, which they do, of requiring new special use permits. So you could be in that scenario. I tell my colleagues, if a new special use permit has been required because the project has changed, a new special use permit would be required. That permit, if it's not issued, could involve repayment of this money. Is that correct?
I guess my first reaction to that would be, would that be applied to a change order during any construction of any project? Would that require coming back to?
That would pertain to the permit, the building permit.
Right, and from the design standpoint, the project hasn't changed as it's applicable to the permit. These were changes in seed mixes. They were changes to eliminate the potential for standing water, so we now have drainage. Those were the two areas in the Butler Ranch area that special use permit were applied to.
So let's say you had a variance for flooding, hazardous flooding, and you're changing your hydrology report? That sounds material to me.
It's not a changing in the hydrology report because it's standing water, which is not allowed to be used in the flood analysis, because standing water does not have the ability to store floodwater since it is an immovable volume.
Okay. Another issue is, special use permits are valid for 18 months. We are 10 months into this special use permit that expires in May of 2015. The council can grant an extension of that, but it's within their discretion. What if the council's discretion is to not extend that special use permit? Would repayment of the $7.5 million be required?
Mr. Mayor, if I might jump in on this, and maybe Mr. Thomas can assist me, but it is my understanding that any extension on the special use permit is not an item that would come back before the council. That is an item that is extended administratively through the community development department. And as far as the, your question on...
And as far as the, your question on the grading permits, staff, we have looked at prior projects, and we have not required those permits in the past. So the determination was made that there is not a grading permit that is required on this project.
So when I ask for the information of what does this condition mean of a permit's required and was told a grading permit, and that is on the record, you've changed kind of the reading of the rules, is that, is that what it is? And also, I'm not going to open RMC about who extends special use permits. I believe that the reading is that it would be the council, but it's within the council's authority to tell the manager administratively, there will not be an extension of this SUP. I am, I am not here to fight the project, and I want to tell my colleagues that. I am here to protect our budget integrity. We had our budget uphe, an external actor shook up our budget, right? And I'm very concerned that if we run down this money a little bit more, that the council's will could change. Some of these things could happen, and we could be having to go back into our budget very deeply in a, in a way that could be damaging to the rest of the services that we provide. So I think we should keep this money in the bank.
Don't we say about a million a year if we do these things? Clear this up.
Mr. Mayor, and that was going to be my next comment, as council may or may not remember, as we presented this item during our budget hearings, part of the reason that we were making this recommendation to the council at the time, specifically the payoff of the City Hall debt, was that it freed up the debt service that was required from City Hall. So actually not taking action on this and not approving it has a detriment to the budget.
When are those payments due?
I believe they're due in May.
Robert Chisel, Director of Finance and Administration, the payments, there's interest payments December 1, and principal and interest June 1.
What's the amount of each of those?
It's, the principal payments approximately $920,000, and the interest is, it's about $30,000 to $40,000.
Okay. I'm prepared to pay the $30,000 and work this out until that May payment.
Part of this too, if I might add to, to the question on the timing of the payments, when this was presented to council during the budget hearings, it was always contemplated that this action would take place in October. And based on that timing, the, the calculation of the, the interest savings was factored into the number that we had used to calculate the, the savings that would be generated by not making those payments. So it was, it was contemplated back in, and I can't remember when we had our last budget hearing, but it was always contemplated that this action would happen in October.
If I might also, for the record, Bill Thomas, Assistant City Manager. The agreement that really determines what we're talking about, and I'm just reading from it, is an agreement permitting construction of the Southeast Connector on Rosewood Lake Golf Course. So this agreement was tied to the impacts to Rosewood Lake Golf Course. We clearly, it's our conclusion that we've clearly done everything under that agreement that would be necessary to consummate the use of the money that was paid to the city for the impacts to Rosewood Lake Golf Course. The discussion about what happens in the future with the, you know, potential whatevs as far as the Southeast Connector is not what this agreement was about. It was about Rosewood Lake. So the right-of-way has been transferred. All the pieces have been done that would, like any property owner who was purchasing, or the RTC was purchasing property from, at the point at which they, they complete whatever the agreement is, then the money moves to their side. We've made our conclusion, I think, and the city attorneys have looked at it very closely, that there is no more contingent liability on the use of that money. Does that mean that there's no scenario in the future under which somebody could not challenge our use of the money? Probably not. But the, the point is, again, that this was for Rosewood Lakes. This was for the impact to Rosewood Lake. This was money that was not about building the Southeast Connector in total. So I think it's important to understand that distinction.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
So it sounds to me that we need some form of just overall clarity, right, for our own sakes. Whoa, and it sounds to me that Mr. Lee Gibson has said that we are good and clear from having any obligated, any obligation to pay back any type of loan. Is that, is that correct?
It's our, it's our understanding from RTC's perspective, Mr. Mayor, to the council.
No, go ahead.
That as of this date, today, we're, we're fine. We have agreed to all of the necessary actions. The city council has taken the actions through the special use permit and variance process. It's RTC's intention to not have an extension. We're going to move forward with construction within the timeframe. And there was one last part of your question I wanted to address.
Basically, what would it take for you to have all what you just said put on a letter saying that we are not obligated to pay you back the 7.5 million?
We just, probably to be under construction. If we were under construction, we're good to go. And we think we'll be under construction very shortly.
So is that a possibility of saying we're not, we don't move on this money until they break ground and start construction?
That, that's your decision, as far as RTC is concerned. I mean, we, we feel there's been a strong cooperative, positive relationship. We're where we need to be, but the actual expenditure of the money, that, that's your call. That's your decision.
I mean, to me, it just sounds like that it's, it's an open-ended for all of us up here, and we're stating that he's, he can't promise that they won't do it until they break ground. So I understand the external conflicts that we have, but stated up here in front of us, we hear it from him. So would that be for us to kind of step back and say, well, we'll wait until for them to break ground before we, we put ourselves in a really tough position to have to pay it back if they don't? I think we all know that there was supposed to have been built this thing a few months back, and it's been kind of pushed forward. So if they say it's going to be built and, and they get their permits from the Army Corps in mid-November, then it should be a relatively short time. But there's no really reason for me to see that we should push this thing any much more further until they break ground.
Can we get an, do you concur, though, with what Bill Thomas said? I mean, he, pretty good summary.
And I've got to go back and read the settlement agreement, but, I mean, the only thing I might add is, we viewed the Rosewood Lakes Agreement as a overall settlement agreement between the RTC and the City of Reno for the construction of the road. Rosewood Lakes was one of the considerations. Approvals was another part of the consideration. The money was a part of the consideration. But we viewed it overall as a settlement agreement between the two parties for the, for the execution of the project, so.
But if, let's say the Army Corps denies the permit, the city's not obligated to pay the money back?
That's my understanding, because that is not an action.
That's what we negotiated.
Pardon me?
That's what we negotiated.
Yeah, that's not an action.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just to, to add to that, to, to sort of comment on Councilman Delgado's request, and I don't think, you know, RTC has a slightly different position than we do. I mean, our position is that once we've met our obligations, which we all agree that we have, that we don't have an obligation to pay that money back, regardless of whether the Southeast Connector is ever constructed or not. That we have met our obligations under the agreement.
I, and I understand that. I think it's just a simple clarity from there and just saying, yeah, you guys have done that, and you guys do not have to pay us back. I think that's what we all want. I think also from a fiscal perspective, we need to kind of make sure all of our ducks are stable and lined up right before we go and start spending. It's just a simple ask, and I think we're all speaking and want the same thing. So my understanding is you guys have gone out in the public and said that this is going to be built, and you guys will get the permit in mid-November. It's not too far out for us to kind of wait for that groundbreaking to take place supposedly, and for us not to spend money until then.
Mr. Dorch.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward. I mean, our staff's sitting here telling us that we've met all the obligations. RTC's telling us we've met all the obligations, and I'm comfortable moving forward. So I'll move to adopt the resolution.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second.
Wait, I'd like to ask a question.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
Mr. Chisel, quickly, how much do we have in, in reserves as far as, like, what, a year, six months? What do we have in reserves right now?
Robert Chisel, Director of Finance and Administration. I, I can't tell you exactly what we have right now. It's, it's always a moving target. As of June 30, we're looking at probably about 6.9% ending fund balance. That's, you know, less than, that's about 20 days.
20 days. And so what hap, wow. What happens if we have a, this sounds so loud. What happens if we have a financial emergency and there's nothing there?
Well, that's a concern we've been having for a number of years now, and in fact, that probably plays into our next item in our agenda. But I, I mean, what we will have to do is come back and address our budget and make the cuts as necessary if we have reduction in revenues, something happens. I'd point out that this, this item was in the budget to save $1 million, so if we don't act on this, we're going to have to make an adjustment in our budget for that $1 million if we do not utilize any of those RTC funds. So it will have to be replaced with something at some point.
This is why, I mean, people have mortgages, and then they keep money in the bank, and so, I mean, you can see why I think it makes us incredibly nervous. Financially, I'm, I'm always been very nervous about this. The other thing is, is it does seem really unclear where we do stand with RTC. It's great that you say that, but it would be much more comforting to have a release from RTC, and that's where I'm at right now. I'm incredibly uncomfortable with this financially.
And I, and I think it's, we, I think we're all in favor of the budgetary issues back in, you know, June and July. We understand those external things. All, all we're asking for is just, just a release. It sounds we're, we're both speaking the same language here, and I just find it very, find it kind of odd that we can't just get a simple letter from you guys saying that we can't do it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, again, as I just clarified, we saw the overall agreement as a settlement agreement for the construction of the road. That's RTC's view. Our council has always opined that we can't ever predict the future, and so our, our view is a, a, a release that in one, our mind, in our mind, one would have to most likely be approved by the board, would be one that the board's thought process may also be focused on, well, what happens in the future, and we can't predict the future. So the safest conclusion is construction of the road. Once construction of the road is underway, then that really concludes the agreement, or I think if we reach 2018 or something, or some timeframe in there. But, I mean, I think that's really the balancing that the RTC commission, when it looks at this question, is concerned with. So it, it, it really wants to reserve its rights or its, its, its options for the future when it does. We all can't predict what's going to happen in the future. You know, if you'd asked me, or Garth, six months ago, when we would get a permit, we would have told you three months ago. I mean, we just can't predict the future, and that's really what the commission and our lawyers want to protect.
I mean, we, we can't predict it either, but I think we're going and taking the gamble that it's going to be built and we can spend the money. We're, we're taking, we're going at it and doing that, and we're asking for you guys to jump in the pool with us, and it doesn't sound like we're getting the love. But, Mr., you know, City Manager, I suggest you really consider that.
We do.
As we move forward, as you've heard that, it's, nothing's set in stone, so maybe for our even financial team to consider that as well, when they go back and look at the budget about whether we should or shouldn't.
Mr. Mayor and council, I mean, I, I think the council and the, and the mayor needs to understand that we took this decision to bring this forward very seriously. I, I don't take this decision lightly because, to Councilwoman Sheevy's point, to try and find $7.5 million in the budget when we have no, no reserves would be extremely difficult. And I feel like we have done a significant amount of due diligence through both Public Works, working with RTC, through the City Attorney's Office, with John Shipman, that we have put in the due diligence to give us that comfort level. I understand from the RTC's standpoint and their attorney's advice to them of not wanting to grant that release. I, I mean, I, I get that, and I think, no offense to the attorneys, but I think the attorneys are very conservative by nature, and rightly so. So I, I think it's just, I, I think it's just that, but in, in talking to the City Attorney's Office and in working with the, our Public Works Department, working with RTC, we sat down and we said, what, what is outstanding that, you know, that we have to do? Because we wanted to make sure we checked off all those items to make sure there was nothing outstanding that this council had to approve, to make sure that we fulfilled the requirements within the agreement. And so we went through that process. Mr. Shipman, you know, gave us his opinion based on that due diligence, and so I feel comfortable moving forward on this.
Can I ask, can I ask one question? Now, it was told to us, and, and these are two separate things, it sounds to me like everybody was in agreement that we've met all the obligations relative to the 7.5. It's just this additional notice or memo to affirm that, but wasn't there firefighter positions tied to the $1 million?
There is, and that, I, I stated it, and I think Mr. Chisel stated it as well, the budget that we built included savings from those debt service payments that if we pay this off using these funds, that we won't have to make those debt service payments. If we don't do this and we have to make those debt service payments, we then have a, I think it's one, a little over a million dollar shortfall in our budget.
And, and how many positions, firefighter positions, did that represent?
I believe it was 15 or 17. I don't remember the exact number. I think it was 15.
Mr. Mayor, that discussion...
Let him get the answer first, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Robert Chisel. It was identified to save 15 firefighter positions, but each position is a different, it's approximately 117,000 per firefighter position to stay in the budget.
Ms. Brackus.
Mr. Mayor, this discussion, I think of, you know, the budgetary implications gets into our augmentation, where we have the fortunate opportunity of knowing that we have more money available than we thought previously when we last touched the budget. So we'll proceed with that discussion in that item. I guess what I'm saying, there's a motion on the table. I'm ready for the vote. I will not be supporting it, but I'd like to just mention one point is, we talk about RTC like they're this other entity. RTC is a creature of us, and it seems like sometimes we forget that. We have two representatives there who can bring items for the board and work toward this release, and so we can work internally.
Except, Jenny, let me say, as your board representative, the, the mutual staffs worked and agreed mutually together, there was nothing remaining. So we didn't feel it necessary to have this additional resolution document in place because everybody got together and said, we have met our obligations relative to the $7.5 million. So to take this additional step as your board representative on the RTC, we didn't see necessarily the need to do that because our mutual staffs agreed we had met our obligations.
Well, it's not to my comfort.
If it's not to your comfort level, that's fine, but understand that the staffs and the attorneys, when you get attorneys to agree, it's a rare thing, but they all, they all agreed, and the staffs agreed.
Yes, I understand. It's just sometimes the tail is wagging the dog here.
We have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Any further discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no.
No.
Show the vote for three in favor. Thank you. Item H2.
Resolution number 8015, resolution establishing the Stabilization Special Revenue Fund per Nevada Revised Statutes 354.6115 and 354.612, an approval of the fund policy for the Stabilization Special Revenue Fund.
For the record, Jill Olson Finance. This item is just to create a fund called the Stabilization Fund, and it was written pursuant to 3546115. So there, once there are funds in there, there will only be two circumstances under which the funds could be used, and that would be loss of anticipated revenue, revenue shortfall, or a natural disaster. This is not addressing how the, how it's funded today. We're not talking about how it's funded today. This is strictly to create the policy that would allow us to have a tool to set aside money for those circumstances.
May I ask a question, Mayor?
Yes.
On item H5, which is the, the land proposed to be given to the Boys and Girls Club, there's a statement in the history that in, in 2007, the city council authorized a loan from the city stabilization fund not to exceed $665,000. So it looks like, what's the difference between that stabilization fund that we had in place in 2007 that we loaned that money from and this stabilization fund?
Again, for the record, Jill Olson Finance. That stabilization fund is no longer in existence. There was a new Gatsby pronouncement that came out where that fund no longer met the definition of a special revenue fund, so it was rolled into the general fund, and so it's just a designated portion. Today, it's the 1.7 million that you saw in the budget that's sitting there. I think staff refers to it as contingency now, but that fund no longer exists, so it's been rewritten to meet the provisions under NRS 3546115.
Okay, thank you.
And if I might add, the, the contingency is a line item in, in the general fund budget, and that's, I, I think there's $2.7 million in that contingency line item, and that's to deal with unforeseen circumstances as they come up through the year. This is more to, I think, Councilwoman Sheevy's point of the fact that we don't have any reserves. This is what is often referred to as a rainy day fund. So this is a separate fund designation that, you know, as we see the economy recover, it has to be, in my opinion, one of our top priorities to begin to put some funds in here, because while we're just coming out of a rainy day, we will see one again, and this type of fund will help us weather that storm better than not having it.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to jump over H3 and go to H... unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to jump over H3 and go to H4. We have a couple of people.
Resolution number 8016, resolution of the City Council of the City of Reno, reserving the city's full pro-rata share of home investment partnership program funding for fiscal year 1560 for the Kings Inn redevelopment project located at Third and West Streets in Reno, Nevada, conditioned upon the developer meeting all necessary federal, state, and local regulatory guidelines and restrictions, completing an environmental review in compliance with the National Environmental Policy Act, NEPA, and receiving an authority to use grant funds from the Department of Housing and Urban Development.
I have a person which should speak, Lisa Dayton.
Good afternoon. Lisa Dayton, affordable housing developer. When I filled out the speaker form, I had to indicate whether I was in favor or opposition. And I can't say I'm in opposition to the Kings Inn project. I think it would be an exciting project for downtown Reno. Unfortunately, very few details are known about what the developer proposes for the site. So I just wanted to point out to the council that by allocating those funds today, you do remove them from the competitive process. So local nonprofit developers who have been working to prepare projects for application round and would have to shelve those projects for probably a year. Typically, a developer invests upwards of about 100,000 to ready a project for the application round. Also, I wanted to point out that the money being allocated, the developer could meet all the technical requirements by only providing three units of affordable housing. Whereas if that developer had to compete with other nonprofits, they would likely bring projects to the table that have anywhere from 40 to 60 units of affordable housing. And finally, because the developer would not have the competitive process, they would not go before the technical review committee to thoroughly vet the project, to make sure it's feasible before the funds are allocated. And that is all I have.
Thank you very much. No other public to comment. Bring it back to the table.
I do have some questions on this, Mayor. I, I think it's great that there is interest in the Kings Inn. I know this has been of importance to you for many years. I do have some questions about the detail because I have not seen any, not even a, a real general, what is this project proposed to be? Has anyone at this table seen anything? Or has anyone at the staff level seen anything that can characterize what this project will be? Units, budget, mixed use, construction timetable? Because we are being asked to invest in it.
Yeah, Jenny, I see one of the representatives is here, but the developer did indicate the number of units at some point. But I'd be curious to know any updates.
Just real quick, for the record, John Shipman, Deputy City Attorney. It's important to note, what you're doing today under this resolution is purely just reserving the funding. Because what we run into with the home funding, the problem is, is that once you commit funds, then you get into timing issues with when the NEPA has to be done, what you can do on the property. So that's part of what we're doing here. We've communicated with HUD. We made sure that this meets the requirements. So we're not inadvertently overstepping the bounds and triggering all this stuff and then actually making the project ineligible for funding on the back end. So that's why you haven't seen a lot of the details. In addition, they do have to submit in the competitive round. So that, that is going to be coming forward and is going to be reviewed.
Well, I mean, you just jumped to a real technical question and point of fact of when a NEPA is required, which I understand is at issue and, and maybe we're going around a gray area. But, you know, that speaks to the process that Ms. Dayton spoke about, that we do have the consortium agreement that has a process, and it's open and transparent. And we're kind of jumping ahead of that. Does our agreement with the consortium allow for that?
It does, it does allow it. And it is, it specifically reserves that. And it is a policy call. I mean, and it's not one to be taken lightly. But that is exactly what, what you're doing here.
Well, when I read the agreement, it says that we can do that five days before by notifying our partners. Have we done that? Are we going to do that? Or do we have to amend the agreement? Because I'm reading sub F that says, I mean, we're self-directing funds here. Is that correct? Under the terminology of the agreement?
At this point, we're not directing funds at all. And that's-
We're reserving.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay. So we're not self-directing funds.
Correct. We're not committing funds, contemplating the use of funds. We're just reserving funds.
Okay. Have we ever done this before in this manner?
No.
Okay.
Never had this big a project.
Well, then I, I can accept this resolution as an intent of this council at this moment. But understanding that the technical nature, I don't know you, sir. I don't know your background as an affordable housing developer. Usually, people who come in for our home funds, you know, have a rec, I think one of the criteria is that you are a housing, and it's specked out. It goes through a very involved process.
Please introduce yourself.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Brackus, we have actually met several times. My name is Mike Draper. I own Draper Strategies here in Reno.
Okay.
I'm a representative, a government affairs representative on behalf of the, the potential seller in this case. And actually, the last council meeting, the seller and the developer, who this council does have some experience with, and certainly in northern Nevada, Jonathan Four, was, was here. And we addressed some of this. And I think the key here is, this is a bit of a unique circumstance. The property, obviously, in and of itself, is in a very unique situation. But the circumstance here was, the seller has, has created a very short timeline and it's closing escrow on this, this project. The project has a lot of different challenges around it, the building itself, things like that, both with the city and the county. We've been working with the city over the last two or three months, from the mayor to the city manager to the assistant city manager and, and several of the council members. And we have not had a chance to meet on this yet, Councilwoman. But the, the project, what we're looking for is simply, the city's been fantastic to work with. We're not looking for the city to give anything to the project other than to work to achieve or overcome some of the challenges. In this case, the reason for this resolution, something that is unique to this council, was simply the spirit of cooperation from the city that we're going to do, the city's going to work, assuming the developer meets what he needs to do in order to get those funds and, and overcome some of the challenges, that the city's going to work to make that happen. We still plan to go through the application process, just as, as we would any other time. The developer and the seller, who are different parties, have both agreed to come in and make a full presentation to this council. As soon as, we're still finishing those details on it. The intent right now is that it would be 144-unit affordable housing project. Some of those details we have, some of those details we're still putting together on the fly in order to get this thing done. And really, escrow needs to close within the next couple of weeks. So that's sort of the urgency on this project. The intent is not to skirt or go around anything other than this is one of those projects that because of its nature, sitting vacant for as long as it has, it kind of takes a village in order to make it happen. But we're, we're only looking for means that are within, in this case, a, a, a federal affordable housing grant, within the, the city's ability and budgetary abilities right now to help us accomplish.
Okay. Well, thank you for that answer. And I apologize for not recalling you.
No problem at all.
Thank you, Mr. Draper. And I guess-
Yes, Ms. Sheevy.
Sorry, sorry. Can you give me maybe more of a specific timeframe when you will come to council? Because that's the one thing, is that I'm not hearing from this project, is that it's still kind of vague, what you guys are doing?
We're happy to come. In fact, we were ready to make a presentation two weeks ago. The, the details still are, are happening. We're still working with the assistant city manager on those details. But we could do it as soon as, you know, the middle of November and, and probably have, escrow has to close by, within two or three weeks. So upon the close of escrow, we'd happily come in and give the presentation of exactly what the plans are, or at that point, what we know the plans to be.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I have a, I'm sorry. I have a question on the, the home funds. Can, can those, obviously, I envision some sort of coordination or connection with the university. Is that the type of housing that could be supported, anything with regards to university? Or is it?
Fred Trenier, Community Development Director. And, and again, as Mr. Draper said, we've been working with them for quite a bit of time on overcoming some of the challenges. For the home funds, they're restricted from being used for, say, student housing. Looking. And so-
They're restricted from that?
It's restricted. So you, you cannot do student housing on that site. But you could do the affordable housing. And again, we look forward to seeing the, the details of, of what this project looks like. We've seen some conceptual drawings, but we're still working on the details.
Mr. Mayor, I, I saw that too. No home unit, and I didn't know that, no home units may be rented to students. But if it's a mixed income project, then those market rate ones could be a student product. I guess, I just want assurance from Ms. Dayton's point because I understand the forward planning that competitors of this project may have to do. And this also ripples down into the tax credits that go through to the state. And no one is kind of booted out from applying from this round. We still are keeping in effect the procedures of the consortium, which is a very successful regional coalition that we have with jurisdictions. And that's, that's correct, right?
Fred Trenier, Community Development Director. Yes, that is correct. Our technical review committee is in place. It will be upon submission of the application. We will review that in due course, as with the other applications.
Any others? Do you want to entertain a motion? Resolution, did you read the resolution?
Second.
Well, let me have a-
She said she read it.
She did read it. Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now, we're going to go to H5.
Three.
Now, I'm going to go to five. No, no, you've got one more week to tell me that. We're going to go to item H5. We've had people sitting here quite a while.
Resolution number 8017, resolution of the City Council of the City of Reno, determining that certain real property located at 1270 Foster Drive, Reno, Nevada, is not needed for the public purposes of the city and directing the conveyance of the property to Boys and Girls Club of Truckee Meadows, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, as long as the property is actually used for charitable or civic purposes pursuant to NRS 268.055.
We have a comment. We have a comment. Mr. Lorton.
City Council for the name, Eddie Lorton. I ended up, here we are again on H5 and H6. And I'll just address both why we're at it. I realized here with the Boys and Girls Club, though, they have cheap rent, and they're still going to be there even if we gave them cheap rent. Why would we give them property? I mean, right now, I'm, here we are in debt. Then we're going to give away assets once again. And I know it'll be turned on me, and I can't say anything because I'll be sitting there. But right now, why don't we get appraisals for properties, see what they're worth? And instead, we just keep giving them away. So I want to see here, I'm sure there's still going to be Boys and Girls Club over there anyway, regardless, even if we convey it.
We gave them the land for the Boys and Girls Club.
Well, then what's this agenda item about?
This is a piece of land that next door to it, that the Boys and Girls Club stepped up to operate. It was a, for young kids and stuff, and they've never done that before. And so now, the people that have been funded in the past wanted to go into the Boys and Girls Club. So they'll give them money to upgrade it and stuff like this. But I don't remember the number. Mr. Worm can tell you how many people, how many families, wives, mothers, use that facility that they're, and they want to upgrade it and bring it, and they want it to be under the Boys and Girls Club.
I understand that.
And they have a long-term lease here. There's no value to the land.
Well, still, they're going to improve it and do things to it. And there has to be some value to the land. I've never known-
Well, only think, when you've got a long-term lease, what's the present-day value when you've got a 50-year lease?
Yep. It doesn't matter.
You're very smart, Mr. Lorton. Why don't you tell me?
It's an asset. I don't give away assets in my business for free.
I don't either. Not when it's a dollar.
Well, it doesn't matter. It's an asset for future use for the city arena.
Well, I'm sorry you weren't here when we gave the land for the Boys and Girls Club, or we wouldn't have a Boys and Girls Club.
Well, that's fine and dandy, but this is another section, and maybe we're in a financial situation now that's different from them.
This is an old house that's been converted.
It's still city property.
That's fine, Mr. Lorton. Go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's okay. I appreciate the explanation, too. I just don't agree at our financial state on giving away assets. I don't care who it's to and what it's for. And I'll see you on the next item. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Worm, do you have anything you want to say? Mr. Bergen?
Hi, Mike Worm, Executive Director for the Boys and Girls Club of Truckee Meadows. And yeah, I don't know that I would consider, I mean, obviously, it would be a gift from the city. But just like, just like the gift from the city on the property at 1300 Foster Drive, we did have, we did accept a burden with that, to raise a lot of money and build a building. And then to operate that building in perpetuity and keep it open for kids and services. So I, I don't know that I would call that free. And then, in this property, when this property was originally built for the YMCA by the E.L. Wiegand Foundation, the intent of the property was for it to be a childcare center. And it was that until the YMCA left and the city purchased that property. At that time, it was the city's intent, and this council worked very hard to save that property from turning into development. And part of that, I think, was a promise to that foundation that it would continue to service childcare. When the city put that out for an RFP, there were only two entities that applied for that, the Boys and Girls Club and the YMCA. When the YMCA was running it prior to that, it was out of burden to the city. The city, I think, was subsidizing that to keep that open. And then again, when we took that on, and we were, I wouldn't say our arm was twisted to take that on, because we hadn't done that before. But we had, we had done our research at the request of, at then-Councilman Guston to look into this. We found that about 10 or 15% of the Boys and Girls Clubs in the country actually ran childcare. We had a resource to go to to find out how to do that. We did our homework. And since taking that over at the time, there was about 25 kids a day that were being serviced in that property. Within two years, we were nearly at 100 kids. And I can say happily today, we have the highest number we've had in that center, 133 kids. And there is a balance of kids in that center that pay and that don't pay and that are subsidized. And, and again, I would, I would say that that's not free for us to have that, that we have a burden to maintain that. If we were ever to choose to tear it down or use it for something other than a childcare, we would be required to give it back to the city. So I think there's a protection there. And, and finally, by asking for this property, it really does untie our hands to maintain it and to make sure that we can incorporate it into our funding and incorporate it into our maintenance plans and make sure that, that this facility stays there for kids. And, and that's a very unique neighborhood, 40% of fluency, 40%, poverty. So it's a great place for Boys and Girls Club. The building next door, after a gift in 2012, has, has been far exceeding even our expectations. We had hoped to service almost 300 kids a day. By the end of this summer, we were servicing on some days, 500 and 600 kids. So obviously, a high need in that neighborhood. And without a burden to the city having to help pay for those services as we go forward. So we would hope that we could continue that successful formula and then get this property so we can, again, honor what the city's request was, what the funder's request is, and what our mission is, is to serve kids in that neighborhood.
Also, if you hadn't have stepped in, it would have closed. And those 25 families would have had time to somebody else. But you stepped in, and we really appreciate that.
Well, we appreciate the gift, and it helps us further our mission. So thank you.
Right. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I don't see this as being, giving anything for free as well, Mr. Worm. Your operation has been an incredible partner for our city and our community. I see this as satisfying at least two of our priorities, a one-time expense that you will carry into perpetuity. I have confidence. And I think it is very responsible on our part to step up to the plate and meet our priorities with this simple one-time expense with a partner as strong and fulfilling as the Boys and Girls Club is.
Mr. Mayor, I, I second everything that Councilwoman Zodra has stated. I think we all know, and a few raised in the community understand, that the Boys and Girls Club does a huge service for our community. And this is just a way for us to partner with them so they can continue fostering that care that we all need. If they weren't going to the club, they'd be going somewhere else. Or we'd be providing the services somewhere else and trying to find that service for those kids. And so I think this is a great opportunity for us to continue that and hopefully that they continue to succeed and serve more kids as we move forward. So I, I'd like to move to a dot.
Second.
I, I have a comment. Mr. Mayor, you know, I do see this as a gift. It's one I'm comfortable with because they have made the investment that Mr. Worms discussed. But I, I just want to kind of step back a little bit because we have a slew of these property giveaways to nonprofits on our agenda today. And, you know, in early 2013, I made a proposal to the council that we do and adopt a real estate policy and management program. And part of that was classifying our assets, the family jewels, those for disposal, those that are integral. I had examples of other cities' real estate management policies. And there wasn't support to have a framework for making these decisions. And unfortunately, I think when you don't do that kind of framework, you do things ad hoc, and feelings are hurt, and even more work is spent, I think, looking out. So I just, I'm just making a hopeful statement. So, I just, I'm just making a hopeful statement that we become a more policy-oriented body, particularly on these real estate assets that we have, some of which we don't even know. And I look forward to working on that in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I apologize, you guys were fast on the motion, so. If, staff would request that if we could also direct that the agreement be modified so that the city retains sewer easements and easements for public utilities. Because we own the property, we don't have those on record yet, but we wanna make sure that those aren't being lost. So, if we could just have that noted in the record.
Somebody give me a motion for amendment. That's a motion for amendment. Second, second for amendment. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Out of each six.
Mr. Mayor, can we take about a five-minute break?
Sure.
Thank you.
Take about a five-minute break.
Resolution number 8018. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Reno determining that certain real property located at 250 Court Street, Reno, Nevada, is not needed for the public purposes of the city and directing the conveyance of the property to VSA Nevada, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, as long as the property is actually used by VSA Nevada for its charitable or civic purposes pursuant to NRS 268.055.
Mr. Lorton.
City Council, Eddie Lorton. So, I know this has nothing to do with kids, and we're giving away more property. So, as I said, we've never even had an appraisal on it, and here we go again. And so, we won't be able to park there, or maybe they might work that in somehow. But I would give you 50 grand for that parcel, and I know you have a long-term lease, but maybe we should collect money for it.
For a dollar a year, you'd give us 50 grand for 25 years?
I would. Call me on it, and I'll write a check.
For a dollar a year?
I'd have to stick to the lease with the purchase, wouldn't I?
Yeah, so that'd be, that'd be almost 50 years. You'd have to be satisfied for a dollar.
That's okay. I wouldn't mind, because I don't think the city should give away assets at this point in time, as indebted as we are. Say, for instance, there's circumstance changes in the future for our city. Land goes through the roof, and then we have more assets. So, therefore, I don't agree with these land giveaways, and if you call me on it, I'll write the check, so let me know. But I don't think we should do any more land giveaways. I think we should really look at this. I know the other one is the heartfelt thing of the Boys and Girls Club and all, but, but this is just another land giveaway to somebody, and so, please consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Nettie Oliverio.
Wow, you're too good.
Uh-huh, well, I just wanted to show that I could get old country boy to get it out there.
Yep, you did it. Nettie Oliverio, wearing the hat of my membership on Reno, Reno's redevelopment advisory board. About 20 years ago, there was an issue that came before the city that is pertinent to what we're talking about here with Boys and Girls Club, with VSA Arts, and coming up also with Harris Automobile Museum. Reno Little Theater was on 7th and Sierra. They had a similar situation in that they owned their building, and they had a long-term lease in perpetuity with the city for a dollar a year. A commercial entity came along and wanted that property, and the city gave it to them for not very much money. It's now a parking lot. But what happened was that Reno Little Theater's building was torn down, they were homeless, and I would have to say that a lesser organization would be dead today. They are now celebrating happily their 80th anniversary in, in this, this city. But for 15 years, they had no home, and they spent those 15 years raising funds to be able to build new construction that they have now. To have a situation like that happen with any of these three entities extraordinarily destabilizes that organization and could potentially kill them, and for no gain. So, I encourage what evidently our council is moving toward already, and that is the approval of the transfer of these properties to these very well-deserving nonprofits. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, does anybody from VSA Art wanna speak right now, or do you have some answers? There were some parking questions and stuff like that during the last meeting. Alexis Yona.
Alexis Hill with the City Manager's Office. I'm, I'm not representing VSA Arts, but the city staff did sit down with VSA Arts, and I think we came up with a really great compromise for the parking. We worked out an agreement that a promoter could work with the city through my office to request the VSA Arts lot for their vendors and their staff and promoter parking. That way, not to confuse the concerns of the VSA, to confuse the public about the parking, and also to offset the parking of where the promoter and the vendors would have parked throughout the city, giving more parking for the public. And VSA Arts agreed to that idea, and that, that agreement, that's a separate agreement that is in the staff report for council review, and I'm happy to address any questions you may have.
Okay. Anybody from VSA Art you wanna speak?
Hi, Mary Ellen Haran with VSA Arts of Nevada at the Lake Mansion. There was some questions last time at the meeting two weeks ago, and so, that's why we met with City of Reno staff, and I think that we came to a good compromise. So, to alleviate some of the parking issues, I, we have the same, when Mike Worm was talking, I thought it's, it's a lot of the same issues. We provide services for children, specifically, children with disabilities throughout the community. We have, this is just a quick bullet point that we went through about the Lake Mansion. When, in 2000, when Mayor Griffin told us that we needed to move the mansion from the convention center to another location, this RSCVA gave us $250,000 for the move if we raised approximately $1 million and found a site. So, several of the city council members now were involved in that issue, so they know the history of it and how difficult it was. It was not an easy task in any way, shape, or form, and we've done everything that we said that, that we were going to do.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions or anything, anybody?
Yeah. Just a second.
Motion adopted. Second, any further discussion?
I do have a question.
Huh?
Yeah, discussion.
We do have.
You have a question?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I guess what I wanted to know, did VSA come to the city and ask for this property, or did the city reach out to you? I think that's still something that's not clear.
Yeah, for the record, John Shipman, just because I kind of had the history on this. Yeah, what happened was, is there was some provisions in the lease that we were talking about truing up, so Mary Ellen gave me a buzz. At that point, we're looking at it, and, you know, we've got the provision under state law, the 268.055. The concern that, you know, at least from legal was looking at is, hey, we have this mechanism. We can, you know, essentially give them the property for as long as they're doing what they're doing. The city's exposure, legal exposure, if somebody gets hurt on the property, that type of thing is, is much lessened. So, I mean, that was really what was driving, it was more of an administrative, you know, efficiency type of belief that was driving that. I mean, they clearly have the, the lease for essentially 40 years, so we've already given them their property for all intents and purposes. And to the extent that, you know, again, as that NRS talks about, if that were to ever end, or that used to ever end, it would come back to the city. So, it was kind of, rather than coming back every few years to true the thing up, that was kind of the thought. And then, that got us here, and there were some other nonprofits that were in a similar situation, and that, that was kind of what...
So, it's been working.
It's been, it's been...
It's been working.
It's been working, but what it has been doing is, like, we have to come back for things like lease amendments periodically for things.
Which is standard.
Again, it is, it's, it is on the city's, you know, it's property that gets insured by the city because it's a property that we hold. If somebody gets hurt on that property, potentially, we're gonna be sued, so we'd have to defend that sort of thing. So, those are the types of considerations that were driving it.
And then, parking, obviously, the last time that they were here, unfortunately, it didn't go so well, and the parking really was a big issue. This land is owned by the taxpayers, really, and so, I mean, I think that we really need to make sure that, I know you put in there, like, vendors, I...
Yeah, I'm confused why vendors and the general public...
Yeah, I mean, this still seems to me that we're shutting out people to use it, and...
The concern was, is if it's, if it's public parking, that's a lot of exposure and liability for VSA itself. And the, what, what the compromise was, or at least the proposed compromise, is those spots could be used in concert with these special events. So, a car parks there, and maybe it's a promoter, maybe it's, you know, a vendor, maybe it's one of these four categories of people that can park there. That's gonna free up parking elsewhere, is the thought process behind it. So, rather than expose VSA to that potential liability, and then, and give them some control over their site, too, because they could be having, you know, their events, too, at the same time a special event is going on. So, you know, there had to be some consideration, or the thought was, we don't wanna put them in a position where they don't have parking because now the public is using that parking lot.
No, I think there's confusion. I didn't propose at all that it be open general public parking. It was, when the VSA is not using it, can the public have access and use it? I wasn't, I wasn't opening it up to anybody parking it at any time and taking away from the children or the, or the teachers or whatever that are there. It was absolutely not that. It was during the times in which they're not using it, can we not somehow allow the public, particularly during special events, to be able to use it? And the liability issue, I suppose if it's a vendor or a, someone from the general public on a day when the VSA's not using it, isn't the exposure the same?
No, it's not the same, because the way we have the agreement written is, they have to come to the city, it has to be a city-sponsored event. The vendor actually has to indemnify in, in the VSA. So, they're gonna be there, they have to clean up after, that's the difference between the public parking. Public parking, people come, they'll park, they'll leave, they'll leave their trash, you know, they'll, they'll potentially, you know, you know, get hurt there, that type of thing. So, the, the concept was, is we wanted to give VSA at least the control they needed to ensure that they weren't being exposed additionally. And, but at the same time, meet the need, which is the public parking. So, if it's public park, I mean, the spots that the VSA parking lot would be used for relative to the vendors, relative to the event organizers, would be spots that would be available out on the streets now or in other parking venues. That was the thought process. Now, whether that achieves your goal or not, I mean, we can, if you wanna change it...
Isn't this, if we just extend the lease or leave it kind of status quo, doesn't, isn't the city the, the ones who's obligated?
If you extend the lease and leave it at the status quo, then you're, you're still, the, the city's still on the hook relative, we're the ultimate property owner, so if somebody gets hurt there, you know, potentially, there's exposure. You know, and for the next 39 years, I wanna say, I mean, it's not like we have really any control over the property, it's fully leased out, so, I mean, that is your policy call. It's, I don't know what to tell you on that. This, we're trying to craft something that met their needs.
Yeah.
Relative to the liability, relative to the, you know, the fact, recognizing the fact they put millions of dollars into the site, they continue to wanna put millions of dollars into the site, and then, at the same time, recognizing the need of the council to provide parking for things like special events and, you know, and that type of thing. That was the thought process. Now, could we do it differently? Yes. Can you propose something different? Yes. I mean, that's, that's fair game.
Mr. Mayor, may I? I wasn't here for the discussion, but I did review the record, I watched the videotape. I think Mr. Shipman stumbled into kind of throwing something illegal, you know, before a policy discussion occurs, you know, cleanup, permeate, you know, evolves into this. And I, I'm sensitive to the position you're in, but the outcome, to me, is problematic, not knowing the special events world to the degree, but they have to come up with a million-dollar indemnity just to use that parking lot. That sounds like a hoop that, for some of these promoters, seems a little insurmountable. I mean, they're, they're enough, it just makes their special events more cumbersome. And frankly, I'd rather see, I wanna see a clean deal. I don't wanna see, I don't wanna see clouded titles with obligations or whatever. So, this third way you're finding is something the city always does, and that's why we end up with all these real protracted agreements. They're so complicated and cumbersome. And so, it's either give it to them or not. And cleanup, you know, there was a little cleanup provision of a, of wordsmithing problem. But there's another way that I feel comfortable with if we don't want, if we wanna go another way, and that is, at some point, there was a decision by the city council that buildings in this area don't have to have parking. They, they, you know, you don't, for square footage, you don't need parking, and I'll look for staff to confirm that, but I, I know it, you know, true. And so, I think we can give VSA the building and hold back the parking lot for their use, be what you were expressing. No, but the ground underneath that building, we can give them that parcel, parcel the property into, and then do whatever we want, deal with the parking. That might be a better way. And I've struggled with this.
Where are the places we're talking?
We're talking about 11, Mayor, I think, but let me just say is, when you count along what's on Riverside, along Bicentennial Park, there's not many more than 11 over there. And I, I do hear from people, particularly our aging population, as going down to Wingfield in the summertime, or just, you know, to take the kids swimming with, it's, it's tough. It's tough with parking, and, and I feel like we're at the point in our revitalization efforts of downtown where we need to maximize use of parking, and either hang it for 39 years is what I'm comfortable how it is now, clean it up, or do hold it back and make an agreement where we can meet our goals of, of letting the public use this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Speaking to the 11 spots and the seniors that come down for the events, special events downtown at Wingfield in particular, that's exactly why I'm comfortable with what's proposed to us today, because the vendors and the event organizers are the first ones in. So, they're going to take the first available parking spaces, which is going to send the seniors and the ones with, you know, the kids that would prefer to be a little closer, they're gonna send them further away. That's why I am comfortable in continuing to, to be a partner in our own planning, and that is to be good stewards, to help businesses succeed. Events are businesses. They may only be once a year or once a month, but they are businesses to our community. And I believe that we're fulfilling, again, a couple of our priorities very efficiently with this type of a deal. I, I'm very comfortable with putting the, the first in, the promoters and the vendors in those spots so that we leave the street places to the, the public. They're accustomed to looking for a place on the street, not in this private lot.
Well, let's ask Ms. Hill, what do you, what is a mil, I think it's a million-dollar indemnity for a promoter for one day, for 11 parking spots? What is, what is that gonna cost them out on the market from, you know, to shop that insurance policy?
It depends for different promoters, and I couldn't speak for any of them, but we require it for any event in any city right of way, they must provide a policy naming the City of Reno. So, it's an additional policy that they'll have to get for that parking lot, but typically, with the vendors that they're working with and any other services that they're, that they're using, whether it be security staging tents, they need to do the same thing. These promoters, they, they are, they are well-insured because these events are risk, they're risky, obviously. So, if they want those extra spots, which a lot of them I see wanting, they'll, they'll have to get the additional policy, and I'm not sure what the additional cost is, but they're, like I said, they, they understand the process of events in the city. This, this insurance requirement is nothing new to them, it just would be also naming the VSA and, and the City of Reno.
Yeah, but it still doesn't get a, you know, public person who wants to go walk on the path with their dog on a Saturday morning.
Mr. Mayor?
You're blessed, yes.
Two things. I, I think my intent has been made more difficult than what I discussed at the last meeting, and I kind of feel like asking our event promoters to go through another hoop is certainly not something I want them to have to do either. I, okay, so, which brings me back to the original discussions of, why do we need to do this today?
I agree.
I, I wanna hear from someone saying, to tell me why it's important to the VSA that we need to take this action.
There, I mean, and, and Mary Ellen can speak to that directly. From a city standpoint, there is no compelling reason to do it today. Again, the, the impetus for it was to clean it up. I mean, if, if we don't do it today, there will be a lease amendment coming back, you know, and the, so there's that, and there's the, and quite frankly, there was this provision in state law that essentially allows us to give it to them, solve a couple of our problems, state law that essentially allows us to give it to them, solve a couple of our problems, solve a couple of their problems, and at the end of the day, you know, if they don't continue to do what they're doing, we get the land back. So that was kind of the, the analysis now.
Are our problems just administrative?
Yeah, yeah, just more like, you know, that's staff time spent coming, you know, bringing an item to, you know, to do a lease modification, it's staff time, or it's money that's spent potentially in the form of, you know, it's property that's being insured, it's potentially, you know, to the extent the city gets named in a suit, if somebody gets hurt on the property.
Has that ever happened there?
It hasn't happened, but, you know, that's, but to the extent that we can lower the risk, risk exposure, that was the, that was the thought, at least. I mean, we can disagree with that, and that's fine. If, if we're comfortable with that risk, we're fine.
We have that risk at any public property, correct? Any parking lot, any parking spot?
Exactly.
Okay. As, as you have said, there's, there's no, I'm not hearing a compelling reason. I'm not, I'm not being convinced, and I so want you guys to, to give me some compelling reasons, and I'm not, I'm not hearing them.
I think, I mean, the compelling reason is probably for VSA, and I'm sure we can hear from them and, and as to that reason, but it gives them control of the property, and it's going to make it easier for them to raise funds, it's going to be easier for them to do improvements. You know, I mean, they're, they're a nonprofit that goes out and tries to raise money to do the improvements to their, to their, their, their property, and if they don't own the property, it's a little harder to do that. And again, and at the end of the day, I mean, these guys are paying us a dollar a year for this piece of property. And, and I, I truly believe, as I said last time, if, if we would have known where they were at and the position that they were going to be in at the time, I think we probably would have given them the land then. But I think just as, you know, just moving the building, getting it set up, trying to get their programs put in place, I think this was the easiest way to handle it at the time. But it does give them an additional ability to be able to raise funds and do improvements to that property. And keep in mind, we don't, we don't have parking there now. I mean, it's, it's not like we're giving anything away that, that we currently have. It's, we don't have parking there now. So I, I just don't, I don't see what the challenge is, to be honest.
And, and I can, I can accept all that, that's why this is a very difficult one for me. You know, if we had known what we knew then, but now we do know that we really need to maximize parking and make this, because it's become a destination, to the credit that they, they rightfully state they were a part of. So that's why the sufficiency in the parking, 11 spots is.
I'll tell you right now, our parking situation in our downtown is better than many, many, many of the downtowns you go to. I mean, go to San Francisco. I mean, I mean, I mean, our, our parking problem downtown, I'm not, I'm not trying to discount it, but it is nothing compared to other major cities that you go to. So, I, I mean, and to be honest, I think 12 years ago when we started, we didn't have a parking problem downtown, and I'm pretty happy we do.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I guess I'm with Councilman Jordan here and, and others that just don't see a reason why we need to change anything. Every two years, I've worked in plenty of nonprofits, and I know that it's a blessing to have the opportunity to have a piece of land by the city and pay a dollar a year. And if it's a sub burden to go and sit down with somebody every other year to say, can I make some adjustments or changes, that's the least of the issues. And so for us to be able to continue that relationship with them, I think that's, that's, that's a great thing to do. To all the success to VSA, I just don't feel like we need to jump into providing property for them when, when things don't seem to be such a burden. So I, you know, to all their success, but keeping things as they are is, is what I feel is right unless we want to make improvements with the parking. Outside of that, I don't really see why.
Mary Ellen, again. I wasn't going to bring this up, but with the RSCBA, when we were in, in 2000 and Mayor Griffin took me out on the porch and said, we need to move the mansion, we didn't think we were going to have to move the mansion back then. And so things can come up, that things change, city councils change. When I'm 90 years old, I mean, when those 2043 comes up, the closer we get to the end of the lease, to 2000, it's, it's going to be more and more of an issue. And that's my concern, I don't want to be reading the paper and saying, okay, now the city's going to take back the, the land in 2043. But, well, yeah, no, we're not, I won't be here either. But that's, that's what my concern is, and when we get closer to that, that's, that's going to be a real issue as far as our funders and everything else and making improvements on the land.
What's the end of the term lease now?
Two, 2043.
So how long have you been there now?
10 years.
Oh, you've been there 10 years?
2004, we moved the mansion.
Has it been a problem to, to raise money?
It's, it's a question mark. Well, because we say we own and operate the building, but we don't.
How much do you raise every year? Do you know? Do you have any idea what you raise every year?
What's our budget for every, about 300,000.
Uh huh, and how much do you ra, fundraise?
That's about 300,000 a year? Yeah, that's, we.
Uh huh. And I mean, you guys all know me, I'm a huge fan of the arts, big, big arts advocate. But it's one of those things, it doesn't seem like it's so urgent that we have to get it done today. I think there's other options to really look at. Parking does concern me because that was really a big question mark last time you guys were here.
And, and that's.
So for me, I just think it's one of those things, you know, let's not rush through this, let's look at all the options and make it so it's right. And like I said, I'm a huge arts advocate, so I can totally understand where you're coming from, but I also can understand where the council is coming from.
Well, we've asked this, somebody give me a motion.
You already did.
I have a motion in a second. For what? A approval? Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye. So, oh.
No.
No.
Show the vote.
Died three, four.
Five, three. How'd you vote?
Died.
I'll make a motion then.
Huh?
I died three, four. I'll make a new motion, I'd like to direct staff to work further with the VSA on this in bringing back two options. One, to make the, the clerical changes that started the conversation. And I'd also like to explore this idea of, can we give them the land under the building? Split estates, there's, there's Supreme Court cases about split estates, they're not great, and, and I think that is something that gives this historic resource the best security. And then we, you know, another option about how we can, what you've heard today about the concerns about the parking use, put in there. And then we'll have two options before us. Does that, that's my motion. Is it clear to staff? Okay.
Was that, was that like a future gen item?
It will. It'll come back and, and bring it back in December or January.
All right, I have a motion second, any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries. All right. Now we're going to go by Adam H. Three. Tom Dunn, you wish to say something?
Mr. Mayor, while, while he's walking up, it's Resolution Number 8019, Resolution to Augment the Budget of the City of Reno, Nevada for the 2015 Fiscal Year and Approval of Budget Revisions for a Period of August 19, 2014 through September 30, 2014.
Tom?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Klinger, I'm Tom Dunn, Vice President of the Reno Firefighters Association. I'd just like to get up here today and talk in support of items H. Three and J. Two. We're at the state of our fire department fleet where Mr. Klinger and Mr. Chisel both got to attend Fire Ops 101 two weekends ago. And one of the pieces of equipment that we used was the 1986 Seagrave. And I can tell you that both of those guys can probably attest to how old and how worn that engine is. And that engine today is a frontline piece of equipment. And I can tell you that when that piece of equipment and its sister rig came into service in 1986, I was a senior at McQueen High School. And while I'm still 18 at heart, I'm definitely not as fast or as smart as I used to be. They're no longer environmentally friendly, they have high diesel soot exhaust during the, the last special event we had, the Italian Festival, Engine One's driving all over the event, around the event perimeter, there's large clouds of diesel smoke every time we leave a red light. It's no longer viable on mutual aid or strike team assignments because of the age of the equipment. It would probably break down if we tried to send it over the hill to a mutual aid request at Lake Tahoe or El Dorado. Most firefighters retire anywhere from 20 to 28 years of service, and this one, our oldest pieces of equipment are 28 years old. There's high maintenance of cost associated with the equipment, and at some point there will be no longer parts available for that equipment because of the age. One of the other 1991 engines that we still have, its service life was completely shot. We donated it to the truck, the Reno Fire Department, donated it to the Trucking Meadows Fire Academy, and that actual diesel engine was rebuilt by a program up at TMCC. It just no longer met the requirements of the Reno Fire Department, too old, was taken out of service. Another concern that we have is, as far as firefighter safety goes, is the 86 Seagraves and the 1991 Pierces are an enclosed cab with the engine compartment exactly where the firefighters sit. There is no air conditioning, that was a novelty back in 1986, 1991. The firefighters sit directly next to the engine, and the cab temperatures can be 120 plus degrees in the summer as we're riding around on calls. It causes firefighter stress and firefighter fatigue just strictly from the high operating temperatures that are inside the cab. So once again, the Reno Firefighters Association is in support of items H. Three and J. Two. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
Well, how about a presentation from staff on this?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, Kate Thomas with the Office of Management and Budget. Before you, as item H. Three, we have three general fund and one enterprise fund item for augmentation. Speaking to the previous speaker, this was brought to light for us, it's, as you recall, out of cycle for us to bring forward augmentation, which we do quarterly, but when recommending whether or not we should proceed with the lease purchase option for the fire trucks, or whether we have the resources to purchase those outright, which is obviously our preferred method, we came to light that we had some resources available to do some of these one-time fixes. So you see the three general fund items on here, including the master plan written statement of that money that was removed during the July 15 budget workshop, and the phone system, which we are in grave danger of seeing failure of any time now. So that, along with the fire trucks, represent the three general fund items, and we see before us six building inspectors coming forward from the building enterprise fund. We have resources here from staff, should you have questions on these specific items, I can answer overarching questions on the budget mechanisms as well. So we'll entertain any questions you might have at this time.
Any question?
I, I do have some questions. First of all, on the fire engines, I would have known that we had fire engines that we were budgeting for in the capital improvements program, because I looked at those fleet requirements. But I understand, and I, I find it confusing, I think we've made great strides in budgeting in the CIP, but I, I was very confused that fire calls their engines fleet. Everyone else calls their vehicle, or no, calls them apparatus. When I think of fire apparatus, I think of breathing and backpacks and all this. I don't think of fleet. Now, that may be a fire, unique to the fire department world, but I don't think it conforms with the efforts we're trying to do to have a really good quality budget process. And as a matter of fact, when I read, reread the other night, the 2006 fire audit, that performance auditor called it fleet anyway. So I don't know, why does the fire Reno FD call vehicles fleet? Because I want to look at apples and oranges, I want to see, you know, public works, fleet needs, your needs, and your needs are called apparatus, and they're in a separate part of the capital improvement program book.
Councilmember Lucas, for the record, Mike Hernandez, Reno Fire Chief. You're correct, the term apparatus is a term specific to the fire service. We can certainly move forward in future budget presentations and change the category to fleet with respect to the vehicles that we utilize in our service. But you're, you're absolutely correct, that the term apparatus is, is specific to the fire service, and, and we will look at improving that when we come, during the next budget process.
Okay, that's great, I want to see all the fleet. The other question is, I was reading that 2006 audit, and I know we had a different fire department back then, but there was a series of recommendations about the fire fleet, you know, a couple of comments, and, and I think you even in one of your staff reports mentioned that there was one kind of to-do task of your needs that isn't up to date yet. Have you, in turn, and something, I think you had a program of replacement that maybe is outdated or not, was not updated after the divorce, where are you at in implementing the 2006 recommendations, the matrix study on the fleet and updating the replacement program? One of the comments, for example, was that we have, you know, a lot of light utility vehicles, a replacement, not years, is 10, and that that's not the norm, it should be 12. Of course, we're talking about ones that are 30 years, but where, where are you at on, on the overall fleet, you know, best fleet we can have?
Well, it was my understanding that prior to my arrival, we did have a relatively aggressive of, you know, capital fleet replacement program. It averaged about, to about two apparatus or two fire trucks a year. However, during the downturn in the economy, that entire program was, was parked, and we have not purchased an apparatus or a fire truck since 2008. Now, we've, through a, through a grant purchase, we were able to upgrade two vehicles for the chief officers, two Chevrolet Tahos, if you will, and, but we are at a point now where we can start looking at, in fact, we've met with finance and budget, and we've actually programmed into our capital expenditures line side, some, some funds to look at either lease purchases and or outright purchases as we move forward. But we are at a point where the lifespan, the aggressive lifespan of an apparatus is 15 years. And we are at a point where we've got apparatus that are 28 years old and, or fire trucks. And we, we are at a point where I consider this a critical need, a critical need replacement. So to go back to your initial question, do we have a program in place? We, we had a program in place. The recession eliminated that program or caused us to park that program. We will certainly, we would love to, to come back and fund that, that program and move forward in replacing our apparatus to include our service vehicles.
And efficiencies in the, the 2006 report too.
Just to add a little bit to that, on page, I'm going to say 144 of your capital improvement plan that was distributed, outlines the needs for the fire department, or actually not the needs, rather, you can see a snapshot of what's available currently on deck for, for the fire trucks that they're using. Two of those items that are on that list are the ones that are recommended to be replaced through this, the two items that you see on the council agenda today. So we have worked together to say, of that schedule that's out there, let's come up with a plan, whether it's however many year, given the resources that we have, so that we can move forward in making sure that those, and of course, the plethora of other needs that we've got throughout the city are being addressed as revenues start to improve.
Okay.
Questions outside of, of this? The building inspectors, I sit on the BFAC, I'm the liaison.
Are we talking about fire engines, or are we talking building, building inspectors?
It's in the same one.
Okay, all right, excuse me.
Yeah. So, so I was speaking with one of the BFAC members the other day, and the number, I thought in the report was five inspectors, and I heard today it's six. I don't, myself and the other BFAC member remember only three being discussed at the BFAC meeting a couple of weeks ago. What's the plan?
Sure. Fred Turner, Community and Development Director. We've actually been having discussion regarding the inspectors for about six months now. Just looking, we had some transitions going on in, in the building division, and what we looked at was comparing ourselves to other jurisdictions and our workflow. Currently, our building inspectors are doing 25 to 30 inspections a day. From a sustainability standpoint, we can't do that. So the national average is about 17 inspections a day. Right now, the, the Reno or regional average is about 17 to 20. So looking at an additional six inspectors on top of our, or I'm sorry, proposing six inspectors with our additional four for a total of 10, we're looking to get down our inspections between 16 and 20 inspections per day.
Yeah, I'm just asking about the process of advisory bodies saying three, and, and staff, you know, in between comes up with six. What, why'd that number change, or, you know, is the BFAC, is the BFAC okay, you know, did they look to six as a number?
I, I heard there were some concerns, and I actually reached out to our BFAC members and talking to them about it, because if there was concerns from them, I'd want to continue this item. We've been having the discussion about resources in a department for about six months now, and determining what type of building inspections we should get, looking to outsource some of the, the work which we have. We have two temporary inspectors in place. We're at this point right now where we're, we're essentially pulling the trigger to, to hire some people to, for two things. One is to, to get that inspection level down per day, and the other thing is, within the next 12 to 36 months, we're looking at, of those four inspectors, likely three of them retiring.
Okay.
So what we're looking at is some succession planning with it. We've been talking about a lot of numbers, six is, is the one that makes sense. That recruitment, we're looking to get someone on, in onboard that group in January, February of next year.
All six together at the same time?
We're looking at different ways, it may be staggered. But again, if you hire six at one time, 20 years from now, you're having six leaving at one time. So similar to what the situation. at one time, so, similar to what the situation we're in today.
And then my last question is on the master plan. When we had our strategic workshop back in February, what was the number that we assigned to do the master plan? Because we've whittled it down, I mean, we're backfilling it now, but...
Mayor and council, the number that we had assigned at that time was one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in general fund. When we had made the reductions, we had left fifty thousand dollars in the budget, so we're, we're bringing that back to the full total of what we had proposed originally, and staff has looked at that, and we think there are other funds that we potentially can match to one hundred and fifty to bring that total to, to three hundred, and that's something that we will bring back to this council. We think there are other funds out there that we can tap into.
Okay, and, and I agree. I mean, I think CDBG is one, because I understand that paid in the past, and even, you know, we're in the impact fee program with RTC, and, you know, that drives us doing a CIP, RTC money to the, to the table on circu, on the circulation element, and the public safety element. I think there should be research on whether or not forfeiture funds can be used for planning purposes for our public safety component.
Councilwoman, you're correct, and we will look at all of those sources.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I have a couple of questions. I'm, I'm excited that today we're looking at augmenting our budget. That hasn't happened in quite some time, but I did have a question with regards to the budget augmentation percentage. I'm curious to know this year's percentage difference from budget, and those of us in business understand that budgets, revenue and expenses are just that, they're projections in their budgets, they're not always known. I'd like to know where we fell. Likely, we fell on the plus side, not the negative side this year. I'm curious how, how we trended.
Yeah, thank you for the question, Councilwoman. If you look at the total budget for the current fiscal year, the adjust, or I guess for last fiscal year, because it's, it's money that was balanced forward from last year, you're talking, the one point three million is, is four tenths of a percent. And if you go back and, and look at history, that's, we typically average under one percent change. And just to give you some reference, if you go back to fiscal thirteen and look at the change that we had anticipated versus what was actually balanced forward there, we actually went the other way. We had to, the, the ending fund balance came back one point seven million dollars less, but typically, it's less than one percent, and this is four tenths of a percent. So it's, it's right within that, that realm of being normal. Again, we're, we're doing these projections in June where we don't get the final C-tax numbers and the final property tax numbers until August or September in some cases, so we're, we're making projections based on the best information we have at the time, and to be within a half a percent is actually pretty good, in my opinion.
I would agree with that. I just wondered, because I do understand budget projections, and I was just curious where it fell historically. So it actually fell below our average. The percentage difference fell below, so, good job on the budget.
Motion? Have a motion, second, and in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. One item, we had told somebody that we would do something at L-five. Discussion, we're going to jump over to L-five. Discussion direction, potential approval of the financial restructuring of bond ordinance sales tax increment subordinated loan of two thousand and six for the summit Sierra. Mr. Frankovich.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is John Frankovich, represent the owners and operators of the summit project. With me today is one of the principals, David Silverstein. Mic is not on.
Is it red?
Yes.
Then you're on.
Get the start again.
Yes, sir, start over. Tell us who you are.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is John Frankovich, represent the owners and developers of the summit project. With me today is one of the principals, David Silverstein. First, I would like to recognize and thank Mayor and Councilwoman Zadra and Mr. Dorch, Councilman Dorch, together with John, and especially Lynette Jones, who has to put up with all of this. Thank you all for your service, and it won't be the same around here without you. In two thousand and four, the summit and the city entered into a business partnership. City said, if you invest eighty million dollars in our community, bring five hundred thousand dollars of new retail space, bring in new businesses that have never been in this community before, and build ten million dollars plus in public infrastructure, much of which was not needed to serve this project. If you perform, we will share with you on a fifty-fifty basis, the sales tax revenues generated by the project, and not by the project alone, to reimburse you for the public infrastructure. Two thousand and six, that project was completed, all of the conditions were satisfied and exceeded. Project created some fifteen hundred new jobs as a result, and the city certified the completion and actually issued a bond to us, to the summit at that point in time in the amount of ten million dollars. It's not a general obligation bond, it's a bond that's tied, payment is tied sole source to the revenues generated by the sales tax from the project. The bond did have downside protection for the city, that said if the sales tax revenues of the city do not exceed two percent going forward, the city was not required to share any of the sales tax proceeds. The project and the bond performed as anticipated for about a year, someone actually got a payment in two thousand and seven. The bond was pledged as part of the security package for the financing for the project to a bank, and we all know what happened. We had an historical economic downturn, not foreseen or anticipated by anybody, not anybody's fault, not the city's fault, not the summit's fault, but it really changed the economic reality of the way business was conducted in the United States. The city's sales tax revenues dropped from forty, from a high of forty-five million to approximately one million, excuse me, thirty-one million during that period of time. There's been no payment on the bond since two thousand and seven. The owners of the summit, in the meantime, did what they needed to do to keep the project alive. Debt reinvested, got new partners, changed their financing, made concessions to their tenants. They did, to keep the project alive, what we're asking the city to do, as businesses do, renegotiate the situation. The city was receiving the tax revenue during this period of time, one hundred percent of the tax revenue, and about eight to nine hundred thousand dollars a year went to the city, and this is tax revenue that the city would not have received but for this project. But the recession has required all businesses and all municipalities and all other organizations to renegotiate those business relationships. It is not only an economic reality these days, but it's just the way business has to be conducted since then, the recession. Now, we're in two thousand and four. The city's sales tax revenues are increasing, coming back, the financial condition of the city is stabilizing, the economy is improving. We think it's time to revisit and adjust the bond, to see, bond formula, to be consistent with the original intent, as business partners have done for the past seven or eight years. There are three specific requests that are set forth in the staff report. One is to reset the base year for the bond. We had proposed that it be reset to the year two thousand and fourteen, which is the highest that the city has realized since two thousand and nine. We have a further adjustment to that based on some conversations. Some council people and the numbers provided by staff, we're actually going to re, propose that that number be increased to the two thousand and five level, so that everybody's put in the same position. We also asked that the extent, that term of the bond be extended. We've lost about the last ten years, and we'll lose another several years before the payments start again, and so we want to have an opportunity, so we asked it to be extended. And we also asked that the original retail mix criteria be eliminated. It was complied with, has been complied with for the last project opened in six years or the last eight years, and we don't think it serves the valid purpose going forward. I do want to show you a chart, because I think it has interesting numbers, and it really explains what we're asking for, that was included in the staff report. I don't see it, can you, no, okay. This is a chart, as I said, was in this, in the staff report, and it shows a number of things. It shows where we started on this. Forty-two million dollars was the original base, and over in this column, that's the city's tax revenues, sales tax revenues during that period of time. You can see that those sales tax revenues, you're looking at the fourth column, increased for a couple of years, and then they went way down to as low as the thirty-one million dollars. Currently, based on the last fiscal year, they're thirty-eight million dollars. But what other, what is interesting about this chart is shows that the growth of the taxes has greatly increased in the last couple of years. Your increase is becoming quite substantial, over four point four million dollars in the last two years, which, in meeting with some members of the council, provoked the question, why can't you raise the rate, the base rate, back to the forty-two million dollars it was in two thousand and five? When we looked at these numbers, we say we're going to reach that level, the city should reach that level, under the, if the current progress continues in two or three years, and, and we're, this was going to be delayed at least a year anyway, thought that that was a reasonable suggestion, and said, okay, we will go along with that, we will set the base, not at the two thousand and fourteen year, the thirty-eight million. The base will be forty-two million, whatever that exact number, forty-two million, nine-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand dollars, and we'll start this process at the time that the city's revenues reach that level, which we say we anticipate will probably be in two, maybe three years, if the current rate continues. If it doesn't continue, then the city doesn't have to pay anything during that period of time until it reaches that, and, and during the period of time, the city will continue to receive one hundred percent of the revenues. I would point out that under the schedule, another number that's interesting on this chart, is if you add up, and these are going forward, are projections, so they're always got some room for debate, but the city, during the period of time that the summit would collect the ten million dollars, and the city will collect over one hundred and twenty million dollars in increased sales tax revenue, so the city's going to be doing well during that period of time. In order to accomplish what I, what I just explained, we provide staff with an amendment to the agreement that was originally presented to you, and I'll put up just the one period, it was a very simple amendment, excuse me. It was a simple amendment that just changed the one provision down. Originally, it said the base year would be the tax year two thousand and fourteen. Now it says the base year will be the year in which the city's revenues equal the forty-two million, nine hundred and forty-five. So, we won't start any sharing until that exists. In the meantime, after that you reach that level, the forty-two million, if you don't, you don't have to pay, but when you do, then the two percent downside would kick in again, and that would be a cushion for the city. Puts the parties, this, this arrangement will put the parties virtually in the same situation they were in, in two thousand and five, when this agreement was originally entered into. And, and the city, of course, will have obtained and collected one hundred percent of the sales tax during this entire period of time. Now, I, I appreciate that the numbers are interesting, but this is a policy decision, and when we negotiated or discussed this with staff over the past year or two, and tried to come up with a solution, they've always said it's a policy decision by the council, and I think it is, but I think it's a very, very important one. It deals with how the city's, what the city's policy is going to be do, going to be, dealing with business partners going forward. There's two policies you could adopt. One is to work with existing partners to reach a solution when an unanticipated event, like the recession occurs, in a manner that's, that's fair to both the city and the developers. Such a policy, I think, would promote growth and investment by existing business as well as new business. On the other hand, you could adopt a policy, a hardline policy, say tough luck, a deal is a deal, would suggest that that's not a good long-term policy for the city. I think it would discourage growth, and it would discourage investment, and could be adverse to the city when the city's on the other side of the table, which during this recession, you have found yourself, when you're looking for concessions, and you can hear the response, why should we give you concessions when you won't give concessions to your business partners? Think it also, such a policy could tarnish the city's reputation as a good place to do business, because I think that city has that reputation now, and I think it's valuable to protect. I recognize, I recognize and appreciate that we're in difficult times, and it's difficult for everyone on both sides of the table. And this is not an easy, and it's a difficult decision, but I believe it's the right decision. Sometimes, the, the right decision is not an easy one. So I request that, that you approve the request to modify the agreement in the manner set forth, and, and, as set forth on the board right now, with the three matters that we just discussed. And I'd be glad to answer any questions, but before that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Silverstein, who also would like to address the council. David?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm David Silverstein. I'm one of the owners of Bear Properties, and we're the developers of the summit project. I, too, would like to extend my congratulations to you, Mayor, and to Councilor Zadra and Councilor Dorch. I haven't had the pleasure to work with you, Ms. Jones, but I know you've been behind the scenes. Thank you all for your commitment to this city. It's been a pleasure working with you over the last ten years as we've developed this project, and you have demonstrated all along your passion for this city, and I commend you for your, your hard work. You've done a masterful job, I think, directing this city to come through the downturn in the economy, and it's been a challenge for you and a challenge for us as well, but I think we've broken through the clouds, and it's, it's a bright future for, for all of us. So congratulations and best of luck to you. I love the city. It's been a pleasure coming here for the last ten years, and look forward to coming here for more years to come. When we started this project in two thousand and four, we were asked by the city to commit to make certain public improvements out in the south area of Reno, improvements which exceeded thirteen million dollars, public improvements. We did that, and it was in the spirit that if we built the project that we were going to build, and we created the revenue stream that we would create, that there would be some manner in which we could help recruit, help recoup some of the infrastructure cost. Those infrastructure improvements certainly earned to the benefit of the community then, but it also earns to the benefit of future projects to come out that will come to the south part of, of your city. I think we have lived up to every requirement in the agreement that we promised. We built a, I think, a wonderful project. I had, I had the pleasure of attending your reception, excuse me, a little earlier today, and I continue to meet people here that I have not met before, and when they ask what I do, I say, well, I'm from Birmingham and had the pleasure of working on the summit Sierra project, and each one of has said, well, we love your, we love your project, and we shop there, and I think it's made a valuable contribution to the, in its own way, it's made a good contribution to your city. Congratulations on the recent economic development announcements that are, I think, going to benefit your city. I know that new residents that come will look for great education and great leisure and good shopping, and I'm proud to be part of one of those amenities that this city will continue to offer. But as John said, during the downturn of this economy, cities and, and, and other municipalities throughout the country have had to make adjustments, working with partners, to reflect a change in circumstances. Certainly, the agreement was drafted to provide the city protection in normal annual fluctuations in sales tax revenues. Certainly, no one envisioned that the formula that was prepared for the agreement would put us in a position where we would have, never have an opportunity to recoup what really was requested of us to build down in, in the southern part. So I ask that you consider making the adjustments that John has suggested, so that we have some likelihood out of future revenues that we produce. We've got to continue to invest in the project, and if we don't produce that revenue stream, you don't owe us anything. And quite frankly, you, you didn't have to invest on the front end for any of the infrastructure. We built it all, assumed the risk, no question, we assumed the risk, but I don't think any of us believed that we would ever encounter the economic downturn that we had. So I ask to, ask you to consider making a reasonable and fair adjustment, and I look forward to working with you for many years to come. Thank you.
Any questions, uh, on the mayor?
Do we have any public comment other than that?
Yes.
Let's do public comment, and then, and then we'll go to questions. Thank you. Eddie Lorton?
For the record, my name's Eddie Lorton. I ended up on this deal. We bade this mistake before, it's a wonderful development, I agree with that, but there are no guarantees in business. I suffered a little bit, too, no one bailed me out, and that's... I suffered a little bit too, no one bailed me out, and that's a problem here, you know? That's going to cost us millions of dollars over the long haul if we don't start collecting something. And the thing of it is, I think maybe you should change the retail mix for them, that would do them a favor and let them do what they need to do to get spaces rented out. But as far as give them money back and a deal's a deal, hold their feet to the fire, look at the ballpark deal, they came back twenty, twenty-five or thirty, I mean, it's like, really? So there's that point where you have to hold their feet to the fire. And, um, if they would have had an overabundance of money, if times would have been good, then when they came back and said, oh, we made all this extra, here you go. So I think there's that point in time where you hold their feet to the fire, and I hope you consider that. The city needs money. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll bring it back to the table for questions. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I do. Um, for probably Robert, um, just don't know where to, either you or, or, um, Mr. Manager, looking for consistency in the way the council makes decisions. Let's relate this to the other, um, major partnership that we have with the ballpark and the many adjustments that were made to, to that, um, contract and that, um, partnership. What's the, um, sales tax net that you can best project? I know that you don't get those reports, um, detailed from the state, but what kind of sales tax number is generated from the ballpark and what kind of number is generated from Summit, do you suspect?
Uh, Robert Chisel, Director of Finance and Administration. I, I, I don't have the numbers in front of me for the Freight House District. Uh, it, it's, it's probably not a lot of money. Uh, it is primarily just the two restaurants and, uh, the, the, um, gift shop that they have there, while Summit Sierra has several larger, uh, retail operations, particularly Apple and Dillard's. But I don't have either of their numbers, uh, to, I would imagine Summit is quite a bit larger.
Would you guess that to be fifty percent larger, forty, eighty?
I, I really don't, you know, I don't have the numbers for the Freight House District off, you know, so I, anything I throw out would be just a guess. Um, I'm hoping some of my staff is listening and is going to, uh, text me here shortly. Hint, hint.
Same for property tax. Um, what kind of assessment is out at Summit versus on the ballpark? We won't even speak to who's paying their property tax and who is not.
Yeah, well, and, and there is the issue with the Freight House or the baseball park not paying their property tax. Uh, now, when you get to the Summit, you have to remember, not all the Summit is owned by the Reno Retail Corporation. Uh, Dillard's owns their own pad, BJ's owns their own pad, the, the banks own their own pad, I believe, you know, a number of the other establishments own their own pad, so they, they will pay their property tax separate from the RRC. And again, I don't have those numbers in front of me.
And will we maybe be able to see those while we're having this discussion? I know your staff is probably scrambling.
Probably not, probably not the property tax, uh, because there are so many parcels there, it will take quite some time to gather all the parcels. But, um...
And so hopefully we'll be able to get somewhere near that for, um, review. How about the, the retail mix, um, request? What, what would we be able to, what kind of conversation have you had specific about that or have you?
Well, we look back to the original agreement that was done in two thousand and four and two thousand and six. Um, we believe at the time, the city of Reno had sent a letter to RRC saying the retail mix had been met. So since that had been sent out, we believe that, that retail mixes was met.
Was satisfied?
Was satisfied.
And you would be comfortable, would you be comfortable?
With the retail mix at this time, we would have to probably reanalyze it, but it appears to still be meeting the requirements.
But would you be comfortable with modifying that?
Uh, that, that's a policy decision for the city council.
But we would look to you for information to support a decision?
Yes, I, I don't, my, my concern would not be about the retail mix, my concern would be about, uh, uh, taking revenue that is going to the city and allocating it to someplace else.
And maybe just to add on to, to Mr. Chisel's, just to add on to the retail mix, and I obviously wasn't here at the time that this original agreement was put in place, but it's my understanding that the request for the retail mix was to attract, um, different retailers than already existed in, in the community. So I, I think Mr. Chisel is right, I think it, it becomes a policy issue for council. If this council believes that the, the mix of retailers that are out there has satisfied that, I, I think at the time it was probably, we didn't want the Summit poaching on other...
We didn't want displacement, exactly.
Correct, yeah.
And I just got a text, the Freight House District's sales tax is about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand per year.
And the ballpark? Was that a pun?
That, Freight House District is the ballpark.
No, what I meant was, that's just on the, the retail piece, how about, is...
That, that is, the, the Freight House District includes the ballpark, the state, the, uh, the shop and the two restaurants.
Okay.
Councilman Zadra, could I respond to the sales tax, and the property tax, I have our numbers for those, or, and the sales tax, by the way, is an estimate because the, the information is not readily available and we haven't had to certify it for five or six years now. But the estimates right now on the sales tax have been very, very consistent between, uh, eight hundred and nine hundred and as high as nine hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars and as low as, uh, seven eighty-six. But they're between eight and nine hundred thousand dollars on an annual basis. The property tax, as Mr. Chisel said, is a little bit more difficult because there are other prop owners out there that own, but, but, uh, from the Summit standpoint, it's been fairly stable as, with a high of nine hundred and seventy-four and a low of eight hundred and seven thousand dollars in property tax that's been paid on an annual basis, uh, for the Summit property. That doesn't include property owned by other, the retailers out there.
So, Robert, back to you, or again, Mr. Manager. How do we, how do we work toward consistency in how we, um, evaluate requests from business What are the points we need to address to maintain consistency in our decision-making?
Councilwoman, I think if we're going back and we're, we're looking at consistency from the standpoint of looking at this project compared to the ballpark, which I think is, is what you're referring to, I mean, I think there are some significant differences, at least in my opinion. When we restructured the, the baseball agreement, there were some provisions in there that previously didn't exist. One was ownership of the stadium at the end of that revised agreement. Another was the, the, the personal guarantee that we received as far as, uh, the baseball team and their commitment to Reno. And I think the difference, at least in, in my mind, and again, this is just my opinion, is you're, you're talking about a public amenity versus a private development. And I understand that, you know, we entered into an agreement, um, with the Summit Sierra when they first came here, uh, in anticipation of sales tax doing something obviously much different than I think anybody had anticipated. But I think the, the restructuring of the baseball deal, at least in my mind, is, is a very different set of circumstances than exist for the, the Summit Sierra.
Mr. Frankovich, thank you very much for your presentation. I'd, I'd heard it before and I thought you made some really great points about, um, you know, the partnerships and, you know, those times. And thank you, Mr. Silverstein, for coming out again. I'm, uh, prepared to make a motion, and my motion will be to deny, I, I apologize.
I thought you asked a question.
I cannot support that. I'm sorry, Mr. Frankovich.
I'd answer that question quickly if you'd like.
Yes, yes.
Your motion is not accepted.
Uh, motion to deny.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Second? Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I would like, uh, some, some discussion on this. Um, you know, I would thank Mr. Silverstein and Mr. Frankovich again for coming forward, and it's certainly not lost, I don't believe on any of us, that you have invested millions and employed thousands and, uh, it are generating a lot of tax dollars. Thank you. The question I do have is, I suspect, uh, where this vote is headed, but what I would want to ask you is, is leaving, with the exception of the retail mix, I'm, I'm not in favor of changing the retail mix. I think you have a unique, um, shopping opportunities out there and we don't need any more Walmarts and Targets and that sort of thing. But my question is this, does it, do you, any good to extend the contract with all of its current provisions to maybe at some point, uh, help you in the hopes at some point you can catch up? In other words, Mr. Frankovich, you said some ten years were lost without there being any of the payback of the ten million dollars. Is, is there, and I'm, I'm looking to staff to maybe give some input on this, if we extended the current, uh, arrangement, um, for a period of time to give you further opportunity to, to reach that?
Robert Chisel, just for the record, you know, the base was set at forty-two million with the two percent rise, or it is currently for fourteen would have been required a fifty-million-dollar sales tax. Sales taxes was thirty-eight million dollars last year is what the city received, which is back to two thousand and four levels. E-Even with a fairly robust growth, you're, you're probably, because that two percent is continuing to grow up too, you're probably looking at least ten, fifteen years before you would see any, unless there was incredible growth or inflation in the, the community.
Well, well, I guess my question is maybe something, even if it's fifteen years, might be something to be looked at versus not, but, um, that's might be more of a question to the developer if that's even something they have an interest in.
Well, the chart that we put up explains why an extension doesn't work if we get this displayed. The very first column in this chart, as we said, puts you at our original base of forty-two million nine forty-five. That shows the impact of the two percent increase over those years, and you can see those numbers are extraordinarily high, they get high, and, and the city would have had to, we would have had to generate that under norm, normal circumstances. And as, as Mr. Chisel said, I don't believe, I would like to think and hope it would be wonderful, but I don't think the math will ever work on the, without changing at least the year of the base. We're not trying to change the base right now, we're leaving it to forty-two million, we're just trying to change the starting points, because when you do two percent a year, you can see it's added up in, in, uh, about fifteen years there from forty-two million to fifty, fifty-five million. So the extension doesn't address the problem, unfortunately.
Does any modification of the retail mix, and I'm not saying eliminating it, uh, by any stretch, but is there an opportunity to, let's say you get a potential tenant that, um, maybe under the current definition would be restricted from being there, but maybe you could bring it back to us?
Well...
Does that help?
Frankly, we're not, uh, as long as we're not sharing in the revenues, we're not bound by the retail mix. So that's why we wanted to extend it, but we didn't want to have, and, and you raised that issue, and I think it's a good one, some flexibility if you, if you're not going to eliminate it altogether, and I appreciate the comment, you don't want a Walmart or something out there, and that was never the intent of this project. Uh, but there are very prominent and substantial retailers in this community that would like to have a second location. We're not going to replace them or, or move them from somewhere else, and, and at least if we go forward, uh, and we maintain a, a, a relationship, we'd like to have the flexibility of saying, okay, here's this tenant, and they're in place A, but they fit in very well as a second one, and come in and at least have the flexibility at that point in time to ask the council whether they could adjust it, i- if you think that the retail mix is still an important, uh, important criteria going forward. Because, uh, Mr. Klingler was right, I mean, it was the intent originally to bring in new retail that hadn't been here, to capture sales tax dollars that were going to Sacramento and San Francisco, and, and we certainly have accomplished that by the mix, and, and as I say, this mix is still in place, like some, at least some flexibility on that, but just changing it doesn't add enough sales tax, uh, revenues to, I mean, we're generating ourselves, so we're getting a one-to-one return, it's not going to work, uh, on the formula without, uh, adjusting the base. Sure, come on over.
I certainly understand the comment about the retail mix, you know, uh, we have no intentions to bringing, uh, or changing the retail mix, none whatsoever. Um, I'm fully prepared, if there was a way to, to work an, an arrangement out here, that we would continue with the retail mix criteria. No, no disrespect to Walmart, I mean, they're, they've never been part of the plan. The retail mix that we've created demands that we continue to bring the same quality of retail going forward, unless the bottom just falls out and things just change, but I don't see that. If, under the current formula, if a existing store who's doing well in some part of your city wants to open a second store, um, we're, we're really disincentivized to bring them because it doesn't help satisfy the retail mix. On the other hand, you have a retailer that would like to have a second store in your market, your market grows. Uh, so instead of having ten million in sales in their existing store, they can keep that amount of sales plus add to it because they're in a different submarket, being in South Part Arena. I would submit to you, I've, I've said that from day one, it makes no sense to preclude those that are here who want another store to have it, recognizing our obligation was to bring in new retail that wasn't otherwise here and that we wouldn't just cannibalize existing retail. So I'm fully prepared to work with you in maintaining the retail mix, it's our goal, it's our vision. Would come back to you though, if we had others that wanted to join us so that we could add additional quality retail that may want to come to the project.
Can we get some input from staff on that? In other words, do we have any other, um, arrangements? I'm going to guess the answer's no, with regards to this retail mix requirement? So we're not setting some weird...
Robert Chisel, I do not believe of, we have any other such agreement.
I have a motion.
Just really quickly, um, you own other malls, correct? Am I right?
Yes, I guess I own other retail venues.
Uh-huh. Um, so I'm just curious to get a little bit of background. Um, is this something that you've done in other cities?
Projects like the Summit?
No, like...
Incentive programs like this?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, we've done it in, uh, several other cities, Birmingham, Fort Collins, we had a public improvement fee that helped us absorb the infrastructure costs. We built the infrastructure just like we did here in Fort Collins, and the city allows us to recoup that, um, infrastructure cost through revenue stream that comes in from the project.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And I know that you're not from here, so, um, one of the things is unfortunately, financially, we truly aren't in, in a place to be doing this. We have, um, levels of nineteen seventy-seven for public safety, and so there's a lot of other priorities right now that we really have to take care of, and I do think your project is fantastic, it's beautiful. Um, but for me, that's one of the biggest reasons why right now that I have to decline and, and I'm not comfortable with it.
May I respond?
Sure, absolutely.
You know, as John pointed out, over the last, um, seven, eight years, the city has continued to collect the eight hundred or nine hundred thousand dollars in sales tax revenue just off this project, and you haven't shared back with us at all. We continue to bring fifteen hundred people working out there, averlorum taxes have continued, and there has, there has been no shareback. So when you say you don't, I, I recognize, I recognize, and I made my comments earlier, that you have weathered the storm and had to fight the battles that other cities have fought to maintain budgets. Uh, so what we have proposed, I, I guess I'm having trouble understanding why it's not a reasonable request to take us back to where we were in oh-five with the base, provide you the protection, starting at that base, that you have to have a certain amount of growth every year in order for you to have any obligation to share with us out of our revenue stream that we create. If I am not successful in producing this, moving this project, project forward, you have no obligation. And if the city's sales tax revenue, if you reestablish the base, fell below that, you still don't have any obligation. And this obligation, if we reset the base to where it was in oh-five today, for example, your obligation probably wouldn't... your obligation probably wouldn't even begin to kick in in sharing any of the revenue for a couple of years, because we've got some catching up to do to get to that base. So, and I would also submit to you that you have to spend some money to make a little money, and your investment in this project has been incredibly fortunate for the city, would be incredibly fortunate for the city, because as John points out, the small amount that you share does pales in comparison to, over time, the millions that you're getting from this project. I would only say to you, not because it's me, I would only say to you, if someone else comes to your city and says to you, I will spend $125 million, I will build infrastructure, and all you have to do, city, is share with me out of a revenue stream, I would say replicate that. I would say replicate that, because most cities can't afford to invest in public infrastructure on the front end. I would encourage you, if it's other transactions like mine, and it's a good project, and it fits within the quality of projects you want to have in Reno, it's a great way for the city to get a return on an investment, an investment that you're not having to make on the front end. You know, you're not having, you had no risk going into this transaction, none. I had to have all the risk, and certainly I listened to this gentleman say, a deal's a deal. That's really not how the business world works, in the truest sense, in the fairest sense. It's not how partners treat each other, but it's a call you have to make. I would say to you, though, it's a great, it's been a great investment for the city for me to come here and spend this kind of money and produce this kind of revenue stream for you that will continue for long after we're able to recoup, over time, our $10 million.
Any other comments? I have a motion on the floor. I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So vote, those noes?
I will vote no, which surprises me. That's not how I thought that I would enter into this conversation today, even though I have to put it on the agenda. But I think that both of the, both Mr. Silverstein and John made valid points that resetting the base is a reasonable expectation of a business partner, and for that reason I would vote, I voted no, or I voted not in favor of the denial.
So the vote's 6-1. Mr., is there anything we can look at in the future to see if there's something we can work with them or do something? I don't know what it would be, or...
I mean, Mr. Mayor, if that's council direction, we will certainly do that, but...
We'll look at that later. Okay. All right, now we'll move on to item J1. Oh, they're here to tell us about the trolleys.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, John Flansburgh, Director of Public Works. Before you today is the program of projects for fiscal year 1516. You actually had this presentation as a request from the council in August, I believe it was 27th, and there have been no changes to this program of projects for this year, so we would turn it over for your decision.
Mr. Mayor, I have a few questions on this one. Tell me this, this interlocal agreement, there's some language in here, well, first of all, what is the authority for doing this interlocal agreement? I don't see in the whereas's any authority, except for NRS, that pertains to the impact fees program. Is there another authority?
The program, and certainly RTC can speak to this as well, but the program of projects is a requirement that then gets forwarded into the overall statewide transportation improvement program, so that's one way of keeping track of our different programs. This is basically the agreement between the three entities that would then go back to RTC for final approval, that just states, gives them authority to actually do work in our area on our behalf for this program.
So it goes up to the state, that's the STIP, right?
That's the STIP.
That's the STIP.
That's the overall transportation, depending on what kind of funding source you're being used.
And RTC has our Rtip, that's the regional, and this is under their authority as the MPO, correct? Metropolitan Planning Organization, right? That's a designation...
That's their designation.
For their ability to use federal transportation funds, and then there's a lot of other funds. Is there a process that the MPO has to use in creating these agreements?
The process was what we stated...
Okay.
In the August 27th meeting.
Okay. So the, oh, the Code of Federal Regulations does not require an MPO to do certain processes of involvement and outreach to develop the interlocal agreements, then?
Not to the interlocal agreements, I mean, the process going through the RTC and through the...
Our tip.
Well, it's actually the Technical Advisory Committee, and then going up through recommendations that are made from that, that then would go up to the RTC. This is now bringing it forward to the city of Reno, city of Sparks, and Washoe County to make aware that these are the programs that have been recommended by those bodies to be brought to these entities for their agreement, if, as such. And so we did bring this to the August 27th meeting, council heard it, and there were no changes or recommendation differences. They were bringing back today what was approved, at least the staff report that was approved from August 27th.
Okay. Well, Mr. Gibson, so you're the director of the Metropolitan Planning Organization, correct? And because you use federal funds, you have to work in a framework that is codified. Tell me this, because this is implementation of the Rtip, there's some language in here that's called out in our staff report, that quote, "Approval for any project for any fiscal year shall be approval for all continued work by on or behalf of the RTC on that project for any later fiscal year." Is that new language to this year's agreement?
I believe that is not new language to this year's agreement. This was language that was incorporated, I believe, two or three years ago.
Okay.
Let me add to Mr. Flansburgh's comments, again, Lee Gibson for the record. Under state law, for the RTC to spend its gas tax monies, there must be an agreement entered into between the county and the local governments that comprise the RTC. That agreement, one, is a list of projects approved by the RTC. That's what state law calls for, that the RTC will approve that list. Two, the county has to approve the use of funds, and then the local governments, the municipalities, then approve the implementation of those projects. So this agreement really is designed to address each of those three functions with respect to implementing the requirements of state law, and I believe it's on chapter 278A.
I'm more specifically interested in your role as the MPO, and as the process of involvement.
With respect to the MPO, we are required to have a long-range transportation plan, a transportation improvement program, and we are also charged under the Unified Planning Work Program to conduct corridor studies. We're required to have a public involvement plan. We apply the public involvement plan by federal statute to the projects. So each of the projects contained within this list today has been thoroughly vetted through the public involvement program that we follow. So we've had public outreach meetings, we've had workshops, and all that kind of stuff.
Okay. Well, that's where this statement that approval for any project for any fiscal year shall be approval for all continued work by on or behalf of the RTC on that project for any later fiscal year. And I'll just use a project example. I think last year you had on the Northeast Connector, it was under EIS, and so that was on past fiscal year. So does that mean that all continued work on that goes through for the rest of the time, that we have approved that going forward? And how does that comport with all of these obligations for public involvement and process as projects move through the pipeline for consideration and ultimate build-out? Because it seems like, once we approve it here, it's a done deal. Is that what you're saying with this language here?
No. What we're saying with this language here is that you're authorizing us to move forward with right-of-way acquisition, engineering, design, and construction of the projects contained in here. Each of the projects, then, that you authorize, we'll go do. Projects such as the Pyramid 395 Connector are partnership projects with the Nevada Department of Transportation. They come from our plan, they come from NEPA, they've met all of the federal requirements. A good example of that joint framework would be the Pyramid-McCarren intersection. That's a project jointly developed by the Nevada DOT and RTC. We followed NEPA, it's in the plan, we're actually in demolition now, and we will jointly construct that project and move forward. But that's a contract obligation between RTC and NDOT.
Fourth Street Prater.
Fourth Street, actually, that's a good point, thank you. I call you Commissioner Jordan, City Councilwoman Jordan. We are bringing the Fourth Street Prater project as a new project to the list. This is the first time it's been on here. This is our project that has gone through the regional transportation planning process, the project development process. In fact, I believe we have been noted for our public involvement process through the oral history that we developed, that's now feeding the design, and that project is here today for you to approve, and we will move forward, and hopefully, I'm looking at Michael, but I'm hopefully, this Tuesday, October 28th, is that right? We will be having, hopefully, an event with Senator Reed and Secretary of Transportation Fox to present our Tiger Award. Approval today of this agreement actually allows us to move forward with the necessary work to complete final design and start construction.
Well, I guess, okay, so the Pyramid Freeway's US 395 link, that is shown as a $9 million project, and it's under N, so it's under NEPA. So that project, which, I don't know, maybe the Rtip shows it being $500 million project or $200 million, but by doing this interlocal with this in here, that means that when you come back next year and you show it in design, and 20 years from now, you're still working on it and it's in design, we don't have, the future councils don't have any latitude under these agreements. We've signed off on these permanently, and I'm just trying to understand how that corresponds to all these requirements you have for the use of federal money, and you're showing that you're going to use federal money on this for public involvement, because it seems to be done here, not under what I know as the regulations that you are imposed upon you for receiving federal funds.
We're actually following all of the regulations that are imposed on us for federal funds. This project is listed in the program of projects for informational purposes. It's my expectation, this project, like the Pyramid-McCarren intersection project, will be built going forward after we get a record of decision from the Federal Highway Administration. Because that is a large project, the Federal Highway Administration will approve a financial plan for the funding of that project, but that project will be built through that joint arrangement between the Nevada DOT and RTC, and it may likely, through the NDOT, it may not come back to this body.
But it's on our work program.
It's listed here as informational.
So when it comes on...
It's listed here as informational.
Informational. How do I know what's your informational in here, and what are binding to the council for the work done in this fiscal year, we're bound to for next fiscal year?
I was going to add that to the record. The new projects for this year include the corrective maintenance projects that will be added in there, and that was a list that is typically developed in cooperation with our TAC, that is your staff and our staff. We're bringing the Fourth Prater Bus Rapid Transit Project forward, as well as the Virginia Street Midtown and RTC Rapid Extension Project. That's a good example. We're bringing that forward for design in NEPA later on, because we anticipate using fuel tax in that, not a completely federal-funded NDOT project. We'll be back to you with that in a later date with respect to issues related to right-of-way acquisition and construction. Moving through the list, I'll just put it out there, there's a Southeast Connector item. That was really an issue for the county with respect to money, that's really an informational item here. You've approved this project, and we're moving forward with that. And then there's the traffic engineering spot, spot intersection improvements that we've included in here, and again, this will be a list that's developed by joint staff. Approval of this today allows us to move forward with those new projects, and we'll be happy to get constructions, a design, NEPA, and construction started as appropriately defined in here.
Okay. Well, thank you for your explanation of your understanding of this agreement.
I have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Did you have a report on trolleys? Yes. Did you have a report on the downtown trolley and stuff? Oh, excuse me, that's right, I'm sorry. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, you'll be a resident of Reno for a long time.
All right.
And thank you for all of your work.
Thank you very much. All right, now we're going to item J2. Tom Dunn, you wish to speak again?
Excuse me.
Step up here, Tom.
Yeah. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council again. Just real quick, I wanted to address something that Councilmember Breckus brought up earlier, questioning the 2006 audit of the Reno Fire Department, and one of the things that came up was the state of the fleet, the number of service vehicles or light-duty vehicles we have. One of the things that we have at each one of our fire stations is a light-duty vehicle. In some cases, it's a SUV, it's a pickup truck. Those vehicles give our department flexibility. They allow personnel to move around stations as things happen, whether it be moving personnel from one station to another to facilitate training, have EMS personnel move from one station to another to fill a vacancy. They also allow our special teams, such as hazmat, water entry team, and the urban search and rescue team, to move from the station to an incident without completely taking an entire crew and moving them from one side of the city to another. Those vehicles are also used to support wildland urban interface operations, whether it be a strike team leader or somebody else that's moving to an incident from the city of Reno. Some of those vehicles are still same thing, they're largely out of date, they currently do not meet current fire department standards. A couple of our stations, we have 1988 pickups that are literally rotting from the inside out, because the dashes are falling apart, the seats are falling apart from just everyday normal wear and tear, things like that. Our light bars currently are, you know, some of them are sun-bleached from the amount of use and amount of time they spend outside. So ultimately, what we're talking about in, with the APRAAS improvement or APRAAS replacement program, it was unfortunately put on hold due to the economic downturn. And what we are talking about today is, once again, providing the most effective, most efficient, and most safest fire service delivery to the citizens of Reno, and also providing for our firefighter safety. So, thank you.
Chair, lend a hand, a motion?
Got it.
Oh, I got one, okay, I didn't hear it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Sorry, Chief, I know you were dying to give us a presentation.
Sure you are, Chief. City clerk, let's see, boards and commission appointment?
I think that's me.
Urban forestry.
Urban forestry. I'd like to recommend that we reappoint, gosh, you know, I don't have it here, who was the name?
Brian Eubanks.
Oh, Brian Eubanks, yeah, yeah. We'd like to reappoint, the commission would like to reappoint Brian Eubanks, please.
Okay.
He's a professional...
I have a second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Identification of mayor and council items for future agendas?
I don't have any for you, Mr. Mayor.
I don't either. Ms. Adria, you have any?
I would like just an update, and it can be in a memo, it doesn't need to be on our next agenda. I'd just like to see where we think we are, staff, for the text amendment on the Greenfield tennis facility, changing the simple text, that language, I mean, not to imply that staff isn't crazy busy, but just curious where we are on that. And again, it can be a memo, it doesn't necessarily need to be on our agenda next week or in two weeks.
Okay. Ms. Sheeby?
And I don't know if this is for the agenda, or maybe just for staff, but on where the businesses are, there was Chocolate Bar right over there by the movie theater across from Campo, right there, what's that corner street?
First Street.
Right? So right there, the trees are overgrown so substantially that they have covered the names of the businesses, and I think that it's something that we need to look at, so, perfect. Thank you so much. You know what?
They can do that at the same time they're painting gerbs.
Perfect.
I have one in there.
Speaking of that, in walking along the truckie and seeing all the trees that are dead and laying in the Truckee River, is there an effort while the river is so low to clean some of the trees in the Riverwalk area? Well, it's easier to get in there, there's a number of dead ones, I was looking down at the museum, Autumn Museum area, and just looking into the river, there's a ton of dead trees.
I'm not sure if there's specifically an effort, but it's something we could look at.
Okay.
I have one, Mayor.
Yes. I'd like, on the next agenda, discussion, possible direction to staff and/or initiation of a text amendment to Title 18 related to a moratorium restricting, and this is where my language may not be quite, digital signage, on-premise digital sinus...
my language may not be quite, digital signage, on premise digital sinus, signage, on all properties with the exception of those holding business licenses for large retail establishments and non-restricted gaming licenses, pending a period of study and analysis by the city.
Okay. Any others? All right, any liaison reports? Ms. Breckus. Ms. Zadra.
No, sir.
Mr. Delgado. Mr. Dorch. Ms. Jordan. Ms. Eevee.
No, sir.
Well, any reports on professional conferences? Good, we'll move on now to resolution in support of the mayor's challenge to end veterans' homelessness, a joint initiative of joining forces with the U.S. Interagency Council on Homelessness, U.S. Department of Housing, Urban Development, U.S. Department of Affairs.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that is Resolution Number 8020, resolution in support of the mayor's challenge to end veteran homelessness, a joint initiative of joining forces, U.S. Interagency Council on Homeless, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs.
Have a motion, the second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item L5.
We did.
Oh, that's right. That was right, sorry about that. Oh, now, the public hearing tonight is at 6 o'clock, the item M1, Regional Center Downtown Regional Center Boundaries. Any other things you want to bring up? The chair will lend a hand, a motion? Recess, that's what I was going to do. Now, we're going into the redevelopment agency. Hey, Scott, wake up. Redevelopment Agency.
Would you go attend to that chair?
Now, we're going into the redevelopment agency. Oh, Jesus. Turn that off. Whoever did, that was. Madam Secretary, call the roll.
Eevee, Breckus, Zadra, Delgado, Dorch, Jordan, Kishel.
Here.
Scott.
Thank you, Ms. Scott, I didn't know if you were awake or could hear. Approval of the agenda?
Public comment.
Oh, yeah, public comment is, I'd already marked it off. Any public comments? Oh, we got a couple, yeah. I know who won that one. Ken Crater?
I actually wanted to speak on the auto museum, not public comment, so.
Okay, we'll pull you back up on the, all right, Mr. Lorton, you want to speak on the public comment, or do you want to, on the Harris? Okay, well, we'll go down to Harris. Approval of the agenda? We did that, all right, all in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Approval of the minutes?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Public hearing resolution, now we're going to talk about Harris. So, I will now have, Mr. Crater, you can come back up now.
Mr. Mayor, before Mr. Crater speaks, if we could open the public hearing, because this is a formal requirement.
Oh, my goodness, I'm really rushing to get out of here. Madam Secretary, have all the notice has been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given, and there was no correspondence received.
Okay, now, we will open the public hearing. Mr. Crater, I'm not going to send you back to your chair, you can talk now.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, my name is Ken Crater. I want to say that I think this council has done a great job in looking at city of Reno properties that make sense to work with our partners in the community to do good for the community, and so, I support what you're trying to do on this, and many of the other items you had today. We wouldn't have some of the great facilities like the Boys and Girls Club if it wasn't for this council, and I commend you. But, on this Harris Auto Museum, I just want to understand better how it affects Museum Drive, because if you deed this property over to the museum, why would the city even bother to keep Museum Drive? There's no sense for the city to maintain this short little stub section of street, and furthermore, would seem to me to give the museum much greater flex and the flexibility in the future if they had the street as well as the property. And we certainly all want this museum to succeed for the long term. We all know what an effort it was way back when to get the museum when Mr. Hera passed away, but I would just suggest that if there's any way we could also include an abandonment of Museum Drive, we'd want to grant back easement for utilities, and possibly even in a pedestrian access easement for access to the river. But I think if you make this consideration, that would be a huge benefit to not just the city, but also the museum. That's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Lorton?
Would it be possible to hear staff and then we speak before you vote?
Had a staff report or anything? Anybody from the Harris want to speak? Yes, y'all come on up.
I'm Jackie Frady, Director of the National Automobile Museum, the Hera Collection, and with me.
Good afternoon, everybody. Paul Georgeson, Vice President of the Board of Trustees of the Automobile Museum.
And I just wanted to recap the purpose for the museum and how we came about. The idea for the museum came forward when Mr. Hera passed away, and Holiday Ends purchased his properties, including Hera's Automobile Collection. And there was an enormous public outcry when Holiday Ends announced that they were going to sell this collection. The governor at that time, which was Governor List, stepped in and formed a nonprofit organization to ensure that a portion of that collection was preserved, and prominent board members that were then appointed to that board to fulfill that, to make sure a part of that collection was ensured, and there'd be a new museum to show the collection in. After lengthy negotiations, Holiday Ends just did agree to donate 175 automobiles, an extensive research library, and other artifacts. It was the largest corporate philanthropic gift in our nation's history that came to this nonprofit. There wasn't funding involved with that gift. The Holiday Ends put a stipulation on that gift. They gave the nonprofit six months to secure construction financing and to find a site. And that's when the city of Reno Redevelopment Agency stepped in to ensure we'd receive that gift and donated that property for the purpose of the museum. And then, our Board of Trustees took out a loan, a bank loan, for the construction. So, we met that six-month requirement, and Holiday Ends stepped forward and gave the donation. Then we proceeded with building the museum. It opened November 1989, it's a tremendous fanfare, the citizens were absolutely thrilled with this new museum, and it was in debt 9.6 million. In 1991, the city of Reno assumed that construction debt with general obligation bonds for five years, and that, and then we gave the automobile collection to the city as collateral for those bonds. That gave our board, and the city and the state, a five-year window of opportunity to work out a plan to resolve that construction debt. It was resolved when the bonds were paid in 1996. The assets of the collection were returned to the museum, and three organizations made financial commitments. The city of Reno Redevelopment Agency made a donation of 3.2 million, the state of Nevada, a legislative appropriation of 3.2 million, and then our museum raised 3.2 million. And the city then entered into an 80-year lease with us, they owned the property. At that time, we gave the museum to the city of Reno, the building, and the 80-year lease had a 40-year term and then a 40-year renewal. So, now, we are celebrating the museum's 25th anniversary, thanks in large part to the city of Reno, because this museum would not have been here if they hadn't stepped in and helped save that collection. We've been a very successful museum, and most recently named one of America's five greatest automobile museums. We've been self-sustaining since 1993. And leading up to the 25th anniversary, the last couple of years, we've been examining what is the future of the museum, what is its next phase, what is its next 25 years? And through that examination, it was determined that there is feasibility for a large expansion to the museum, and that's what we're embarking on. We were very fortunate that a donor-advised fund at the Community Foundation of Western Nevada purchased the 5.57 acre parcel to the east of the museum for the purpose of us to build an expansion. We, our goal is to build a large museum under one roof. We are 105,000 square feet, we have the opportunity with that property to double that to 210,000 square feet, a large museum under one roof on one property, and owned by one owner, hopefully. We want to bring in a variety of collections, more of the same isn't necessarily what's going to draw the visitors to Reno, but bring in different assets to that. Porsche collection, World War II, trucks, aviation, to draw in large audiences to the museum and a large number of tourists. Ranson Webster was the visionary behind this expansion, he's the chairman of our board, a philanthropist that many of you probably know of the donations that he's made, he has a prominent Porsche collection, and he wants to see it preserved and shared with the public as well. We already have one partner in, in the project as far as collections, when we started exploring this, the Hayes Antique Truck Museum in Woodland, California, agreed that we were a good partner for them, they want to preserve their collection and share it with the public. They've already moved their collection here into a warehouse in Reno and waiting to donate that collection to the museum as part of the expansion. When we complete the expansion, we'll have the largest expansion of river development in city of Reno. We will take a vacant lot and turn it into part of this enormous attraction. There will be financial benefits as well through the construction process, architects, contractors, subcontractors, and then, when the project is built, of course, the increase at room nights and room taxes and retail from the visitors that come to the museum. We have been an economic and cultural product for our city, and we see ourselves being even more vital in this way, with a larger museum that can draw tourists to Reno and even more recognition to our community. We have already requested RFQs from architects, and we plan to select our architect in December, and we have our capital campaign plan, and we plan to launch the capital campaign in early 2015. So, the gift of this land allows us to take advantage of that tremendous opportunity of accepting that parcel in the 5.7 acres east of the museum to be able to connect to the current building and build through our parking lot, Museum Drive, and the parcel east of the museum.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else? Any questions? Go ahead, Ms. Breckus.
Okay.
Yeah, let's go, Eddie.
For the record, Eddie Lorton, here's another example. Okay, Mr. Webster, multimillionaire, bought the property next door, and then he also bought Mr. Aliaski's old mansion on California Avenue. So, there's a gentleman with a lot of money. Now, we haven't had any appraisal on this land, it's riverfront property, and these other giveaways were pinnies compared to this thing and what the value is. So, now, at this point in time, I figure an appraisal, maybe give it to him for a portion of the appraised value, but just hand it over and give it to him, and the guy already bought the property next door, just another giant giveaway that the rest is peanuts compared to this thing. So, and that's once again, I'd offer a certain amount for my kids in the future, if you just want to give it away, but I hope you really, the rest of this council really considers what this property is worth, and I'm not saying get rid of the museum, it's great to have, and it's nice, and it's a nice asset for the community, but to just give it to him scot-free again on riverfront property, I don't agree with that, and they should get an appraisal, and even if they paid 25% of that appraisal for land value or something, thank you.
Hey, Mr. Lorton, I want to ask you a question. They got an 80-year lease for a dollar a year, what's the value of that? You've got an IQ.
Well, it's an asset like we talked about before.
How much is the value of it, sir? That's what I asked you, not about an asset, I know it is. You tell me, you're a smart man, what's the value of an, what's the value of an asset that's got a dollar value to it? One dollar.
This is what the value to that asset is. In the future, one day, when you and I are gone, that could be worth something to the city, and if we give it away, it's worth nothing to the city, because you don't know what's going to happen, like our economic downturn, what if we get like San Francisco, and this land's worth tons of money a square foot, especially on the river, so I'm just saying protect our assets, so that's where I'm coming from, sir.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't think you could tell me the value, so that's all right. Let's bring it back to the table.
This is Resolution Number 221, resolution of the Agency Board of the Redevelopment Agency of the City of Reno to convey certain real property located at 10 South Lake Street, Reno, Nevada, to the Hera Automobile Foundation and Nevada Nonprofit Corporation pursuant to NRS 279.472.
Ms. Frady?
Motion. Move it up. Motion, second. All right, now, special.
Okay.
Okay, so, I guess this question is for Lori Miles? Do we not have an appraisal on this property?
Lori Miles, Public Works, no, we do not have a current appraisal.
We don't, okay. And then, Ms. Frady, just curious, yesterday, we met on this item, and you were kind of giving me the history and the background. Are the cars, because I can't remember in our conversation, were the cars donated to the city of Reno, and then we donated them back to you? Is that correct?
The cars were donated to the city of Reno as collateral in the general obligation bonds, with the understanding that when the bonds were paid, then they would come back to the museum. So, we own the collection.
Okay.
The nonprofit owns the collection.
The nonprofit owns it?
Yes.
Okay. And then, yesterday, I asked you who purchased the land? Who purchased the land?
It's a donor-advised fund at the Community Foundation of Western Nevada.
Okay, so, is, are they going to donate the land to you, or are you going to buy that land?
They are going to donate the land to us if we're able to get ownership of the current building and land, to be able to build the expansion.
Okay, so, they might not give you the land if you don't get it?
That's correct, because the challenge of building, a building attached to another owner, the city of Reno owns the building, we want to attach to it and then build through that entire space, so, that is not an option for us to get it and then do the expansion if we don't own the property or the building.
Okay, and then, this is for staff, and I, there was some NRS that I did see, and this I want to make extremely, extremely clear, there was an NRS about if that is not used for that purpose, then it would divert back to the city?
For the record, John Shipman, Deputy City Attorney. No, this is a different animal than the other two deals that you were looking at today. This is a redevelopment project, so, the way the redevelopment project works and the way that the disposition of the land works is, it's a public hearing today, and what we put in the deed is a covenant that for the, essentially for the term remaining on the redevelopment area, for that area, it would have to remain the museum. So, we figured that was, that made sense, giving that, given that it was the redevelopment agency that did the deal for the museum. So, we wanted to make sure that they fulfilled that condition through the expiration of the agency.
Okay. And I guess it's hard, I love what you do, I love the museum, trust me, I love vintage and history and all of that, and I absolutely do. I guess it's just a little bit difficult when I feel like, in a lot of ways, it's not the city council's land, it really is the taxpayers' land, and, and I know there's a lot of people that are incredibly passionate about that, and one day, when we're all dead and gone, I still think that it should be in the hands of them, and so, it is really difficult, not to mention not having an appraisal on this piece of property right now. I'd still like to see that, and, and maybe we look at this in a much bigger picture, because one of the things is, and I know Councilman Delgado and I have talked about, is the riverwalk and the access, and really making something incredible about, out of that area, and, and so, instead of piecemealing it together, because it sounds like it's going to be a great project, but I still feel like there's just parts that I'm just quite not there, so.
If I may, sorry, council member, but on the board in front of you is a recommended condition, going back and looking at the docs and then understanding exactly that, that there's a need to have that bike pedestrian easement, we haven't had it. condition, going back and looking at the docs and then understanding exactly that, that there's a need to have that bike pedestrian easement. We haven't had it or, it hasn't been there because we've owned the property, but now we got to make sure that if in fact the council wants to go this direction, that it would be put there. This is the language we'd recommend that you would put into, give staff direction to put into the deal. And in addition, relative to the boys, yeah, Boys and Girls Club, also a direction to reserve easements for sewer and that sort of thing. So if, if you wanted to go down this route, if you could just amend the condition to include those, we'd appreciate it.
I would include both of those in my motion.
Yeah. Question.
Yes.
Those are a conversation about a street that runs through the property. Can, can I see a map? That I believe, uh, my husband's public comment Ken Crater had brought up. Is there?
Lori Miles, Public Works. That street's held an easement, so they would have to go through the abandonment process to abandon the road through community development.
Okay, so that's part of the whole setup here that you guys would then take ownership of that easement? Okay.
And, and for the record, John Flansworth, Public Works Director, it would actually, when they became owners of both parcels on either side of the road, and then the abandonment process, that would be the easiest or most direct way to do that.
Okay.
It's really kind of.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I appreciate that the details are coming forward on this proposed exciting project and I appreciate the history, a lot of which I didn't know. But I feel like to continue a partnership really with good intent, that we need to be on, you know, maybe more details. You know, we have a long history and it feels like there's a desire to get this done on a lame duck council and, and I don't think that bodes well for a.
I don't like to be a part of it.
Oh, I'm sorry. But I don't think that bodes well for a partnership that we want to have going forward. And so, you know, we're talking an easement here, a road here. Mr. Crater was great in bringing that up. I guess, you know, I have a couple of questions too. You, you mentioned you have a donor who says he'll give you the land, he has an instrument to do that if you get our property, but what about your building property? Is he saying you have to have, is he going to pay for your building construction costs or who's doing that? Do you have that? Is that part of his agreement to give you the land? Is, is you matched with some fundraising also?
So Paul Georgeson, for the record, there's a couple of issues there. The timing of this has nothing to do with the current city council. We started this planning for the expansion several months ago, if not a year ago. We are in the process where we are getting ready to try to roll out our capital campaign for the construction of the new expanded museum. We will need to get capital contributions from various members, both from the community and outside of the community to do that. We do not have the funds tied up now to build the expansion. It's going to be a very expensive expansion. We're talking tens of millions of dollars that will go into local contractors, local construction, local jobs to build it, to expand that property. With respect to Ms. Shivi's comments and the value of the property, as I would defer to, to Merrick O'Shea, there is 68 years left of a lease on that property for a dollar a year. The value of, the market value of that property is probably legitimately the present value of $68 in 68 years taken to a present value. The original property was provided by the city and is owned by the city, but as Ms. Frady indicated, the, the museum raised the funds to build the building that's on the property. That was done through the museum's efforts. The collection and the building then were through the museum's efforts. So, so with respect to the value to the city of this property, right now the value is a dollar a year for the next 68 years, which remaining on the lease. What we are hoping to accomplish is to, we have approximately 85,000 visitors a year that come through the museum now. With that expansion, we hope to significantly increase that. We hope to bring people from all over the world. We hope to increase room taxes, sales taxes. Part of our plans deal with the river and the river corridor, recognizing that we have a great opportunity there to have this river frontage. And so all of those things have been taken into consideration in this plan. With respect to delaying this implementation, the problem is, is we need to do this in order to raise the money that we need to make to, to raise. We're talking about substantial funding and that's why we're doing it now. It has nothing to do with any other timing issues.
Well, I guess my question is, you know, thank you for that, but I was prepared to support giving the Boys and Girls Club property because they've made the investment. It's there, it's clear. And we had a split estate. Here we have a split estate, but we have some development potential. I'd like to know what the development potential is because I, what if there's a scenario where the existing building demos and becomes a parking lot? We'd like maybe to make sure that that can be a parking lot and off hours for the museum for the public because it is the public property. Or what if your design you're still in involves building on these new five acres and this becomes a spinoff parcel of going to a commercial use? It is, you know, on a corner. And then you're getting profit from that to help your construction costs. I can see those scenarios playing out. So maybe we can enter into an agreement of intent when you, just like the donor has given you intent, that he will give you that money when you get our property and the construction? We do an intent. I just, I am a little uncomfortable in that. And then there are, are these other access issues that we have with our riverfront property to meet our riverfront goals. So that's why I am uncomfortable at this point with this decision. And I have one technical question also. Ms. Frady, I'll let you speak and, and it's on page 7B where they said, it says, "For purposes of this agreement, a significant change of ownership shall mean a transfer of beneficial interest of more than 25% in aggregate of the present ownership." And so it contemplates when you could transfer the property. I don't understand how a nonprofit has 25% ownership. That, that, I'd like that explained, but Ms. Frady, if you had a response to my, yeah, and maybe legal could tell me where they, how they drafted this, why?
So in response to the potential of the museum engaging in profitable business or developing retail, we are a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization formed solely for educational purposes. And our business is managing a museum and a custodian of historical artifacts and sharing those with the public through interpretation and education display. So we, we would not be engaging in profit businesses.
I, I understand, but it might make some, some business sense for you at some point to carve out, because you're getting five acres to take some of that little parcel to spin it off or.
It doesn't.
Or.
It reverts back to the.
Or create a parking lot on that. It's not clear to me.
It doesn't make sense for us to do a parking lot. I mean, really.
Well, you're going to need parking.
Well, a parking lot will have to be part of the project, but we wouldn't demolish the existing building to build a parking lot or for retail. That existing building houses one of the finest collections in the world. That is Mr. Harrah's collection. It is world renowned and it is a major draw to the museum. We would not give that up.
You wouldn't relocate tho, that collection into your new building?
No, no.
No attempt ever to do that?
The intent is to build on to the existing building and add on new collections and new visitor experiences and draw people to a museum that has more advantages and draws. But we are a 501(c)(3) for education purposes, not for the profit.
And I understand that. Mr. Shipman, did you draft this?
Yeah.
Yeah, what were you thinking on?
Yeah. All that this is, in its standard language, we've used it in like the post office deal. It's, it's to avoid kind of a bait and switch, a transfer of ownership. So, you know, they've got a 15-year covenant and commitment that they can't transfer the property. And this is just defines at what point that, you know, from a, you know, business standpoint that would happen. So we'd have something to judge that against.
But the post office is a for-profit developer and this is a nonprofit and you don't have ownership in a nonprofit. So how can you say 25%? I don't get, I don't get that.
Well, the nonprofit owns the property and, you know, to the extent that, oh, you're saying to the extent that there's like a member is in the nonprofit?
Yeah. It doesn't make sense. You can't divide up the ownership of a nonprofit.
I mean, what, what you can do is give direction. We can go back and review that and, you know, come up with, if there's other language that works a little better. I mean, I think that's a good point. You could give us direction, we could, we could do that.
Yeah. I'd like to be, I, you know, I would be comfortable looking at that. And then if, if she does say that they're not going to do anything with that building, you know, I'm, I'm okay with taking care of the split estate situation, but if as they go forward on their capital campaign, the design looks a little different, then I am going to have an issue, particularly if I see a parking lot there that's used, you know, you know, kind of the VSA argument.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if it, I mean, for what it's worth, I think that when they come back with a project, I think just from a land use and discretionary ability, you're going to have the ability to condition that project and look at that project, I would imagine.
Well, it may be building permit. It may not be discretionary. And that's another piece of this information. Let's have them go through the discretionary abandonment process and then we'll see what we're dealing with. That's another point. That would be best case scenario for me.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to point out that, uh, I, I appreciate the conditions that are on the screen right now as they're going to have frontage to the river and that's going to be a huge part as we start to redevelop our riverfront and that's going to be a connection to our other amenities in the city. With that being said, is the idea that they're going to come back to the council with a design options and, and working with our city and, and what about what, what is it that's going to be placed in there? Is that, does that make sense? When you guys go to architectural firms, you guys start designing and you guys start to design the riverfront and working on the trails and such, that you, we have an option to also play a part in that?
It was our intent to follow the, the codes and guidelines for the development of the property. But we're working with the architects to come up with designs that, you know, fit the needs, but that was our intent to make sure we, we follow all the guidelines and the codes that are in place for the development of that property.
Okay. Yeah, I, so.
Maybe if I can add some clarity.
Yeah.
Bill Thomas, Assistant City Manager. The, the proposed condition to the easement, specifically if you look at sec, the second sentence.
Mm-hmm.
Which contemplates the future improvement of the five acre parcel that they're acquiring. There, there already is the path and there's already trees along the river. There's also lights there. What's missing is landscaping and improvements on the five acre piece that was originally going to be a subdivision and now is going to be the museum. So that condition contemplates that they will come up with a plan that will come back to us and that we would approve to be consistent and would make sure we have an easement to have some control and ability to continue to use it in the future for the path.
Correct. Yeah, okay, that's what I was asking for, for clarification. That's going to come back to us.
It's to our advantage to have the bike path on our property, just as it is now with the existing property. We definitely want to be part of that.
Of course.
What did the Rab do with this? Did they give us any input?
I'm sorry, Ms. Brackus. I wasn't at that last, that meeting. Bill Thomas could give some input.
My understanding is, what I remember, the Rab did approve this moving forward, which is probably not surprising because I think they see the auto museum as a component part of what we're trying to do in the downtown. And so that's why I believe they were in agreement with the concept of expanding the auto museum and saw this as part of that expansion.
And just for clarification, Bill, for once, if, if this goes through today, the next step for us to see anything with this would be what? Or do we see anything else?
Um, my understanding, and see Claudia here, is that the zoning would not necessarily require a special use permitting approval back through the council. But the way this is written, it says there's an agreement. So the agreement, um, in terms of what happens along the river would have to come back through the city council.
Okay.
So that's where you would see it. Wouldn't necessarily see the expansion of the auto museum unless of course, you wanted to put that in here. This contemplates strictly that they would come back and have an agreement on what they're going to do along the river. That would come to the council for your approval of that agreement. And in that agreement, it'll detail what's along the river and how they're going to maintain it and what's it going, you know, all the details.
They'll also have indicated they'd come back and show us what it looks like or show staff what it looks like and everything.
They'll definitely have to show us what it looks like as far as the expansion because they'll have to get a building permit. But I don't believe there's any discretionary approval that would.
No, that's right.
Go through you or the planning commission.
Okay.
I, I have a question. So what happens if your capital campaign fails? Within, I mean, is there a timeline that you're hoping to? I would imagine this is going to be a fairly expensive venture.
It is going to be an expensive venture. There will be, will be a well-defined timeline and we are confident that we're going to be able to be successful. We were the first time when we, we developed the museum, it was a successful campaign. We have 25 years of history of, of a successful operation. We have people who have joined the purpose to help us raise money. We are confident that we're going to, to raise the money.
What kind of protections does the city have if, let's say it's 10 years and we're having the same conversation and?
Brycey Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. The protection would be in the document term, so I'm going to let Mr. Shipman address those.
And curious if the redevelopment agency gave money to the museum too, back in the day?
They paid it off.
How much did the redevelopment? 3. something?
3.1 million.
3.2 million? Wow, those were the days.
Yeah. Don't we wish we had that?
And I guess my only concern is we all have people that'll come in and say, we're going to do this and we're going to do it. And then all of a sudden it remains a vacant piece of property and now we've given something away and now we have a vacant piece of property.
We'd like to think we have done it because we were a gamble. You know, the citizens came forward, save it. The governor said, okay, you're a nonprofit, make it happen. The city said, we'll help. The state said, we'll help. And we did it. And we're here at our 25th anniversary saying now we want to take the next phase. So I think we have that good track record that we did it. And I know, I'm not sure everyone who've come before you with a plan that, that hasn't a history maybe has that track record.
How, okay, then answer, answer me this. How long did it take you for that project? When you went down the path of, of getting the three-point whatever from the redevelopment agency and then from the?
When the, when Holiday ends, gave the 175 cars in the library, which started that process. We broke, that was, would be 1987. We broke ground in 1988 and we opened the museum in 1989. And then we worked with the city of Reno in 1991 on the project with the general obligation bonds, five years. They were paid off in 1996. That completed that project. The museum opened in 1989 and then in 1993, the museum was self-sustaining. So it was in a very reasonable amount of time that all that came forward.
Do you anticipate your, your capital campaign will be all private donations or?
No, it would be corporate and.
But, but you're not, you're not, you're not tying any of the capital campaign with some matching with the state? You're not, I mean, there's nothing else that, from a government body?
No.
That's going to be, okay.
No.
Thank you.
Maybe, well, no, the only thing is I just wonder maybe like a continuance to really review the whole site plan because we might have a huge opportunity here to really look at the whole river and, and that whole area.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, for the record, Bill Thomas, Assistant City Manager. Perhaps a solution to some of the concern we're hearing here is that the city or the redevelopment agency could transfer the property to the city. The city then would transfer it to the auto museum. What that would do is that would invoke that state statute that says as long as the auto museum continues to maintain the auto museum on the property, it remains their property. If in the future, they close down the auto museum and they try to do something different, then it would revert back to the city. So in other words, we would put it in the same situation of the other nonprofits that today you dealt with in terms of giving.
You already got those in there. Why do you need to add them in again?
When they're, when they're in the redevelopment agency, it's only, as Mr. Shipman pointed out, it's only good for the life of the agency. So in 15 years, the way it's set up right now, because the redevelopment agency is transferring it, then it would be their property and there would be no clawback or no ability for it to go back to the city. I'm just suggesting it as a way to get.
Well, there's a way to put a clawback in if they don't do it. I think we need to work with them.
And I got, I get the impression that the concerns I'm hearing are more that they just want the museum to come back, come back and give a presentation on what the design looks like. I mean, that's, I mean, it seems like that...
Maybe I muddied the water. I was just trying to offer a solution.
Thank you. I mean, that sounds like what they were asking for over there. It's just something to come back and, as you get further along in design, to come back and give a presentation to the board as to what the design looks like. Is that what you guys were looking for?
Yeah, I was looking for presentation design, but I thought, I thought, and so I thought that you guys already referred that this was already gonna be, NRS was applicable to this and that the development, yeah, and I just heard that right now, so I felt like I was misinformed about that. So, I mean, I don't know what the wait time would be in order for it to go through those steps and how quickly that can happen, but that's a, definitely a safe, something safe to take back.
For the record, John Shipman, I mean, the suggestion of the Assistant City Manager is one way of doing it. The other way of doing it is directing it at the podium today and just to include a clause in there that essentially mirrors what we see in the NRS provision, even though it wouldn't be...
It would just revert back to the city instead of the redevelopment.
Yeah, would revert back to the city instead of the redevelopment. So you can accomplish that today. If that's, if that's the concern and you, and you wanna direct that, we just, if they're okay with modifying the deed, then we're good.
I think I'd like to see it come back. I guess one question, this being a redevelopment asset, you know, the redevelopment asset is a very troubled entity with a lot of debt. Do any debt holders have any obligations or claims to any of our redevelopment assets? Did you look at it from that perspective?
Yeah, no, it's, I mean, the, from the standpoint of the agency, that's, we're really talking about TIF, tax increment financing. And the whole point of, and why they probably did the deal in the first place, is to create the economics and to create the tax base that generates the TIF. So this property isn't pledged for any bond or anything. It's, so...
Okay, okay. I, I don't know. There's a lot of moving pieces, and I appreciate your advocacy for what you've drafted and trying to amend it here at the table, but I think I'd like to see it come back.
I'll just amend my motion to include the language that Jonathan just said, the language from NRS that in the event that it's not operated as a museum, it would revert back to the city. Does that suffice that? And then also, can I condition this, Jonathan? Just have a condition that they bring a present, as they get further along in design, that they bring a presentation back to this board? Just...
Yeah, you can make that part of the agreement if they're amenable to that, and then...
Yeah.
If I may address those, Paul Georgis and Mr. George, the two issues. We have no problem at all with reversionary issue. We have every intention of continuing this to be a museum, and if it's not a museum, then it should go back to the redevelopment agency. With regard to the plan, we are very excited, as Ms. Freydy noticed, noted, we are in the process of interviewing architects right now. We're very excited about the plan. We think it's gonna benefit the city as well as us, and we have no problem at all in coming back to the city and showing the plans and showing what we're gonna do with that river corridor and showing how we're gonna make this a valuable piece of property and a valuable part of the city.
Perfect. Then I would include that, I would include that in my motion also.
There's three conditions.
Yep.
Well, I'm, right, the one on the screen.
There's actually, there's two parts, there's two parts to the condition on the screen, right, Jonathan?
Yes.
There's two parts to the condition on the screen, and then the additions that I just added.
Correct, and the sewer, just so we're clear.
Wait a second. So it needs to be transferred to the city. That is one action that the subsequent city council...
What, yeah, what we decided we can do is just revise the deed to include the language essentially that mirrors what you would have otherwise in the NRS. So we can just do that at the, at the table today.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. What that would do would be direction to create a reversionary clause. The mirror language may not be exact in creating a reversionary clause, but the intent to accomplish the same thought that the NRS has would be what the direction would be. Just to give us some flexibility, because when you're drafting deeds, sometimes mirror language to a NRS, and a reversionary clause may be a little bit different.
So the existing building, as it exists today, if that is modified in any way or ceases to operate to host, ceases to operate as this museum, this museum, then the reversionary clause occurs?
No.
If it ceases to operate as a museum...
They might change some things in the museum around.
Huh?
They might change something, might put a different show in a different room or modify a room so it's bigger.
If it ceases to operate as a museum, which is the intended purpose...
That's right.
An automobile museum.
Then it would revert back to the, to the city of Reno. An automobile.
And just to clarify, that, that would be flagged for charitable purposes. So it'd be the same thing you would see, you know, otherwise. So as long as they're maintaining, they're, it's for charitable educational purposes and it's operating in its current form actually as a museum, then it...
Perfect. You okay with that now?
I'm good with that.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Whoop, wait, nope.
That's the only thing. I'm confused, and I think that I, we should continue.
Okay, vote goes six-one. Okay. Okay. Vote goes six-one. All right, now, thank y'all very much. Keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
All right, now we go to, now we go to item F1. Somebody give me a motion on F1. Have a motion, do I have a second? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Appointments of Redevelopment Agency Advisory Board?
Looks like everybody wants to be reappointed.
All right. Okay.
It's a good board.
Motion made and seconded for the advisory board, all, any...
You guys all okay with that?
Huh? You're okay?
Yeah.
What?
Including Mr. Scott?
Pardon me?
I don't know if I wanna point...
I said, we still, I said, do we wanna include Mr. Scott?
All right, motion and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries, future agenda items for Redevelopment Agency Board? All right, public comment? Move to adjourn, my favorite motion. Ladies and gentlemen, it's been a pleasure.
We got a 10-minute break.
We're gonna take a 10-minute break, and then we'll go to public hearing. Huh? Yeah?
Almost.
A master plan amendment to adjust the UNR regional center boundary. What I wanted to make clear upfront, sorry, this is extremely loud. What I just wanted to make clear upfront is that this action tonight is not a rezoning, it's not changing any development rights. Whatever you're doing on your property currently, you could continue doing on your property, that this is the first of many steps coming forward to update this regional center plan. And so tonight, what you're considering is an addition of the downtown properties into the UNR regional center plan. After we are done with the boundary, we will be having more public meetings with our planning commission and neighborhood meetings to talk about the policies associated with the plan and also development standards and zoning in the future. But again, tonight, we are just considering the boundary line change, and whatever development you currently have in place, you could continue doing. I just wanted to make that clear if I see some people that haven't been at some previous meetings, and that was one of the big issues that were brought up. And with that, I'm available for any questions. I have a picture of the addition of the, of the boundary, if you wanna put that on the overhead. And this is a public hearing. I'm also available for any questions.
Thanks, Fred. As stated, this is a public hearing. I do have one person that would like to speak, Ken Crater.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Ken Crater. I think this is a great step forward for the city of Reno for several reasons. First of all, this is a very old area. Most of it was developed long ago, and much of it is in great need of redevelopment. And by bringing this into the university district, one of the biggest things will happen is a change in the floor area ratio. Right now, the floor area ratios in the downtown entertainment, Wells Avenue District, are one to three, and that would be impossible to achieve in this area if you were to, say, buy a couple of these older lots and build a really cool three, four-story multifamily project, you could never achieve that floor area ratio. So now, it's something workable. I think the big thing is moving forward is there is gonna have to be a lot of attention paid to the zoning of this property and what the uses are that really makes sense within this area. For example, hotels. Do we want hotels in this area that compete with the existing hotels in the entertainment district when our typical room vacancy rate is like 40% year-round? Do we want things like garden shops and nurseries, which is a permitted use right now? So I think this is a great thing, but we just need to make sure we spend the time and get this done right. And I see the potential that if we start redeveloping this area, it's gonna spread like wildfire to the other areas of downtown Reno. And I think this is an area that's been long too neglected. I was looking at an old 2004 redevelopment agency plan, and it talked about all the great things going on in the city of Reno and downtown, but there wasn't one mention of this area. And I think the other thing that's important to recognize moving forward is we have a serious issue with homelessness in this area, with drug and alcohol addiction, and that's gotta be part of the equation. And I do feel confident that there's some ways we can work together as a community to deal with these problems in a significant fashion. I've already been doing a lot of research on my own of what other communities across the country are doing to deal with some of these problems. So I, I support what staff has brought before you tonight and what council's trying to achieve, and I know for those of you that are no longer gonna be in the council, I know full well that you will stay involved in this, because it is so important to the community. And those that are leaving the council have a lot of institutional knowledge, and I look forward to working with everybody on the council now and in the future to help clean up our downtown and make Reno the community that it can and should be. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. That's the only public comment card I have. Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment section and bring it back to the table. Any questions? I would entertain a motion to uphold the recommendation of the planning commission.
Absolutely.
I believe you need me to read the resolution.
Resolution will be next, John.
Yes, it's resolution number 8021. Resolution to amend resolution number 5673 by adopting a change to the downtown Reno Regional Center Plan and the university, excuse me, and the University Regional Center Plan of the Reno Master Plan approved in case number LDC 15-00021. And that was based on the action of the planning commission on October 9th of 2014.
Move to uphold the recommendation of the planning commission and to give just tremendous recognition to the university, RTC, all of the partners that have been involved, our incredible staff in bringing this forward. It is long overdue, good work, and we look forward to continuing to bring the details behind it.
Got a motion, do I have a second? Got several seconds. And I do just wanna comment, I mean, we've talked about trying to make this a university